Callid and the chief are still tackling this one live in action. It's a pilot program at the moment, but at least the group has been established and this hopefully will continue to remain a priority. So if there's anything further on that, again, lots of data in this particular one. We have a lot of steps there that were kind of short-term goals, long-term goals, working with the state attorney's office bridge and the first step on an implementation program. And la, oh, two more, sorry. Another stormwater one here, updating our overall stormwater master plan kind of regionally. So the plan here for the staff is we will get to this one once the local stormwater master plans are complete, which is the historic West Side and Corbin Park. I believe the historic West Side project is slightly further advanced than Corbin Park. There's another public meeting desired for Corbin Park, but both of those should be wrapping up in, I'd say, in the next six months or less and be coming forward with possible design contracts and then construction in the years to follow. So again, once those two are complete, you'll see other areas. Well, North Beach is starting, sorry, let me mention that one too. North Beach Stormwater Master Plan is a third local kind of area in town that is going to begin a study with the intent to fund that via the American Rescue Plan. And then last but not least, the loading and unloading zones. Again, another ongoing pilot project that continues to have discussion and be tweaked and implemented, but since we met last, they've been able to meet with the business owners and the delivery companies with specific timeframes and days. They've added three additional loading and unloading zones and again, continue to work with the operations in general, delivery process for that area of the town. So those are items one through three. Again, I know it's a lot, don't want anyone getting sleepy on me, but we do have, I can't ignore the other items that are now kind of, we still have a lot left in communication. We've got four big ones in quality of life, growth management. Clearly, there's one left, but we put a lot of those in the top three because that is where the temperature is for the city. Two more in environmental and then transportation's got a few as far as streets and networks. I know later in your agenda, there's one item coming up that talks about connectivity. So we are touching some of these, we just don't put them in the top three, you know? So the AOB site's another one that's in here. It's not in the top three, but it's actively being worked on in the CIP section. So I'm happy to answer any questions on a specific item if you have one. Yes, Commissioner Sacks?
Have you had any discussions preliminary?
Talking to the mic so they can hear.
It's okay.
If you had any discussions preliminarily with UC or is it just city domain where we could possibly in the future retain stormwater and repurpose it? Are there efforts to, or any thoughts on that?
I'll have to look to Callid and engineering team.
You're saying as a collaboration with the utilities and other cities, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Now, the project that we're having right now, you know, on the wrap, that's Oak Hill, Edgewater and Alsonda County. In terms of the utilities, most of our cooperation with them is on the infrastructure itself, but we have not discussed stormwater because that's not what they deal with.
Right. Okay. So that would be us.
Yeah, so we got right now, as I mentioned yesterday, about the septic to sewer. That's moving forward. We have the Washington project, we're working with them, also on the stormwater master plan for Corbin Park as well as the historic West Side. That's going to be significant infrastructure improvements in both areas because typically what happened when we go to those areas and we're doing construction, we tell them, why don't you just go in since we already digging up? If you have to upgrade your water lines or you have to improve the sewer, then you'll be able to do that. That will be reducing the cost, so.
So you're saying reusing stormwater like in a reclaimed water?
Yes, sort of. Instead of having it outfall to the river, find a way to retain it and repurpose it. If that's even possible.
But they do have. Is that done elsewhere?
I think so. I'm not sure.
I mean, usually reclaimed that they use for sprinkling and stuff, but that's like treated water. That's affluent, right?
Right, so it would be blended with other treated water as sewer water.
I've never heard, and I've never heard of reusing stormwater for things like, I don't know. I mean, I'm just not familiar enough with it.
The second part of the question, it's not quite related, but Michelle, as you know, with the snap of my finger, you can see infill happening in particular on Saxon. And so we're going to see future flooding problems in those areas. We already have historic flooding on Atlantic and in some parts of Saxon and now it's growing. So, and it's near a sensitive area, you know, the Calalisa Creek area. So I wonder, when is a good time to start those discussions with all this stuff on our plate already?
Commissioner Sacks, one of the strategic items, we talked about updating our stormwater master plan. That's throughout the whole entire city. So that would be something that we would look into. I think I mentioned to you right now, the discussion with the county is to take over Saxon. So obviously that would be a significant part that we have to look into in terms of the stormwater master plan. So that's something will be looked for sure.
Yes, okay. That partly answers my question.
Okay.
Okay.
Just real quick, I know, I want to make sure this information is available to all. I just can't stress that enough. And so again, the whole Moyster Task App is available, it's live, please look at it. I have no incentive to promote that, just that everybody has access to it like I do. But if you are more of a hard copy person in your agenda packet, this on the screen is an 11 by 17 printout of the items. I know it's a lot all on one page. You might need your magnifying glass, but it is there. So you can print it and hang it on your wall like we all do in our office. So if you're not a fan of the digital world, this does exist for you.
And Mayor, this is updated on a regular basis. We meet regularly, so when you, if you have any, like any question about a topic, you just can go in and you could see the update, the last update that's happening, both in the strategic plan and the capital improvement as well.
I think this has been helpful, if for nothing else, I think for staff and the commission as we have, we had a couple of these workshops and it was like we were just constantly kind of adding to spreadsheets and stuff was connected and it was, you know, so this has been very helpful so that as things come up, when we're not sitting here, we're able to kind of link it back to like, okay, that's already on the radar, but here's a wrinkle to it, or this is why we're doing this. Like, why are we holding that workshop? Well, it's because, you know, at one point, that was our top priority. If it's not anymore, then we need to tell you all because otherwise you are working down some of these paths. So it's not perfect, but I think this has been helpful, helpful to you all of keeping, you know?
Right.
At some point, we all agreed this was our priorities and what we wanted to do. The one thing I wanted to say, can you, is, are you controlling this right now?
Yeah.
Can you just go in your browser and under Google, just Google, what did I Google? City of Winter Park metrics. It's all you have to Google. I just want to show one thing real quick. Because there's, so that very top link, so there's a variety of things in there that I think I've pushed to be in there, so I want to be very clear what the vision is. Metrics appears like two or three times on there. And I want to make sure we're not going down some rabbit hole because you can get lost in metrics that nobody cares about, right? And nobody's actually paying attention to. So if you scroll down, at the top is a report card, so it's kind of a high level, but scroll down past that actually, so that physical year 20 performance report, so that very top one. So this is my vision and this is, this is a mature product. So I'm not even saying we would be anywhere near this to start off with, but if we could be a tenth of this, if you can open that up, Michelle.
Is that a phone hanger?
Oh, it's working on it.
Just to make sure I click the right one.
So again, this is all public, you all can look at this on your, on your leisure. But so if you scroll down a bit, so this is, these are the kind of metrics that I'm talking about. So they have this whole summary and they're talking, but keep on going, we'll not get into that. So they have four or five broad categories, so if you scroll up slightly, so like exceptional quality of life, that's one of their broad categories. So it's kind of, it kind of mirrors what we've done in our strategic plan. Then they've said, okay, here's some things, here's some, you know, kind of words that go about that, you know, vibrant arts, lifelong learning, et cetera. And then they have these different strategies of how they're going to get that. What does that mean in real terms? Community engagement, tree canopy, parks and rec. And then in each of those, here's some measurables for each of those things. So again, when we all talk about, we all, everyone up here wants to, you know, support or improve quality of life, but how can we tell a citizen that we are doing that? How can we prove that? You know, what things can I point to and say, this is what I've done for our quality of life? Here's some ways that, you know, they're able to do that. And then for each of these, to the extent there's a goal, they have, you know, the KPI type, you know, red light system over there on the right, whether it's above, at or below goal. Also, you can, you have trends. So if you scroll down now a little bit more, you'll see they do kind of a deep dive. So they take some of these things and then there's this narrative and they do a deep dive and you can look at the trends. So you can see, hey, we actually are getting more engagement on social media. We're getting more plays of our, of our videos. And so scroll down. So this one's great, trees planted. So they have an urban forestry program and so they track what they're doing as a city to protect their tree canopy. And, and you know, they're saying, look, we've removed these, this number of trees, we planted this number, here's why that matters, et cetera. So when I'm talking, and if you go down, it has, you know, again, it's 30 pages or so, so you've got the same thing for public safety. Go down to the permitting one. If you go to, yeah, right there actually. So streamlined permitting, number of residential reviews completed in 21 days. So it talks about the turnaround, you've got some tax-based things there, you've got sustainability, you know? These are the kind of things, if we could take again, just 10 or 15% of this and start replicating some report, like that's, that's the vision that I had when I was pushing for all those metric things to be in the strategic plan. I felt like we have gotten caught up on two things. Number one is the surveying of the, of the public, which is, which is important, but no denying that's important. But, you know, it came to us, it was $60,000, we've punted on that, right? That is, that's fine, that is what it is. There's still a lot that we can do internally. There's still a lot of this, the data's probably all there, it's being collected, or if it's not, it should be. And now it's about compilation, it's about having the right person. I'm going to talk about staffing later, but it's having the right person or people to compile this. And where does that land and whose job is it? And what value does it, does it bring to do? But I would argue there's a lot of things in here for you all, spend some time on this. I would love to see this data because again, it gives you quantifiable, measurable things you can point to and say, yes, we have been working on this and here's how you can see that coming through. So permitting is a big one. How many complaints do you all get from people when you're in the public that say, oh, it takes forever to get a permit? But I would love to be able to point to the data and show the graph to say, we've been working on that and here's the trend that shows that we're meeting our goal of reviewing permits within 21 days, you know, or whatever that, whatever the right metric is for us. So I don't want to see us keep swirling on this metric thing and keep just, you know, polices, you know, what do you want from us and fires, what do you want from us? We're producing these metrics, it's in the CM report. Like, this is something I want to look at daily, but this is, this is the vision. So I just wanted to be clear on that since it does show up a few times and I feel like I kind of own that, so.
Super helpful to see it.
And I don't know who does this, I don't know on their, I mean, to me, if I were you all, I'd call Winter Park and say, hey.
It's their consultants.
What's that?
It's their consultants.
They have consultants that write, that do all of this. This is all outsourced. This annual report that they do is all outsourced. Okay.
Okay.
But well, at least we could initiate, you know, the metrics itself and then we could expand on it. Doesn't have to be as large as this one, but it's something to start and, you know, include the items that is important to the commission and to us, and then we could expand on that.
Yeah, and, and you'll never get universal agreement on what is the, you know, what metrics should be included. You know, I would say start with the ones we have, you know, start with the low hanging fruit. There's already a lot of stuff that we are tracking. I don't, I don't need, you know, someone in here counting how many people show up to meetings. That's not an effective way to do it, but let's start with the things that are low hanging fruit, easy to track, you know, and the hot button items. So permitting is a big one. I get more questions on that than anything, or more complaints probably than almost anything else, is how long it takes sometimes to get a permit. So let's, let's make sure we're tracking that and then so that I have data to be able to tell people, okay, yours took a while, but that's an outlier, or here's what the trend has done, you know, et cetera. So that's just my, my thoughts on metrics. Because I feel like that one has gotten kind of down in a rabbit hole and this is all I'm talking about.
Okay.
Any other, go ahead.
Oh, no, sorry, you.
I was just going to open it up. Anybody else in the commission, any comments on anything with the CIP and strategic plan? Yes?
I always feel we're not moving fast enough. It's nice to have the ability to track what's going on with specific reference to projects that we've farmed out to consultants. Is there any way I can go on this particular form here and see the timeframe that the consultants are working in? Let, take an example, the West Side Storm Drain Project. We've hired a consultant and that consultant has obviously a start date and a finish date in their contracts. Can I go on this forum and see where they are?
Ideally, yes. I can probably bring that particular one up. If, if the staff was given the schedule, the schedule should be uploaded into this so we can pull that one out. So we'll, we'll do that one live, how about that? I have a feeling.
Can we do that one live now?
Yeah, yeah. We'll move into CIP, is that okay?
Yes.
You guys ready for that?
Yeah.
Okay, just the last comment that I have personally on the strategic plan is you kind of already touched it just briefly, I don't know if you noticed you did it, but coming back to this plan and reevaluating it, I think we can't forget because that impacts the speed, right? Like, we have this pile and then it keeps getting bigger and bigger. And, and just being the staff person, you know, at the end of the rope that, you know, there should be time maybe considered to come back and look at this and say, is this still what we want? And oh, what did we add today at this workshop that now is going to change the focus over here and take from that particular item that we already said was number one?
Right, because I, in my background, I always come from a place where most of the stuff was done in-house. But this commission has decided not to fund staff levels to perform this work in-house. So I'm very concerned that when we go out and contract for services, that the information as to where they stand in the various projects just simply isn't available. And I don't like calling up staff and saying, tell me what this guy's doing, tell me what that guy's doing. If we're going through this format where we have all these things, I want to be able to look it up. When I get a call from somebody whose property is getting flooded, I can tell them, two years ago, we put $250,000 in the budget.
Right.
Where has it been spent? Where is it going? And I can't always get that information.
Okay. Yeah, we definitely have room for improvement. I, you know, we're trying to use these tools to give that clear picture, so we just need to keep feeding the data.
And I understand that because we haven't funded enough people to do it. And personally, I don't like adding to our, to our, our staff levels if we don't have to. But it's, it's coming to the point now where I feel we're really lacking in keeping track of that. I won't go into it now, but getting grants and things also falls into that where I, I feel we're, we're missing out. And we've, this isn't for you, so I'll go into that later.
Okay. So just to show you how I navigate to the capital projects on the side, there's a menu bar, there's the plan and there's CIP. They're, they live together. They almost look identical, so as far as the color scheme goes. So again, here we are with the CIP. We track the airport projects as its separate little being. We don't put it in its, the different stages it's in because it's so unique with its partnering and funding. So there's 15 different projects in different phases. I can hit any of those if you'd like. Otherwise, I can go into things that are in a planning stage, pending funding, things that are in design, which is your first question on the West Side. And then we have our bidding and award projects and things that are in construction, things that are miscellaneous, and then again, archive. That's a nice little feature we have if we ever have to look back upon something, whatever data was in that item, it lives there and stays there. Again, just a little plug here, if you're not crazy about the app, I can export all of that out into Excel and so that's what's in your packet. So if you needed to print it off and get your magnifying glass again, it is here for you. Again, lots of data. We're trying to track who's the project manager, who's the architect contractor, what was the original budget or projected estimate, the adopted budget, any amendments, final costs, what are all the funding sources? And then we get into schedule. We try, again, we're trying to populate, when will design be complete? When are we going out to bid? When's construction? And so the only thing that this doesn't track well is when you change. If you go back and make an adjustment or delete a target date and put in a new one, you have, we have to manually kind of tell it, like, this was our planned date and this is what we're aiming for now. It doesn't really keep a good track of.
Right, one, one of my main concerns was when we embarked upon this program is I didn't want to take up valuable staff time simply filling out forms.
Right.
And doing that, but just to move along, pick a project, a designed, funded project, anyone.
Okay.
And show me and the public how the form works.
Okay, sure. Uh, duh, 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 let's just pick.
That's a good one.
Probably not the best example, but let's go ahead and grab it. So the way this form works, very similar to the Strategic Action Plan, is we have the status that exists today, the feasibility study is complete, again, the proposal for design services to move that stormwater master plan into, you know, because it was just a master plan, that feasibility has been requested. You can contact Kyle if he is, if you have a question. He's the day-to-day project manager. We're working with Tetra Tech. The original project estimate was 250. That was established in FY '19 and '20 and it has carried forward last year and then again this year. So there's kind of a little bit of a timeframe that you were asking is when, when was it set up and when, you know, why is it, it's carried forward twice now?
Yeah, the particular information that I would find helpful is we've hired a design consultant. Where do they stand in their timeframe?
Right.
Is the beginning and the end of their project listed here or their perspective?
Right, and so where you would find that in this, again, doesn't have it, but I know there's a couple in here that do, it'd be an attachment. It would be what Tetra Tech gave us as their contract. We should be putting all of that in here. There's no reason that it shouldn't be in here.
Correct, but it doesn't seem to be. And I don't want to burden the staff down with filling out forms all the time, yet that's very valuable information.
Yep.
When somebody wants to know, when is my storm drain going to get built? We say, well, we're going to a consultant. Where's the consultant standing? And you can't, you can't find that now.
Right.
And as you show, there's 25 active projects or whatever is.
And so that, again, we try to, we meet on the same.
I don't want to bother staff 25 times to find out where something stands.
Right. So we meet on the same cadence as the strategic plan, bi-weekly on these, you know? So when we get together, we have this live on the screen, we type and we input information and, you know, some of the projects are better out, filled out than others. But again, we, that is the most time we, we have other than throughout the week outside of that meeting to come back into these and do, do what's needed. Again, when there's 30-plus projects, you know, we literally have one hour that we meet. And so you get two minutes per project, move on to the, you know, if we're going to touch them all, we got, it's quick updates and fire updates. So the staff, the project managers need to come into these or feed me, the importer, I play that role too. Send me the stuff and I'll get it in, you know? But that accountability piece is pretty important too, you know? So we're trying to enable our team to take action and upload. Some are, some are getting better than others and sometimes just emailing me the information's the quickest way to get it in. But that, that, let me, I'll find you a better one that's got more.
Well, no, you should be able to pick any one out of the list and see where it's standing. Here you got a master plan. We've had people working on it for a long time and yet we don't know the status of exactly where it stands.
Well, for that one, you know, the status says it's complete, so, you know, you kind of just got to read the status. You won't have the timeline of all the deliverables per se on when that particular thing did get complete, but we can certainly improve upon it and put it in the comments section below, like.
Yeah, come on, what people want to know is where do we stand on it? And, and we don't know right now.
So I can highlight Adam real quick. He, he's our airport manager, you know, and he's really starting to dive into this thing and I think he's using it pretty actively and using it even for his construction meetings, putting it on live with his contractors if he's in a state of that particular thing. So he's got a lot of dates, he's putting checklists, you know, that, that's, there's a really good example for you.
Yeah, that's, I think that's kind of what your, what your ideal is.
That's what I'm looking for.
Right, right. And so a lot of these had that, I just picked a really.
Hang on real quick. So Commissioner, I guess my, I'm kind of right in between. I like having this tool. To me, it's more of a staff tool because the reality is if someone asks me where we're at on a project, I'm probably just going to call staff. This makes it easier for them to get the information, but I'm probably not going to go all the way to this. And even if I would, you know, three out of five commissioners probably, probably are not. And again, I would say I'm, I'm not either. So are you saying you would actually use this tool going into it or are you just saying you want it for, to be easier for them to do? I'm confused.
Well, I, I don't want to bother the staff and take up their staff time if they've had a meeting.
I think if it was more reliable to what you're asking, you would use it more.
Exactly.
And I agree with that 100%.
You would actually just go straight in?
Because, I mean, it's right here. If someone calls, I can go CIP, go to the project we're looking at and then answer the question that I'm being asked live and in person.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, we've just got to get better at using it in this way.
Yeah, we've, we've set up the basis for this.
Yeah.
And if I can either direct the public or direct myself to go to this forum, get the information, I don't have to call Callid, who then will have to call Michelle, who will then call Kyle. So, you know, every time you have a five-minute conversation, you've lost five minutes of what you did before and what, five minutes to get back there.
Yeah.
So it's, this is an efficient way and we're not doing it. It's like, like you have said, you want to be able to track the metrics.
Yeah.
This is metrics.
Yeah.
This is what gets you to that information.
It, it would be ideal, I guess my, the, it, it has to be, to your point, it has to be super reliable.
Right.
Because if I'm pulling it up to the public and I'm giving out information and then all of a sudden it's, well, actually that's outdated.
Yeah.
Like that, you know, that would all fell through, you know, six months ago and we just, we just forgot to update it.
Right.
That only happens once or twice before I'm no longer, you know? I'm not using it today, just to be clear. I look at it, I like it, but I haven't adopted it as far as using it because just not comfortable enough with it.
Yeah, and again, just that's human nature. I'd say like our, us as staff are still like, just trying to get there. You know, I don't know another tool that makes this easier. I really can't. I've tried to find it, you know, maybe there's something great out there that someone can let us know, but, so if you want, we, let's get into.
Hang on, I think you had a question and something too, real quick.
Yes. Michelle, I, I know you work very hard and Mayor, I know the metrics are essential in, in developing all of our projects. I'm afraid we have so many projects that I don't want the ones that's, that were on the bottom of the list, that were first, to end up being missed because we have so many new projects. Little things like, you know, I, I prefer to have a shovel in my hand than a pencil.
Right.
So I, with the patience of Job, I would love to see the, if you guys would, would oblige me, take the, a second to look at the, the Reasonable Assurance Plan Indian River Project. So I don't know how many residents have the patience to go here and look at metrics. They, like I, want to know, when's it going to get done?
Right.
You know, things like the crack in the historic wall and the women's center and the reasonable assurance plan project. So, you know, we have so much stuff going on. It, people wonder, what, what is it in the bureaucracy that makes a project take ten years to just get started? Can you shed a?
Grant, grant timelines is what I learned.
Deep question.
If we're funding it, uh, if we're just writing a check, we can get projects done tomorrow. What I've learned, just talk to someone about this, said that, what I've learned, most government delays are the grant cycles. You're waiting for external funding and you, you get one chance to apply and then once you apply, so that can be a year. And then once you apply, you know, then there's a review process, so it's a six months. And then they grant the award within the funding cycles a year later. So that's the, that's the delay. If we were willing to write a check for everything, we can start projects tomorrow. If we internally, if we control it all right here.
And then setting our own budget even.
And this government process over the years has become complicated. There's pros and cons to it. A lot of the stuff in place is to prevent corruption that has happened decades ago. So there is a long process to it. So that, the, the, the processes which take so long and seem so bureaucratic, not only is funding issues, but also to make sure that the process is trans, is, is, is um, transparent, easy to understand. I know, not done in back channels. So there's a lot of reasons why government is slow. It just is. And so funding and transparency are huge in processes that have been created, which take an enormous amount of time.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully the public will hear what you guys have said.
They, they won't.
I've heard that, I've heard you.
So.
I, I explain that to the public all the time.
Yes.
So for this particular project, um, it was targeted to be bid in November. That's the most recent date. Um, it has not yet reached that um, goal. Um, they're waiting for, it was the state DEP permits. Um, I think that kind of messed that up for us, but they have a date set in mind, I think after the first of the year. That's when we'd be putting it out and right now it's saying February. So I'd say spring, you, you'll start to see construction occur. And again, we'll meet again with our group and get an update before the holidays.
You know, it's concerning and it's not a comment, a dr, you know, not your fault or any, any otherwise. It's just, when you see carryovers and things get delayed and delayed and delayed, uh, it's, it's frustrating.
Yeah, agreed.
For everyone. For us.
Yeah.
You don't want to hear it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so going back, Mike, I think wanted to go through one project. Have you seen what you wanted to see or do you still want to go back through one?
Well, we kind of did go through the project, so, so that's fine. I, I know what the problems are and where they lie, but just as Commissioner Sachs came up, uh, you've explained that there's some delays on that project. Is that information shown on this form that there are delays and that we have a new schedule? I've seen some of it on there.
Let's look.
I'd love to see this go through.
So we scroll, so.
It's funded, it's complicated, I understand that.
So five months ago, the status was the e-permitting was commenced, there was an archaeologist on site. Um, and so the permitting, again, I believe, and I don't have Kyle here to talk the day-to-day, is where this project has been for the last five months.
And that's what I would like to see on this form.
Right.
You know, I understand the constraints in the staffing. Uh, I know how this is set up very nicely, but implementing it is, it's got to be consistent. And that's something for the city manager to take care. You just happen to be the fall person right here in front of me, so I'm venting at you.
It just comes down to time and availability again, and workload and staffing and that ties to later on, like you already said, so.
When you said, you said you'll meet bi-weekly, is it, you mean every two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, to me, if you got, you got thirty, thirty-odd projects or so, I mean, if you're just, most of them, this, you know, once you get to like the current status, most of them, it's going to be, you know, a, as it, as it were, you know? Has not changed, you know? So once you get something, you're just kind of updating, you know, so it can be a one or two-minute update, just literally going through every project and saying, you know, this is, this is what it is. Just kind of keeping that up, you know?
That's the easiest thing to do, yeah. It's coming behind, like you said, and getting the financial updates and what has been purchased and. Those are, that, that's where it falls off, but I think we're um, are we, are we good on like the platform and how we're using it? And we know, like, we, we talked about it even in part of the meeting, like, come on guys, go team, let's, let's, let's get better at this and put the information in. And so, trust us, we'll get there. But, and especially, I think the more people that are looking at it, right? That's another, like, hey, it's not there, get it, get better, it's that accountability.
So I've been staff, I've managed things like this that I knew no one was looking at. And there's nothing more maddening than to feel like you're working on something that will never be, never see the light of day. So I guess that's, that's what, that's why I was pushing earlier to say, if we're going to do all this, we got to make sure we're using, you know, and I'll put myself in that category. I got to make sure we're using the tool or else it's a complete waste of everyone's time.
Exactly.
Um, so if it's not doing them any good, if it doesn't do him any good or her any good and staff, and it's not doing us any good, then let's just acknowledge that. If it is, if it's either helpful for them or us or both ideally, and if we all use it, I think it could be everyone.
Right.
Then it's great. Um, but again, I have, I have sat in rooms and updated spreadsheets that I knew no one cared about. And it's just, I mean, that's, 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 that's why you leave jobs, because you get tired of doing work that you feel like is meaningless, so. Kyle?
Um, Mayor, I just want to, the idea, and I, and I agree with Mr. Collet, and this is what we've been trying to do specifically on these lists, because I want to be able, when somebody calls me, instead of calling Michelle or the project manager, that I'll be able to, to go to this, to this uh, software and be able to get the information. They meet regularly on every two weeks, but as everybody mentioned, government projects, they go through the process, the funding, and then you got the public meetings, another issue that go along with these projects. Sometimes just trying to schedule a public meeting, it takes us probably a month to two months. Because if we wanted to make uh, somebody specific out of the commission to be president of that meeting and then give them some enough time for the public to be aware of the meeting, sometimes that does make an effect. But having this information that Commissioner Collet has mentioned, I think it's important and it's vital to us as well. Uh, we've been trying, but it's, sometimes it just takes time for the staff to go in and put their stuff in. So we've been actually harping on them, Michelle and I, to every project manager, to put this information on this software, so it will be helpful to the commission and to the staff as well. So we're not in disagreement, I think we, we wanted to have that, it makes it easier for us. So we will make sure that we do a better job with that.
Any last comments on anything, CFP strategic plan? All right?
This is very good, Michelle.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Well, we're, we're trying.
From where we came, you know, three years ago, when we first did this, or at least that I was around, you know, it was, it felt like we were, you know, scratching it all out on this and, you know, flipping through notes to figure out where we're at on something. Then we eventually morphed to Excel and now we've brought this. I mean, it's all progress, I mean, it's, I think, I think we're heading in a positive direction.
Can you back up a couple?
Sure, yeah.
Boop. Okay, under miscellaneous, where we have contract renewals for planners, is that somewhere we could utilize our, our lease contracts also? Could we incorporate that to kind of track those so, so that you guys aren't, have a whiteboard or something? Or is it easier just to do like a whiteboard kind of thing?
To know when leases renew?
I was, I was looking for David Ray to figure out what, you know, what would be easiest for him to prompt. Does David input into the system or?
Um, we, with his transition in roles, he's starting to be attending, because, you know, maintenance ops director.
So that's a possible, oh, there he is.
Yeah.
He is, yeah.
How do you feel about that?
In, in his defense, he was probably responding to an email back there. So um, the question is basically, contract management, like knowing when a lease is reviewed, need to be reviewed, et cetera, do we have a contract management or would this be a spot for, you know, could we use this as the, as the contract management software? Or do we have another vendor? Usually there's, I mean, those, that's a fairly cheap, usually you have a contract management software that you just load, load them all in, terms, dates, all those things, and it, and it alerts you to what you need to do and.
You can use it like that if that, if that's the question, you can. You just make it a project and you make swim lanes for all the different contracts that you're, that you're talking about. This thing is, so I just created a project called Contract Management. And then you can, you know, give it its headers and say what contract it's for. I don't even know what example to put, but catering or something, you know? And, and you can break it down to say like, the steps actually that are, you know, underneath this task is RFP issuance. You know, you can granularize that and then inside the RFP issuance, you can then go in and say, what are the tasks to issue the RFP? Like, you can break this thing down in a way that would blow your mind, but again, I don't know how much the rest of the general public would take it that far, but you can. You can use it like that.
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
Did that answer you as well?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, what are we doing now? We just putting it in a tickler file and saying?
Like, we just renewed a lease last night.
That's what I've suggested is, you know, knowing when the contract ends and then finding the commission meeting date that it would need to go to and then backing up with your agenda deadline and all of that.
Okay.
It's got notification settings in here. If you set a target date that you were trying to hit, it would email you and say, hey, this is due today. And so, maybe we can play with that. Um, I think.
So I'm sorry, but I added one more thing to this thing that we're trying not to add anything to, so.
No, it's okay, if it's going to help solve a problem, let's do it.
Again, I, I don't know, I wouldn't want to bog this down. Contract management is a, it's kind of its own little specialty and, and there's, there's vendors that do, like, that's all they do. And it's a, you, every time you get a contract, like, we just approved one last night. In theory, someone, a paralegal somewhere should be typing in, Yopon, five-year term, here's the, here's the major contract provisions, and then the, the software will send an email to whatever email address it says to send it to, you know, however long before that you tell it to do, six months, three months, two days, whatever you tell it. So I, I wouldn't want to see us, that, it feels to me, and I'll defer to staff, but it feels like a square peg round hole. Like, we could make it fit, but it probably is more efficient to just have something dedicated to contract management. But I'll let you all figure that out.
So I think the value here again is once we go to construction, like you said, where we've been three years ago, you couldn't see photos on an Excel spreadsheet, right? So like, I pulled up the NX project, because I was heavily u, updating that one, it was my life at the moment. But you could come in here and see pictures, it's very Facebook-y. Um, but when, I even broke it down to the phases, like, it had checklists for this particular project. We just need to get more consistent. So I know we're beating a dead horse um, at this point with how this can be used, I just hope you guys believe in it. Um, but again, most folks, like you said, you'd rather have a hammer than a pencil. So maybe there's four projects that are under construction. Um, the Babe, well, Babe James Shade Structures in the construction phase, it's in the permitting step, it's past bid award and design. I know Dust Streetscape, um, Chris Edwards is doing a great job coming in here as a project manager and putting updates here. So right around the corner, after the new year, you'll see construction of that particular project begin. Um, he's a natural at kind of some of these project management steps. And then I know Commissioner Sachs, the State Road forty-four, um, Station Fifty Light is also entering that phase.
I think we just approved on the last slide on that, right?
Right.
Yeah. All right, anything else on CFP strategic plan? All right, gentlemen, why don't we take a, a?
Thank you.
Ten, ten-ish minute break here, um, we'll come back around about eleven. We're actually, we, we shouldn't even be finished talking about redistricting yet, so we are, we're way ahead of schedule.
Perfect.
Which I'm, I'm okay with, I think we can.
I'm hoping to get a map back soon.
We can keep that, well, it's, yeah, we're going to have some time, he's going to, he's working on it, he's going to bring it back so we can see that again. Thank you, Michelle. All right, so we'll take a, a quick, quick break, we'll come back. We can jump back in. So per, per the schedule, per the schedule, we've got lunch from noon to one. Question for the commission, do we need an hour for lunch or could we trim that to half an hour?
Half an hour. Or I can eat lunch.
I, I'm just saying, it's, yeah, but if we just did a half hour for lunch.
Yes.
Is that okay with you all?
I, I've set my day up to be here all day, so I'm not, I don't have to move the schedule up. So I can eat in half an hour, that's fine.
Does that work for you all?
It's sending it to Sharon, so as soon as she gets it, she'll put it up for you.
So we've got, the, the new map for the redistricting is, is coming, but we can, it, it hasn't come through yet. So we'll just do it after lunch, when we come back, that'll be the first thing we kind of pull up. So we're, next items, we have these general discussion items. So my suggestion will be, let's go through as many of these as we can, get right up, you know, around noon, we'll stop, we'll take about a half hour for lunch and then come back and, and finish out the day. And that way, we can maybe get staff back to, you know, to their regularly scheduled programming sooner, we get out sooner and uh.
So they can update their thing.
So they can, yeah, they can go update their strategic plan thing, that's right. All right, uh, so wetland mitigation bank discussion. So again, for the items that someone, if someone requested it specifically, I'm going to try to let you lead off that conversation. So Commissioner Collet, I think this was your item.
Yes, and I alluded to it yesterday at the meeting. Uh, I had hoped to establish a wetland bank in town. So when developers come in and they're forced to buy wetlands mitigation, that money goes to a company that actually is based in Chicago and the land they're preserving is not in New Smyrna. So the money's going away. Uh, it does appear, based on my discussions, which I had with Collet on the phone, with experts in the field, it might be almost impossible to do that. So uh, my thoughts were, we could collect the money, use it and buy the lands. We have to have the lands first, according to the way the laws are written, so. Uh, unless we're going to go on a buying binge and buy a lot of wetlands and then hope somebody else pays for them, that's probably the only way we can get away with doing that. So I'm going to change my focus on revising our land development ordinances to protect the lands and make it more difficult for developers to fill them in to begin with. So that's where I'm going to head. A lot of my focus is going to be concentrated out in the uh, west end of town, even though that won't be in my district. But that's uh, that's where it's going to settle. Solves that, that issue is done unless somebody else can add to it.
So just brief questions on, I, I mean, are we able to do that? You say make it tougher to build through our LDR. What kind of issues do we anticipate um, with uh, state law and so on and so forth? I mean, I, I agree, you know?
Keep it in town.
The ability to infill wetlands is great, but are, you know, does it just sound good? Or are we able to actually, is there any, any thought out there, any input so far initially that indicates that we can do something?
There's significant obstructions to us doing that. The next step, which I will take upon, and I discussed this with Collet, is an in-depth discussion with the Water Management District. See, I don't want to administer anything, I want them to set the fees, set everything up and just have the final product come here. Uh, so moving ahead with it, I don't expect significant progress, but I do, I do want to do something. It's an environmental issue. Uh, if we can collect money where they're going to fill in, like, there's a couple of large projects that are not PUDs now that are going to come about west of ninety-five. If we can get the replacement, uh, they're going to get permits to fill in wetlands, they're going to have to pay for them. I want the money to come to us so we can buy land.
I think it's a great idea.
There, there's some, there's some terrible facts in the law that work against us. You're not allowed to use, for lands that are designated, like Turnbull Creek would not qualify. Those monies would not qualify. They preclude us from doing a wetland transfer into that district. Totally illogical, but that's the law. So uh, the person we spoke with was, was very knowledgeable and is in that field. Now it's time to talk to the, the Water Management District. I can't see how they would object to it. They're not, it's not affecting how they operate and it serves the same purpose. It just, I want to keep it in town. And I don't know if we're going to be able to do that, so I'm going to keep plugging away at it.
Okay. So, yeah, I, I commend you. I don't remember, maybe I didn't bring it up here, uh, maybe I just talked to staff about it. But I had, two years ago, I had the same, I went down the same path, because I was like, why are we, why can't we be the mitigation bank? Why can't we protect? I would love to have people in other communities buying our wetlands so that they're preserved forever. Um, and I went down this whole path, I guess I just talked to staff about it, because I, I, you know, I thought I'd talked about it publicly as well, but. Um, explored it, you know, learned a lot about, you know, the wetlands have to be in the same region, a, all this stuff. So it, it certainly was not as simple as I was hoping it to be and, and many reasons why, you know?
I could, I could give you one perfect example and it was, it was brought to my attention during the conversation yesterday. There is a project going in on Mission Road on the area that is coastal. Yet there is no coastal mitigation area. So that money is now going to go out of the area where it could have been used for regional assurance plan development, it could have been used to, to do that. And because the law is set up a certain way, they created an exception to take the money out of the area and out of that watershed. Money's supposed to be sent, spent, primary thing, in the same watershed. So anything that goes to the coast, which this happened to, now the mitigation is going inland.
Yeah.
We're losing out. Simple, simply put, we're losing out and somebody else is benefiting. This happened to be Formton, which is owned by obviously a corporation who has set it up very good. They're out of Chicago. That's where the benefit's going. I've even spoken to them. So.
Yeah. Okay.
It's frustrating.
Mr. Mayor, quickly, if I could uh, speak to that subject. I just did some preliminary studies on mitigation and this whole wetland bank discussion. Um, I'm glad it will take time because there can be some unscrupulous characters out there that do take advantage of wetland mitigation banks. I've actually seen it come before our day is that, you know, you, you think, is this a shell game? I don't know if you ever thought that.
It is.
What? Okay, so if you've been to New York City and see the guy with the stand and the shells, it's actually a shell game and that money does go elsewhere. So a little better thought when you bring it forward and say, well, if we can keep it here, maybe not so bad, but to send it to Farmington or to send, you know, it's like, are we enriching a rancher somewhere out of the county? It just, it rubs me the wrong way and maybe I should look at it differently. I am starting to look at it differently since you brought up the topic again. So it's intriguing.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement. We don't like how it works. The question is, what's the, how do we fix it? Like, what's the solution? And I think what, you know, what I learned was I couldn't find a path to an easy solution. Similar, I think, to where you're at. So if someone comes up with one, I think we're all happy to entertain it.
My last comment on it is wetlands, they're not all the same. There are wetlands that have average value and then there's exceptional value. The county actually does break down the wetlands into exceptional values in certain areas. What I'm going to also look into doing, and I'll bring it before the commission if they would like me to proceed with it, is wetland buffers. Maybe we could set the value, we take an amount of density calculations, but if we change the value, the width required, it will take more lands out of the face of development or make it so that they must mitigate them properly. There's a procedure used out of state that we don't do in Florida. It's called a wetlands transition zone. If you wanna develop a piece of property and you find that to economically do it and most feasible way to do it is you have to intrude upon the 50-foot wetlands buffer. You have to mitigate that by providing a greater depth of buffer somewhere else on the property. And those are tools we don't even use down here. And if we could implement some of them, it would be great. Would allow people to develop their property in a more reasonable method without inflicting a financial penalty on them and yet doing better for the common good of everybody who lives in town. But that's a little too technical for this particular discussion, so.
So the way I hear it, I think there's, I think the way I'm hearing it, there's two issues. Number one is keeping the money in the city.
That's the goal.
Right, when there's mitigation banks being used in the city. The other thing is somehow protecting wetlands better. So from a, I mean, I assume this is all state law that you, that you're referring to. The question is, do we, the idea of having to, I love the idea of being able to allow people who own land that's in a wetland, sell it as a mitigation bank instead of developing it would be phenomenal. But we'd have to get the state to change the law on how you calculate or what the limitations are on, you know, how big it has to be. There's properties, I mean, there's an island between my neighborhood and peninsula. Hard to explain. Developer, it's privately owned and people have wanted to develop that for years. They haven't quite figured out how to do that. But what a great example of something where if that person was able to sell that island off as a mitigation bank to where then it would never be developed, you know, and other properties in and around the city, that would be fantastic. Now, it's way out of our league, you know, we'd hire lobbyists and we'd have to, you know, but it's not, at least it's not federal, it's state. So the idea of championing something like that, wow, would be incredibly ambitious. I'm not against it.
Yeah, but you don't wanna, you don't wanna be Don Quixote, you know, you know, wasting your time and effort on things like that.
But that is the spirit of this community too.
Yeah, the prime goal should always be protect the environment. And second of all, if you gotta do some damage to it, get the financial rewards and be able to replace it in town, which is what I would love to do. So, next subject.
I think we have universal agreement on that. So if you can find a path forward, you're not gonna meet any resistance, I think, up here, so. All right, next item, item B, revisiting the special exception criteria. It doesn't say who called for this. I believe it may have been me, it may have been all of us, I don't remember. I know this is something that I have brought up though. And so the background was, you know, we've dealt with a few special exceptions lately, some of which are ongoing. And two things, number one is, you know, a massive misunderstanding sometimes of the public, which we're not gonna solve today, but massive misunderstanding that because something comes in as a special exception doesn't mean that we are able to, you know, it doesn't then resort to it being just my opinion on it and whether or not I want that or not, it still is a criteria. It's, you know, we're judge and jury of do they meet the criteria that we have laid out very specifically? You know, and if so, then that special exception has to be granted. So we're not, we're not so much granting it, we're more reviewing an application just like they do over in the permitting office and saying, yep, you meet all the requirements, here's your permit. Just like over there, the people handing them the permit may hate the project they're doing, but if you meet all the criteria, they've gotta hand you the permit, you know, so that we're kind of in that same spot. So I get that, public doesn't always, but that's one thing. But as we went through a few of these special exceptions lately, I was pushing back on, you know, we wrote these criteria. Could we give ourselves a little more latitude? You know, could we, could we open up the aperture a little bit and give us a little bit more latitude on this? And then I was approached by someone who was going through a special exception process in another city, just a friend, and they were like, hey, can you, you know, any pointers? How do I deal with this? What, you know, what do, you know, what, how does this all work? And that got me reading that city's special exception criteria and I saw some things. I was like, well, this is, you know, I wish I had this on some of the applications we had just reviewed. So that's kind of where this, where we're at. And there may have been other inputs, I don't know, but that's my background on this, on this item. So I asked staff, you know, hey, is there an opportunity there? Is there something that gives us a little more, you know, a little more ability to push back on some things? And for instance, there was one in the, I think it's the city of Ormond where they, or Ormond, depending on how you pronounce it, where they talk about that the use is consistent with the uses otherwise permitted in the district and/or in proximity to the site in question. So that's a criteria that piqued my, you know, we often have things where, I think recently we've debated on a particular item that was, that was my big thing is this isn't in line with what's happening at that intersection. You know, we're wanting to create a mining operation across from, you know, residential and hospital and retail and everything else. It makes no sense in that spot. So wishing we had this. So we can't retroactively do any of that, but proactively, are there opportunities? Can we change some of these things proactively to try to mitigate some problems moving forward? So that, I'll open it up to staff. I saw you pulling the mic over. Do you have some, do you have some opening comments?
I'll let you guys talk.
All right. And then she's gonna tell us what we can't do. All right, go ahead.
Yeah, we were asked to provide some background on this and we have the three criteria that you're familiar with, with the city's LDR, which compared to most of the ones we see, they are pretty skimpy. I mean, some of them are self-evident. The first one is that the use has to be listed as a special exception use. That's kind of like, you know, it really doesn't need to be a condition because you won't be going forward otherwise.
Yeah.
We could possibly find some criteria that would be more explicit. We did see the examples from the city of Ormond Beach and also Port Orange. And Port Orange seemed to provide the most explicit. They actually have five criteria. They get into traffic generation and access, off-street parking, loading and service areas, adverse effect on adjoining properties, screening and buffering, landscaping consistent with the district, architecture on signage treatments, be sensitive to surrounding development, size, location and number of other special exception uses in an area shall be limited to maintain the overall character of the district. So that is a lot more to be able to consider and apply to.
There's a lot more meat on the bone, yeah.
Right.
So I'll let Carrie go next, but the, we're not gonna solve this today. Like, I don't wanna get into like picking out and trying to give feedback on, you know, this is a criteria that I want because I'm not an expert on that. So I think what we're, and we have a new planning director starting, you know, next month. So I think today, hopefully the goal is for me is to, as a commission, do we have some support to direct staff to put a little more meat on the bone in New Smyrna Beach? And congruent with what we see in some other maybe best practices in other communities. So Carrie, do you have anything before the rest of the commission talks on this?
I was just gonna, you know, a lot of what Jeff has said is embedded in our general criteria. So pulling it out and making more explicit, you know, that, if that's the direction, so be it. But, you know, that's contained within there. You know, when you start talking about compatibility with surrounding areas, health, safety and welfare, you know, they're looking at traffic. They're looking at these things when they review the professional staff, when they review the special exception. The other thing, kind of more generically, is we don't have a lot of conditional uses. We have a lot of special exceptions. When you look at Ormond Beach, most of those are conditional uses. I believe they had like 94 and about 14 of them can be special exceptions. Some of them are straight up special exceptions, but some of them say like, basically it's like, well, if staff's not comfortable with it, then treat it as a special exception. But otherwise, the conditional use, if you meet the criteria, you grant it. So that was kind of a more general discussion of do you wanna stick with all of our special exceptions? Do you wanna consider taking them and some of them becoming conditional uses? You know, how do you want this treated? So kind of a different point for you to ponder besides the criteria.
A question for you on that too, is if we make a change to this, does it, obviously if someone like has a permit in the works, it wouldn't apply. But if someone, you know, just undeveloped property, no activity on it today and we make changes, it would impact those properties, correct?
Well, making them a conditional use isn't going to have an adverse impact on them. Changing the criteria, yeah, I'm okay with that. Obviously, anything in process would not be subject to changed criteria.
Yeah, okay. All right. So again, I'm not gonna pretend to be the expert here. Staff is well aware of the, you know, what we faced and, you know, to me, the one out by 95, the borrow pit, you know, we didn't have, we don't have the record to be able to not, you know, have enough to, to push back on that and on firm footing is, you know, I just, what have we gotta do to make that situation? Not that one particularly, but moving forward, those kind of things better. That's what I'm looking for. And again, it felt like when I looked at some other cities that they had a little bit more latitude. But if you're telling me that's buried deeper in ours, then maybe. So we'll let the rest of the commission talk. We're coming down the line if you're over that.
Okay, I've reviewed the criteria and I think we're good where we are now. There's always the problem when you try to be very specific in it and say, you gotta look at traffic, you gotta look at trees or whatever, that you might cut yourself short because with the general requests that we have affect on a downstream neighbor, that covers virtually everything, just as Carrie has said. We have everything in there to properly review and to properly back up the standards that we have. I think what happened, without talking about any specific project.
And the reason we gotta be careful in that one, just so you know, we're not trying to hide anything. It's all public. We're in the, I mean, there's litigation, so we're just trying to be careful because we don't wanna jeopardize the city's standing in litigation. So that's why we're being a little dancy on some of that.
Where I think we need to impress upon our staff is that you have something called a special exception. You have to really go after and require them to substantiate why they desire the special exception. And I think on some cases we've had in the past, we haven't been aggressive. And we have to say that we're not here to help you. We're here to make sure you don't harm the town and we haven't necessarily taken that position. And that's how we approach it. I think the standards are there and we can go after where we think there will be a problem and deal with it, but I don't think we've done that in the past from the staff's standpoint. I don't know what direction the staff has been given in the past. It's probably very good reasons for why they review things as they are now. But I would like to make the point that we have to aggressively look at these things. There are special exceptions because there's the possibility they could damage downstream people, neighboring people, the city in general. And we just have to be a little more aggressive on it, that's all. The standards that are there, I think the tools are there. We just have to, if we wanna pass some type of procedural thing that say we have to very aggressively look at things, then let's do it. I don't think we should have to. I think they just should be looked at very strongly.
Okay.
Oh, Mike. You know, sitting in this legislative position, I feel like I've had handcuffs on. I don't think you need special exceptions to impair the character of surrounding adjoining districts detrimental to the public health. Under advice of counsel, and Carrie, this is purely business, when, brief discussions we've had, I've asked, can we change how we build and how densely we build? Can we look at a project holistically? Like transportation, you know, a guy comes and he has a project. Sorry, you can't look at it amongst all other projects around it. You have to only judge his project. Well, then we find we have five projects that were built. The roads are beyond capacity. Stormwater's flowing out everywhere on lower land, lower people's properties. And I'm told we can't do anything, we can't change it. We can't change what our legislators did in the past. But then on the other hand, like the message comes through, well, maybe, as Mike would say, maybe we can tighten up. So it's like, yeah, let's find a way to tighten up so we don't get our town to be just another piece of concrete going down the line down the Atlantic coast. We wanna be something special, but we're not making the tools or using the tools, it seems. It's so frustrating that people say, oh, you legislators, you don't care and you just let them build anywhere and everywhere and not enough infrastructure. And I see the impediments to where I wish to take us and hopefully we have a common thought, I think, to be a livable city, but we don't have the tools. The developer comes in and says, oh, I'm gonna dictate to you what I'm gonna do. And I have a special exception as well.
Yeah, so I think the, you're, what tends to happen is once someone walks in the door and they're actively engaged, you know, they're pulling a permit or they're, you know, about to start a project, whatever criteria are in place at that time, whatever their rights are, that's what they have to operate in. So oftentimes we find ourselves where they've come forward and they're like, look, I bought this property, these are the rights and therefore this is what I wanna do. And that's when we're putting the spot, it'd be just like someone walked in the permit office and they wanna put a pool in their backyard and all of a sudden the permits person's just like, you know, I just don't like the shape of that pool. And they're like, wait a minute, I have the right to build a pool. My neighbor has a pool. This property is, you know, as long as I meet all the rules and the setbacks and everything else, I wanna build a pool and, you know, give me my permit. So the issue is if we wanna build less pools in backyards, we have to then legislate it not on a project by project, but do we have the right rules around pools in general and building pools? And what other applicable laws apply? So Burt Harris and all these other factors of you can't completely eradicate, you know, in my example, corollary example, you can't say you can't build any pools. You've gotta, but you can put some parameters around. So that's what we're trying to do is to say, you know, there's people that want us to build nothing. That's never gonna happen. People have property rights. We have families that have owned property for 100 years and they're now being sold off. and they're now being sold off. That's happening all across the city. So we're not going to stop that, but what we can do is try to control it as it happens. I think that's what Mike is saying and and so that's what this is, is it, how do we look at the criteria that are applied so that what tools do we put in our tool bag so that when that that next development does come forward, that next special exception comes forward? Is there anything that we can adjust today that puts us in a better position to be able to push back on things that we, you know, we as legislators may not feel are right for our community? Is there a a way that we can do that? So we're trying to shoot that shoot that gap. So I don't I don't disagree with you. It's not on, you know, it's not that I believe we've been given bad counsel, I think we've been given safe counsel and the we you don't fix it when when the attorney is standing here asking for their approval, that's not when we fix it. We have to fix it at the LDR level in between those times in times like this, if that if that makes sense.
Yeah, but but we've never, I I don't know if we've ever had a chance to, if we had the will to focus on it. I know both Vice Mayor McGurk and I, you know, we've talked about forty forty-foot-wide uh, lots being very small. There is a need, but how many do you want of those to become so dense that it's not livable or or sustainable, environmentally sound? But to me, the most important thing is the fundamentals. On the same sheet of music, I'm told that I can't change legislation as far as building goes, but on that same sheet of music, I'm told that the next legislator that comes after me, he can change what you put down.
So I think there, if I may jump in, there's a few different things going on. So when we're talking about legislation, there's different levels. So your comprehensive plan, when that comprehensive plan was adopted, it set the vision for the city. So if they said, okay, we're going to have high-density residential here and we're going to have conservation over here and we're going to have single-family over here, you can't now change the comprehensive plan for this high-density residential to low-density residential because they've now have, they have that right when they adopted that comprehensive plan. So when I say, um, you know, when I say you can't do that, that's because they have, it's not so much vested, they still have to comply with the land development regulations, but we can't, that would be taking away their development rights if we say you can't do that anymore. So there's that. But then on the LDR side, we have worked on legislative changes when they when they worked on the wetlands, um, you know, we've made some changes in the past two years that we prioritized. So, you know, I I think we've got to distinguish what we're talking about here. So if you're talking about downs, you know, essentially, I'm not using the accurate terminology, it's not down zoning, but if you're trying to lower what someone can do per the comprehensive plan, you got a lawsuit on your hands.
That's a Burt Harris issue. That's a state level, yeah.
And same thing, like even when we talk about, um, you know, we we do have to worry about some of the changes we make to our LDRs because if we make it where somebody can no longer build on that land, you're going to have a Burt Harris Act. Um, so, I mean, those are the facts. It they are what they are, but the other thing I think is really important for education piece for everyone up here to talk to their constituents, increased traffic is not a valid basis for denial. So when you started talking about, oh, we can't look at it of like this development, this development, this develop, this development, no, you can't. Because then basically what you're saying is, oh, the first one in gets developed and then nobody else does. And so what I like to do with people is to have them put themselves in the shoes of the person who owns that land. So you can't, you know, well, all of this has traffic, that's not a valid reason to de- to deny this guy. Um, now, traffic safety, different different thing, but you know, what we saw recently in one of our cases was a lot of the public coming in and and, um, very concerned with the additional traffic. Additional traffic is not going to do it. It has to be, you know, the first time around when we had that issue with U-turns and that was a safety issue. Um, so there's a distinction between increased traffic volume and traffic safety. So I I if that makes sense.
So why, so quickly, why then do we even consider traffic impact analyses?
Because it's the, they they have to make sure they're mitigating for it and that's what I was going to say. So the level of service, like that is one thing we can control is that level of service that we set. It doesn't mean, it's not a basis for denial, but it means if it's going to cause level of service to slip below a certain level, it just triggers some other things, it can trigger other impacts and other things. Um, but it it, we can't say you can't do it because you're going to cause traffic because again, that means if I just happen to be the fifth person to, you know, let's take this on any residential street, you all of a sudden now you own a lot, there's ten other lots on the street, you're the eleventh, all ten of them build, you just happen to retire a year later and all of a sudden they say, no, we we've maxed out, we can't have any more traffic on this street. So now you can't build your retirement home on that street? Like, when you look at it that way, it goes, well, yeah, of course, I wouldn't want that as a as a property owner, as a landowner, that wouldn't be fair to me that they all got to build and I didn't. That's the kind of the the community's job to make sure that this road can support, you know, the the traffic. And so that's why every home as they built would have paid an impact fee, which in theory puts the money in a pot that then can be used for the, you know, for that for that traffic. So it's it's all kind of a big, so the both are correct. When you're told that there's certain things that we can't change, but yet coming after us, future legislators can absolutely change what we've done, both are correct. There's things that are way above above us, the Burt Harris stuff, state state stuff as it applies to development, the we're very pro-development state. The state of Florida is very pro-development in in general. So there's a lot of things that our hands are fairly tied and we all feel that, but then there's a lot of things we can do. We've implemented floodplain regulations, uh, wetland mitigations, parking, all those kind of things. Future commissions can unwind every single bit of that in one meeting. I don't think they will, but they could. So there there are things that that we can do in our time, hopefully they persist, but they may not. But there's absolutely, I can't change, I can't legislate Burt Harris from this, you know, from this day, that's unfortunately, so that that's the, and it's tough and it, you know, it's it's complex and the and the public doesn't understand, there's times that I have to get told five times, I still don't know if I understand it because it is complex. Um, so anyway.
Many people will say it's too late. I hope it's not, uh, you know, capacity, providing services, water.
Yeah.
These are things we we should, I know, we, I do, I worry about.
Yeah.
And you can, you seem like you can't control them.
All right, let's keep going on anything we've talked about. We were on the special exception criteria, um, so comments from this side on that or anything.
Yeah, just a a a comment on just discussion. In general, it's easier to give someone the ability to do something than it is to deny them or take something away from them. And as Russ has pointed out, that is the flavor of the state, the way our state has legislated over the years. And in general, I mean, in just in general, it's easier for for Jeff, meeting with somebody, to say, hey, this is what you can do as opposed to denying their ability. And that's kind of the big picture. Now, I think where this came up, this special exception is, is we get into a situation on a commission where it seems like there's a special, someone applies for a special use and it is a special use for a reason because there's some reason why it needs to have a special consideration. And yet, when it comes to us, at least it appears that it's pretty cut and dry, three little simple criteria, relatively easy to meet, and then by law, we have to approve it. So I think that that's kind of what sparked this debate was, gosh, if it's so special, it needs special consideration, we really didn't get a lot of input. And maybe that's just the way it is. I I, but I think that's what created this. My own, my concern with doing something more is I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, the ripple in the pond. We do so, so I agree, I sympathize exactly with what you said, as I feel the same way.
Yeah, yeah, you said it well.
So, but what I do get worried about is how I, if we if we go down this road, I don't want to create a situation where we stopped one thing from happening that we didn't like, but ten things that were seemed to be perfectly fine were able to be denied and then people in the community are looking at this like, why couldn't I do this? Or and and we say, eh, well, you know, it made sense, but that's just the way the vote went. So I think that my only concern, and I don't have a problem with taking, you know, a look at this because I think we all feel that way. I think ultimately our concern is it's a special consideration, we didn't really have any input in it, um, or we couldn't, we couldn't massage this thing at all. So if there's a way for us to be able to change the way we look at a special consideration, give it some teeth and allow the commission to, um, beat it up a little bit or have some better input, I think that's great. But I don't want to create a situation where we, the unintended consequence, I say that a lot, I don't want the unintended consequence of now, you know, a special consideration, yeah, we're giving it special consideration, but is it just too easy to deny? Is it everything? So.
Yeah.
You know, I I, I hear what you're saying and I hear what you're saying, but we don't, it just doesn't feel that way up here. And so that's where I think that maybe the disconnect is. So maybe as if we go forward down this, um, maybe us having a better understanding of what you guys go through when you're doing the analysis, that may also help us understand or give us a better perspective as to why when it gets to us, it's basically like boom, 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 check the boxes, we got to approve it, so.
Yeah. The the other thing, Randy, before I come to you that I forgot to mention is, and I've also talked to staff, many of these things, the the applicant, usually there's there's money behind the applicant, right? I mean, because these aren't, these aren't submitted by your average resident, these are usually by by a developer of some shape, form or fashion. And so they parade up expert after expert that will testify that it doesn't impact this and it doesn't impact that and it doesn't impact the other. And I feel like often we're we're outgunned and outmanned because we're relying on staff and we have some great staff, but there can't be an expert in everything. And so maybe another angle we have to take is, and I've talked to staff about this, Collet about this, is that maybe for certain things, if it's if it's of of big enough magnitude where it's, you know, there's legitimate concern from the community and the commission that we have our own experts, that we have external experts that can help, because one thing I've learned is you can find an expert that will just about, yeah, I can find an expert that agrees with me and I can find an expert that disagrees. So, you know, I feel like sometimes we're just left relying on staff who often might be relying on even the experts that are on the other side of this saying, well, you know, they did the study and this is what they found. And I say, give me, give me five hundred bucks, I can find you another expert that'll give you an alternate testimony that would maybe give us something to to rely on as we make the, as as we make the the judgment that we make. So that's something else I think we should consider. Now, how do we pay for that? How does that, you, how does that all factor in? I don't know the answer to that, but that's something else to to consider. So Randy, you have a comment on this yet?
So I agree with Mike. I think what we have in place now is adequate.
Okay.
Um, you know, could be some minor tweaking along the line, but so much of it is subjective. I mean, staff reads these, they read your criteria and then they and then they take a subjective look at things and go accordingly. But you you have to look at the entire process because it has to go to P and Z and it has to come to us. So these things, and I can tell you in the last couple of months, s- staff has denied stuff that P and Z approved. Staff has recommended denying to us that we approve. So you you know, you talk about experts, these are your, are your experts, our staff, and sometimes we don't even listen to them because everything that we do up here sometimes gets subjective. And I I want to make this more about the process rather than our personal opinions on whether I like a project, don't like a project, it passed, it didn't pass. I I think we need to take that out of that when we look at these things and look at it realistically, what truly are the limitations? What is staff's recommend, what's experts say? And then where do we have a legal stance on? And and take the personal feeling part out of it. It it, that's what kind of starts convoluting this. Because I sat at a P and Z meeting and staff denied a a special exception and because of the rah rah in the crowd and it kind of got the P and Z fired up and and, you know, they made their, subjectively made their decision and approved the project. Um, who's to say whether the, you know, it was the right or the wrong thing to do because it's also subjective? So I I think we need to take that, the human part out of it is the toughest part for all of us to do, but sometimes we really have to just stop and think, well, really, is this the what allowed or not allowed? And if it's not, and if if it's something that we truly have that much of compassion or passionate about, then yes, then we need to change the rules. But if you change the rules so much and make them so restrictive, you're going to end up with more prob, I think more problems down the road than you are kind of leaving it in that area, that gray area, so that you have two two bodies looking at it from different angles, from different perspectives, and then they make that decision. And then we live by this decision. I I don't, you know, I've seen where we've, you know, taken these things out so far that, you know, if we get into how you prune a tree before you get a building permit, I, you know, all of these things are subjective. And I think it just opens us up to so many more, like you said, unintended consequences down the road. If I'm a developer and you tell me you can do this, this and this, but you can't do that, that and that, and then I'm going, well, how can I be creative and and do something that you haven't thought about in order to get my project done? And then we're faced with the same thing. And it, ten years from now, you won't be able to do anything in New Smyrna Beach because we've put so many restrictions on everything that we do.
Yeah.
That nobody will be able to do anything. But by then we'll probably be built out and, you know, so I just, I I don't, I don't want to restrict it so much that we don't truly have, keep an open mind and what truly is the true intent and what legally we're allowed to do, not allowed to do with staff's and certainly take staff's input, so.
Yeah, and you you're right. And I guess my my struggle is, so take item B of ours, of our special exception criteria. The requested use will not impair the character of the surrounding or adjoining districts. Let's just stop there. How do I measure? How do I, who's to say whether something impairs? First of all, define character, define surrounding, like is surround, I mean, am I surround, you know, is, am I near something or not? So define surrounding, define character, um, and then define impair. You know, how how do I know whether it impairs? And then, you know, and then take the last step, in order to be detrimental to the public health, morals or wel- welfare. So define detrimental, you know, are we talking about impact at all or impact majorly or, you know, uh, and then define public health, you know, does that mean physical health, mental health, spiritual health, you know, what what level of health are we talking? So I I agree, it's it's completely subjective. All all of that to me is a thousand percent subjective, which either, but going back to what Jason, I mean, he said it better than I did, like, that's how I feel sometimes is by the time it comes to us, it feels like we don't have, you know, well, I mean, look, we've faced two litigations already, but yet I felt like I had a pretty good standing based on that one in the both those cases to say, I believe this is going to impair the character and be detrimental to the to the public health and welfare of the surrounding area and district. And yet we've, you know, that hasn't been upheld by a judge twice yet, so I that's, I don't know.
But we get, so my, the way I approach it is, you get to, if you feel that that interpretation is justifiable to you, and you can vote no, and what we have is staff to help us make that decision. So I may go to Jeff and say, hey, I think this project impairs. And Jeff's going to state his case as to why he may not agree with that. City attorney is going to advise us on that.
Yeah.
I, yeah, so the one thing we need to keep in mind is you guys are reviewing what's presented. So you can't hear all this evidence that it, you know, meets all of these things and then say, well, I disagree. You have to have somebody up there that we can rely on as like, nope, and that expert said this is going to adversely impact the environment. You know, that's, you are the judge, you're not a presenter, you know, you're not for it or against it, you're listening to the evidence.
So that's where the tension comes in.
As judge, I get to determine at some point and say, I disagree with what the staff has presented to me. I can vote no on this with the example you just used. Now, the consequence there is, if you're if you're not listening to your staff and they're right and the applicant files a suit, what is the likelihood of you winning? what is the likelihood of you winning that argument? And that is really when we go against staff's recommendation or we meet with our attorney and we say, and the attorney advises us. What the attorney says is not black or white set in stone, but they're simply saying the evidence and our expert opinion is X. And if you want to go with Y, the potential consequences are we're going to essentially lose a lawsuit. So a lot of, everything is subjective to a degree. And that's where we hate being stuck in the middle. We may not like something, we feel like we didn't get the input, but our advisors are advising us differently from what how we interpret it. In this case, negatively impacts the area.
Yeah.
And we can always say no, and then we can end up in court.
But if we're saying no when our own, you know, our own experts, if you will, our own staff has said, you know, we don't feel, you know, again, it's all subjective, so they have said, yeah, this doesn't impair and it's not detrimental. And yet we say no, I mean, I could try that case. And you know, like, it's, so we're really, we're not operating from position of strength, which I think goes back to what you were saying at the very beginning of I'll let you, I'll let you comment, but I think that's what you were saying at the very beginning.
Yes, and that's exactly what Carrie has just said. We need a person out there who has fully reviewed in our best interest. Now, a perfect example is a recent one, I'm not going to say which one.
Make sure to talk in the mic, because it's
Yeah, that we had recently, that the, uh, it was presented to us that the Water Management District had approved this project. And we said, whoop, must be fine. We never provided much input into the Water Management District. And yet the applicant came and they provided that as proof that everything's fine. And yet we had not taken the time or effort, because we probably didn't have it, to go to the Water Management District and express our real concerns. And the the person provided that as proof that they're pristine with what they're doing. And we never disputed that. I think we just have to have our staff use the tools they have now and be aggressive and really look into these projects and not accept Water Management District, they approved it. Traffic, their traffic guy says it's fine. It may be that we have to amend our regulations to provide funds to fight this. I know there are other, I don't know if it works in Florida, but up north, every, uh, every applicant for a major project, special exception, has to provide some funding for counter review. Whether we raise our fees to provide that in there in a special exception, instead of saying your application's $1,000 to cover our staffing, maybe it should be $5,000 in case we need an expert. Maybe that's where we can, we can bolster our staff and let them get some additional input if they feel that there's a problem. Like I think some of these things go through because they check the boxes. They say, it's not that bad, the applicant's got testimony, he'll present it and rely upon that. When I first came up here, we used to have one attorney locally who would provide all the testimony for the developers and we accepted it. And they weren't experts. Now they show up with all the experts. We have to have somebody to counter that. And we have to be willing to bear the cost of that or put it upfront into our regulations so that that money's there for us to use if necessary. If we feel it's unnecessary, they can get it back when the project's done.
I want to say one thing real quick, and I'm going to come to you. Sometimes our job is tough because of this. We we we're dealing with staffing issues, we have to deal with them publicly because I can't call Mike and Jake, we can't have this conversation privately. Uh, and we know, I just want to be clear, we know there's like a million things that are happening literally as we speak that are done extremely well. We're dealing with the the 1%, you know, we're here to work on, you know, we're not here to talk about all the things that are going great across the city and all the great work staff does. We're here to talk about other other opportunities to improve and and deal with the issue. So I just want to be very clear, we're not, you know, we're not trying to attack anybody here, but we gotta, we gotta work through issues and so there's opportunities here. Commissioner Sacks?
I'll try to be brief. I'm sometimes wordy and not so eloquent, but at 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 this point, at this point, when I'm called upon to be a judge, I'm called upon to be objective, which I really try to be, and study up on all of the issues that come before us. Let's just say a big development. And before us stands an attorney, the applicant, a bunch of people with letters behind their name, expert witnesses, and it comes to blows. And an attorney, a a judge says, you didn't provide substantial competent evidence. And meanwhile, that person at the podium with those letters behind their name babbles, literally babbles. And I tried to provide what substantial competent evidence that I have learned. And then the judge overrides my judgment and says, no, you don't count. So we're going to do something that's harmful to your city. That, you know, at these, like a special exception, that it harms the character of the surrounding or adjoining districts. And I, it's not because I don't like the size of the pool, the shape of the pool, it's because I'm trying to think of the future. I know the land is looking for water elsewhere, though I'm afraid that I I don't want us to be in that situation. How, how much can we take? Should we always have a peer review? I know we have competent staff, but they are not experts in everything. And so we're, I'm a layperson. So I, it, I really feel like there's a lot of times that if if push comes to shove, that that peer review of their substantial evidence.
I think that's the, because because you just, you just said the the key there is you're a layperson, I'm a layperson, we're all lay, I mean, we may be experts in something, but when it come, you know, you're right, they, the lawyers provide the expert testimony. And if the, if the sworn expert testimony is, it's kind of like in a court case, the 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 judge is not, you know, if if the testimony is, well, I guess it's different than a court case, but anyway, the the point is, is we're not the experts. We're supposed to listen to that and then base our, base our decision as, does that, you know, does that? We're not introducing the evidence, we have to consider the evidence presented. And that's where there's always the tension, is that what you just said, like, as a layperson, I've recent, I I believe it does impair, but the expert, there's no expert that's testifying that it impairs. So now you're introducing evidence from up here. It'd be like the judge in a court case saying, oh, by the way, I found the murder weapon, you know, like, you can't do that, like, that has to come, like, that has to come from the prosecution in the case. So maybe the parallel is oftentimes we have no proc, there's, there's no prosecution. Like, there's, there's just the defense, there's just someone up there saying, yep, here's all our evidence. And we've had, you know, staff do their best to piece it apart, but you're dealing with, you know, top tier attorneys and 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 experts, if that's all they do versus staff who's trying to do this among the 48 million other things that they're doing. And I think that's where we, I think that's what Mike was saying, and I think I I mentioned earlier too, as well as, you know, that's probably where we we can do a a better job potentially is to give ourselves some more ammunition and have someone, part of the, this has to be someone giving some rebuttal, and that would give us a chance then to say, my, I go with this expert, that is, that is the judge, you know, that is the expert opinion that I, I'm, is is that, so how would that come? So if we had expert, you know, attorney A says, you know, hires an expert, says X. Next attorney hires an expert and they're in conflict at that point now, because we we've never had that happen.
Now you can use what you've studied to determine who's more believable.
Okay, because we're rarely, I don't remember being in that case. I mean, rarely does that happen where we have, the experts are stacked up. Usually it's, we have the expert witnesses and then we have uh, testimony from from the public, but they don't have the letters after their name and they don't, a judge wouldn't accept them as an expert witness. It'd be like in a murder trial, if you just had random people in the audience stand up and say, well, I think they're guilty. You can't have that, right? So that's kind of what we usually have.
Yeah, I think it goes back to his comment on, basically, it would be a budgeting issue so that they have a resource where they can say, oh, you know what, we really need to have a subject matter expert on X, Y or Z, and then they can pull from this fund to pay for it.
And let me, let me be crystal clear, I think I speak for all of us, like, I'm not looking for someone that we then go out and cherry pick who we're buying, you know, or hiring. I just want to make sure that they're, if they work for the person that's doing the application, we don't know, that may be the third person they hired. Yeah, the first two may not have given them the report they wanted, and that may be the fir, the third person they hired. I'm just saying, I want to make, you know, so I'm not saying we would necessarily even do that and cherry pick and find someone. I'm just saying, I want someone that is for sure not on their payroll. I want someone that's on our payroll, that's looking at it completely subjectively, not from their vantage point. So I don't want to call any of these professional qualifications into doubt, but. All right, I don't know if we've solved anything today. I think we've got the new, we've got new person starting. So my thought would be, if the commission agrees, is those, relay some of this, this can be something they can look at when they get started. If there's opportunity here, yeah, I I don't know. If if we need to make changes or don't, I could go either way. Sounds like this is maybe where we do have some opportunity. So what are some best practices there? How can we get there where we have a little bit more tools in our tool belt? Because I think, what he said, said it very well. That's what, how we often feel up here, is that it's, we're judge, but yet it's, we got, you know, it's almost predetermined before it comes up and we don't have enough things in our, you know, we we, we know if we vote no, that we're putting our our city and our citizens at risk of a costly lawsuit. And nobody wants to do that, but we also sometimes, even as laypeople, can look at something and say, you know, that is going to have an impact. So.
So we're stuck between a rock and a hard place that, you know, you you're criticized badly by the residents that are affected or the other way around?
Yeah.
Or you're sued, or you're sued.
Well, yeah, that, well, yes, it is. I mean, it's absolutely tough, because the residents don't understand that. I mean, 99.9% of the residents don't understand what we just talked through. They, I mean, you know, I get told the city built something, and I'm like, the city has a, you know, we don't build things, we're definitely not residential development. So, you know, there's a huge, that's where I think it's come on us to try to do some education and make sure folks understand, you know, why we vote particular ways and what property owner rights are and and why those are important to all of us as property owners. So, yes, they, the public doesn't understand that.
But we, we recently did that, when we renovated this building. Our fire marshal at the time said sprinkler systems aren't required if you meet these standards. We got a new fire marshal and now they're required. Now we're tens of thousands of dollars in the budget for the sprinkler system where should, at that time, should we have gone back out and said, well, let's go find us an expert and say, well, do we really need a sprinkler system or not? No, we just ponyed up and paid the money. So, I mean, we, you you can do that with anything that we do here. Like, like Commissioner Colode's idea that maybe we should set up a separate fund or RFP for an environmental specialist that that staff can use when some of these things are at a sensitive nature to where we could use that. You know, they can be on a retainer or whatever, not that much. I'm sure that some of the people that we already use probably have somebody in that to have a second look at it. You you know, Jeff's not comfortable with something and he just wants a second look or doesn't, then certainly I think that's something we should afford them, but again, it's going to cost somebody something. And, and, you know, we're already into a budget cycle, so it's going to be another budget cycle. And you you know, we're Robin Peter to pay Paul, so, so, you know, we're just.
I love the discussion, but when we get in to start talking about where we're going to pay money at, I'm going to call no moss and say, we have a million places to spend money that's very important with staff, increasing staff pay, police. So I'm going to, my eyes are going to gleam. I love the discussion, but.
Yeah, no, I I agree, and and I don't, I don't know that it should come out of our pocket. I mean, I think Commissioner, I don't know if it's, if it's, we're able to do it here, but he, he outlined a model where it's kind of almost part of the applicant, like, they have to pay into a fund, you know, which, but again, you don't want to stymie. It's easy to to look at one project and think, well, okay, that's good for them, but what about when it was the, you know, the small business that was trying to open on on Canal and just needed a special exception and it wasn't a big deal and, you know, so I, yeah, I get it, it's not easy, so. All right. Good discussion. I hope it's been educational for some. I think we'll continue it once we get new, uh, new staff on board. And then in the meantime, I like some of the ideas and and we can talk more about experts and how we might fund that and what some of those models can look like, so, but.
We'll come back with with some suggestions. I guess maybe we'll have a a mid-year workshop where we could come back to you or even before that.
All right, so it is noon.
The only thing I want to just, mayor, as far as raising, I think Commissioner Colode mentioned about raising the fee from a thousand, say like to 5,000. And I know when we raised the fee on on a variance for a thousand dollar, I mean, it wasn't maybe a week or two. And then some of the commissioners came back and said, hey, you know, this doesn't make sense, the guy is only doing this.
Yeah.
Why is it a thousand dollar? So just take that into consideration.
That's what I'm saying. It makes sense, like, for the, for the, of a certain scale, it makes perfect sense. But then you don't want to put it out of reach for the small business owners, just trying to do one little thing over off of Julia Street. And it happens, it's conditional, you used to have the jewelry store or whatever it is. And now all of a sudden we've hit, we've made this huge bar. I mean, that's something we got to be careful of. So, yeah, I completely agree. All right, it is noon. So let's take a break for lunch. I would say if we're back here by, you know, if we can start trying to rally by 12:30, um, does that work for everybody?
Yep.
Let's do that. Karen, you ready? We're all here, you ready? Okay, so next item, so we've got a new version of the map, but it's still, it doesn't, it doesn't actually quite work yet, so you can see no res, no, no neighborhood south of 44 for zone three. And then kind of squared off up there, um, near the sports complex area, you can see that's kind of squared off. The problem is it doesn't have enough residents in three. So my suggestion is, we're going to have to pull over there near the railroad where you see that kind of box, we're going to have to, that border is going to have to come down a little bit. So I'd say we just tell staff to figure out how to get that in balance and bring that map back. Does that make sense to everybody?
He could take over some over to Colony Park.
Or you could go that way with that, yeah, either way. However, we can do it, that's kind of the most, again, linear box as possible.
Four, close to 400.
So is that your neighborhood that that put all that numbers in three, then in other words, that's a pretty fair population?
Yeah, because the townhomes in there, yeah, Corbin, well, I don't know if you had so much at Corbin, but yeah, the, I mean, you have Hawes Cove and the Hidden Pines Townhomes, that's a lot of people. So, yeah, you got, you got to pick up about 300 or so. But it's got to be from, it's really got to be from zone four, it's a good point, Randy, can't really come from zone one so much. So, anyway, so it's not quite final yet, but that's, that's pretty darn close. We'll let staff just have Lonnie continue to play with it and get it figured out.
As I mentioned, we're probably between 350 to 400, I think we need to make it up to within the 5%.
Yeah.
And it needs a guy grid, come, needs to come in from zone four.
Yeah, well, yeah, I think it's got to, so.
Yes, if you go over to Colony Park, that's, I wonder how many are over there?
Yeah, I don't know if you, I don't know how many homes you pick up. And then you get into, probably put the next, then you get over to Sugar Mills.
Or you have Coastal Woods back.
Are you losing, losing Coastal? All right.
It's yours now, just take them back.
So next item up is code enforcement. So we've got about six items this afternoon. Commissioner McGurk, I think you mentioned you've got to go somewhere with those, do you want to?
Yeah, I got to leave like two, so, um, if I can move some around a little bit, I'd be deeply appreciative on that.
All right, so what, what are the, I have no issues with that, we're going to get through all of them. So which ones are you most interested in? We can elevate those up if everybody's okay with it.
Um, code enforcement and the Westward, um, the connection, the connection.
Okay.
Yeah, G and C, I guess I think C.
We're ready for the code enforcement.
So we're ready for code now, and then will we have whoever we need for G? Can we do that right after this? Everybody on the commission, anybody opposed to doing that? Okay, so we'll So we'll do that. So we'll do C now. So we'll do code enforcement now, and then we'll go to G, and then we'll get back on track, and hopefully be there for as much as you can, so, all right.
So I was tasked with going over code enforcement, and this is going to be a general overview with a PowerPoint, going over different aspects of code. I'm going to walk through the process and then, um, a snapshot of some of the revenue that you see, along with some of the issues that we've seen through individual properties and corporations.
Make sure they're talking on the mic so they can hear you out there.
So the City of New Smyrna Beach code is derived from the Florida statute one sixty-two. It gives you the city the power to act. The city code, chapter twenty-six, is defines the procedure and enforcement that is governed through that. And then the code enforcement officers take all of the city codes and enforce them throughout the city to maintain compliance. This is just a general process of how it works. So a complaint would come in either through a citizen or proactive patrols. So recently, you have seen that code enforcement has added more code officers. They are taking a more proactive approach through the city, which means they are out actively patrolling, looking for violations as they go. A citizen complaint is done by someone calling in. Recently, the Florida statute has been amended to not allow for anonymous complaints anymore. They must be, um, known people, so they have to give their name and address. However, unless it affects public health, safety, welfare, or imminent destruction to natural resources, then they allow for anonymous complaints. So right now, going forward, every complaint that is done by a citizen is a known complainant. Um, from there, it goes to the code enforcement officer. They will investigate. They will go out, look at the place. Usually, um, after speaking with the code enforcement officers, they talk to the property owner. They try to get compliance before they even start the case. They inform them of their violation. They give them a little time to comply. They go back and recheck the property, and if at that point, they still have not had compliance or contact through the property owner, they start, um, the violation. They give them a notice of violation. It's typically pinned on their door, and they've sent through certified mail. From that, if they don't comply, they go to the code board. Um, they're given a compliance date. If at that point in time, they still have not complied, the code officer presents it to the code board or special magistrate. At that point in time, the special magistrate or the code board either gives them more time to comply, um, giving a new compliance date. They come back before the board. If the person is responsive, they will see how they've done, seeing evidence of either they're talking to a contractor or doing something like that. And eventually, if they comply, the case is over and done with. If they don't comply or they're unresponsive, at that point in time, a fine is given, and they are found in non-compliance. This talks about, when they're found in non-compliance, it's basically issue a fine, the special magistrate or the code board has found that they did not comply with city code. They fine them. Sometimes it's a one-time fine. That's rarely done. That's usually done on your business tax reven- license that they have not gotten. Typically, you see a running fine. So standard running fines are twenty-five dollars a day until the violation is completed. And it's the responsibility of the property owner to contact code enforcement to let them know that they remedied the violation. The bigger picture to consider here is really why? Why haven't they, if they've been unresponsive, why is that happening? Are they sick? Are they not there? What's going on? Now that we have these running fines going, sometimes they'll amount to more than what the property is even worth. So the next step is, what is the goal of code enforcement? Why is code enforcement established, and what is the goal? The goal is compliance. Um, that is the key. They want to maintain compliance. They want the health, safety, and welfare of the city to be seen. Um, this is a snapshot of your cases that you see throughout twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty, and twenty-nineteen. This year, there's been a little less compliance. They've been pretty compliant in twenty-twenty and twenty-nineteen. You know, you can speculate as to why that is, but you probably have had through the pandemic, property owners no longer being there, job losses, unfortunately, deaths are probably attributed to some of that as well. Um, this breaks it down to your nuisance cases, cases that the board have seen in your total cases, along with the ones that have actually complied. Current stats, this is regarding the revenue that has been brought in through the city. So if you look, the top is the revenue that was generated through code. Between twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty-one, you'll see a big jump in the revenue that was brought in. That was a partnership between the city attorney's office, finance, and code enforcement staff to push out bills and let people know that they have these fines, that they were running. And you can see, a lot of them are probably unaware of it and did end up paying for, um, the fines. That's where you see a big jump in the revenue. Accounts receivable shows that this is a fluctuating number that will always change. These are, if someone has paid off their lien, it will go down. If a lien is capped because they have now come into compliance, that twenty-five dollar running lien has stopped. They then bill them that total amount, and that goes into your accounts receivable. Your nuisance abatement are your different types of fines. Those are the ones for your one-time abatement. You're cutting your grass, your demolitions, your removal of junk. That's what your nuisance abatement amount is regarding. So collection is something to be considered. Um, investigating whether a collection agency should be utilized in the city to try to recoup some of these fines and fees that are being used. The city has to maintain control of the fine. The city has to be the one that can satisfy these liens. However, you can do a partnership with a collection agency as like a contingent of, you get a percentage of this or a fee from that, but you cannot sell to the collection agency the bad debt. You must still maintain control of that lien and that file. Some of the bigger issues that you see are your corporations. This is something that is, I think, more of a problematic throughout the city is, for example, Tarpon. Um, Tarpon was a corporation. It went throughout Volusia County, probably other counties as well, buying up a lot of land. They no longer are an active corporation. So these are the fines that are running here. They are different properties that they did own at one time. They amounted to numerous fines and violations. The ten-ten Canal Street, while that's one property, that's the result of a demolition that occurred and followed up by land maintenance and yard maintenance. A lot of these fines are the results of JV properties. Those two properties right there are yard maintenance. The city is spending money to maintain the yard. So something to be considered is the LDR has property maintenance standards. The standard is twelve inches. The grass has to be maintained in the weens at. That's something to, um, consider, whether you want to put an importance on the land maintenance of some of these vacant lots or not. Time and expense is being utilized to cut this grass at this point in time. These are individually proper.
I'm sorry, Shay, can you go back and restate? I'm not sure, you said something about the grass being twelve inches. It's in the LDR. What, what were you, I missed what you were asking us if we wanted to make a decision.
Consider maybe amending that to a little higher standard instead of twelve inches, two feet, or something along those lines.
And that's relatively new, because I, I, I think I recall when we didn't have a, a standard in place, a twelve inches in place. Is that correct?
That I couldn't tell you. So individual property owners, um, these are some of the homes that you see some of the constant issues with. They range, the next slide, it talks about all the most cited issues. Most of them have building maintenance issues, landscaping, trash debris, exterior stuff. That's something you see throughout those properties typically, and that's typically what you're seeing before the board. A lot of these just kind of rundown properties. A creative way of dealing with these properties would be a community-based assistance, adding some new ordinances that would intertwine repercussions due to existing code violations, adding a provision to allow the city attorney to foreclose on liens. That could be done by resolution, establishing caps and fines, working with the police to follow criminal charges, and allowing the code board's special magistrate to, to consider lien amnesty. So taking them individually, the community-based assistance, um, one thing, this is kind of outside-the-box thinking. I think knowledge is power wherever you are. So getting information out there in the hands of code would be very important. One thing is to consider CRA grants for helping to fix sides. Daytona Beach is an example here. Daytona Beach has CRA grants that they give to homeowners within their, um, specific redistricting areas. It's up to five thousand dollars. This is to help fix paints, railings, anything along those lines. That's something that they consider. Habitat for Humanity underneath that, Brush with Kindness. Matthew Billings, he works with Habitat for Humanity. I believe he's been here before. We spoke with him. This Brush with Kindness program is actually very interesting, um, and he'd be willing to elaborate on a little bit more. But briefly, what it is, is they go out in an area of someone who qualifies, and they will do anything from fixing a roof to painting a house to helping a railing, as long as the person qualifies, that you put them in contact. One of the things to consider is code enforcement having this information to pass on to the individual that they may qualify for this type of situation and help them along the way. One of the things to consider, though, is a free cra- grass-cutting program. Establishing a list of companies or people, or people in the community, willing to go out and assist some individuals who may be down on their luck. Matthew Billings also is willing to consider that. He's thought about that, um, looking into resources that Habitat may be able to help with. But even the community themselves going out and seeing that their neighbor's yard, someone who may be hurt, injured, can't just get to it. Other things are going on in their lives. Other considerations to be made is possible homes in the CRA waiving grant fees, um, possible people on fixed income. So your possible veterans, or your EBT, or your welfare, or something along those lines, considering helping them out to make their home a little bit more sustainable and using the affordable housing standards as a consideration of that. This is based on some related ordinances. So back to some of these corporations or individual property owners who buy up numerous lands, drafting ordinances that would have repercussions built into outstanding violations. You could put this in Article Three of the LDR, which would, um, prevent permits from being issued for any unrelated issue. So if you're trying to pull a permit because you're trying to fix the building, that would be different. But if you're pulling a bill, a building permit to build something on another site, but you have outstanding liens within the city, you don't get to build that, you know, have that building permit. Don't allow special event permits, not eligible for grant programs. No unrelated permits could be pulled unless it's to fix that problem. Foreclosure, um, foreclosure currently is allowed in the city code under ordinance twenty-six fifty-four, but it's a very narrow allowance. It's only for uncertified contractors. And it has to go before commission to get the approval to enter into this litigation. You could consider adding an additional provision that is very similar to this one, allowing the ci- the city attorney to do foreclosure, going through the same process. Or you could do a general resolution to allow the city attorney to just foreclose on qualifying properties. If you did the general resolution, you would have to consider the budget impact. The city attorney's office would need a budget to, for the filing fees, the investigative costs, and everything that's associated with that. Florida statute six oh two establishes the ability to do that within ninety days, and it lasts for twenty years. Types of liens and roadblocks, the types of liens that we typically see are nuisance abatements and standard code enforcement leads. However, homesteaded properties basically stop any standard code enforcement lien that you could foreclose on. Your homesteaded property is, as you know, the, the person's home is their castle. It's the most sacred place to be. So Article Ten, Section Four basically talks about how you can't force that sale. Meaning a homesteaded property liens, while they're valid, they're unenforceable at the time until the property becomes unhomesteaded. So foreclosure, here's some pros and cons that go along with it. It might deter the neighbors. It's a source of possible revenue and potential for eventual compliance. There's no guarantee. The cons are, there's very few properties that would qualify because of the homestead, based on where your liens are. Is someone living in that home, and the ramifications of kicking them out of that home? It's a very slow process. As you know, court systems can take a little bit of time to go through. When they went through the big foreclosure process back in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, it was like two years to go through that process. It's gotten better, but it's still tedious. You have limited staff time and resources to devote to this, the cost associated, the filing fee, and also the difficulty of finding property owners or interested parties. So there's currently a home off of Old Mills. The gentleman has passed away. He has no living heirs at this point in time. That is a property that could potentially be foreclosed on, but you have to look at the fact that it's a mobile home type of situation. The expense gone into it, the expense going to look for any living heirs, doing the affidavits, doing the process for that. Or, you know, in the next year, it's going to go to tax deed sale because nobody's paying the taxes on it. This is an example of foreclosure for corporate lands, because corporate lands can't be homesteaded. Those are ones that would be considered. But for five forty-nine Charlevix, the lien is about three thousand eight hundred dollars. It's the result of cutting grass and maintenance, at least eight times. The value of the land is about twenty thousand dollars. So doing the cost-benefit analysis with the time and staff, is it something to be considered and talked about? Criminal charges is always a possibility for certain properties. These are your more egregious properties that you would see. One of the ones that can be utilized is this unlawful dumping statute, which makes it illegal for people to keep litter and basically have their own garbage site. The levels go from, you know, not exceeding fifteen pounds is a criminal infraction, all the way up to a third-degree felony. Exceeding five hundred pounds, that's a third-degree felony, which is punishable by five years. You can go to the basic Florida statute eight twenty-three zero one, which is general nuisance properties that annoy the community, injure the health of the citizen. This is a very generic statute. It ha- it is constitutional, but it's very vague, um, which means case law has dictated where this has gone, showing that it's been narrowly tailored. It's a little bit harder to prove, but it is a possibility. It is only a secondary misdemeanor. There are other elements in there that deal with drug homes or something along those lines that are doing illegal activity within the same statute. Some of the other things that I think are really important to consider is the lien amnesty within the city. So one of the biggest roadblocks here is this is your lien amnesty form, and the highlighted area that you probably can't see does not allow for a property owner who has violated to apply. Remember, the goal is compliance. So if the person who did commit the violation has so remedied the violation and now would ask the, the commission for lien amnesty, they are prevented from doing so because it's not permitted. But if they have come to compliance, consider allowing them to come before the commission to ask for a lien amnesty on some of these long-running fines that have taken time. Consider also allowing the special magistrate, the board, or the city manager to approve these liens. The special magistrate specifically knows these cases. They've seen these applicants. They've seen it throughout the process. They know the, the ins and outs a little bit more. Um, it's kind of fresh when it gets presented here. Consider pre-screening applications, having criteria that they have to abide by before they can even be considered for a lien amnesty. Kind of ma- rolling into that is caps, different views on caps. So Daytona Beach does a straight-up cap. Um, they take the type of home it is, they cap it at a certain rate, and they go up from there depending on the type of home it is and what the cap applies to. They assess the value as the tax value based on the year that the lien was put into place. Dunedin does a little bit differently. There's a, a reduction by percentage, which is kind of like a cap, but also a lien amnesty. They take the gravity of the violation. They give it a percentage. They take the time it comes into compliance and the previous violations that may have had. If they've had none, they get a reduction. The key to this one is that the city manager makes a lot of these decisions for Dunedin. However, if the amount of the fine is over fifty thousand dollars, they're asking to waive, then it goes to the commission. Like, the city manager is only allowed to waive fifty thousand dollars in the City of Dunedin. Another model was the City of Deland. Back in twenty sixteen, I believe they passed a resolution that capped every one of theirs at twenty-five thousand. They did any in non-compliance, January first to twenty-ten, they did twenty-five thousand dollars. Properties with liens imposed after the January first of twenty-ten was twenty-five thousand dollars. They also made the city manager's office inform all the violators. Basically, they told them that there is a city lien amnesty program of the new resolution, and their intent to foreclose or collect, go to a collection agency. And that's what they did at that point in time. The city or the county of Volusia County does it a little bit differently. The way they go about their caps is they allow the board to do it. So the board would issue a fine saying twenty-five dollars a day, not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. And they take into consideration the egregiousness of the violation, what the property owner is, is it a home, is it a corporation, and all that? And they allow the board to make that decision. Um, so that is my presentation.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead. It was up the whole time.
No, I just put it up. I was eating.
I looked over at one point. It was up during the thing. You saw it. I was like, but I watched you for a while. My, I don't know if I should interrupt her, and then you put it down. You were just eating.
No, 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 no. I was willing to wait. I, I have, uh, I like the presentation. It was very complete. Except I find one thing missing, a piece of information. On your revenue and accounts receivable, what are our expenses in operating the program? Our annual expense, what does it cost us?
To operate code?
Yes.
That I'm not sure of.
I think that's an important thing to know.
I would assume we'd look at their budget and see what their...
Yes.
Yeah. All right, we'll come back to that.
I would like to know that, I don't have to know it now. It's just a thing I always ask for, I like to see both sides of the equation. There's a number of things in here that I find very interesting. On the, I think they should come before the commission for anything big. I do think if we establish parameters for the magistrate to handle it on lien reductions, that would be fine, I could go along with that. The one thing that I've tried, and I would like to know the success, because I never really asked, when they've come before us and we've given lien reductions, is that I've been willing to go along with it, provided they pay within seven calendar days or whatever. Has anybody ever taken advantage of that?
So, being up in finance, I have seen at least two lien amnesties pay off in time from when they've come before the commission recently.
Good, I think that's incentive, otherwise, it's almost like being on a treadmill. Even though you reduce the lien, they don't pay it, and then the new fines keep adding up. So if we could write that into our regulation somehow, then I think that would be helpful, might get them quicker. I also think that in the past, we let things go on for too long, so as much as I don't like to foreclose on people, especially if they live there, we probably can't, I would like to make sure we don't let these fines run up forever. So, I don't know if we have to have an artificial cap on it, but we should have some type of cap on our system that makes us take action. Good presentation. The only complaints I hear about code enforcement is people who have been cited, so that's their problem. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm going to be all over the place, so I apologize in advance, I got a lot of thoughts on this. Great presentation. Real quick, how many code enforcement officers did you say we had?
I believe there were five, but five, yeah.
Okay, all right. We're not doing anonymous complaints anymore, appreciate that reminder, I remember. A lot of us commissioners are going to be filing complaints on behalf, I think, of residents. I'm not in favor of CRA money to fix little code problems, I think that is a rabbit hole we go down, and it's going to be a big problem, not even sure that that would work. Anyway, I'm not a fan of that. Community-based assistance is, I think, interesting, I think there's some points that piqued my curiosity, and others that were like, oh, I want to stay away from that. You know, having an organization or a group of people who are willing to go out and mow people's yards, who are, you know, in medical conditions or something, that's great, that would be awesome. Lien amnesty, a lot of dynamics with that. We don't, I'm conscious of lowering liens when the code enforcement officers have been doing all the work. So I might drag Barb up here, not at this time, but before I make decisions on lien amnesty, I want to know how the code enforcement officers feel about that. Doesn't mean I'm always going to agree with them, but I think their input is important on that. The owner, the highlighted piece of paper that you said, it uses the word "previous", it's confusing to me. I think I understand, it says if you are the owner of the property when liens were, or the codes occurred and the liens were put on the property, you cannot. The word "previous", if you were the owner of the previous, and I think it says liens, I need to pull it up, but that word "previous" just confused me a little bit. So if you took out the word "previous", I think...
Previous code violation, yes.
So if you take out the word "previous", I think it reads perfectly, but that word "previous" got me bunched up there a second ago. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay, so, and that may just be me, I'm not saying to change it, but you may want to take a look at that. Caps. I'm generally in favor of caps, I know that this issue we have out in Canarders, if I remember correctly, is like over 300,000 in liens on a property, so it's unlikely we'd ever get that much, number one, and number two, no one is, the general public is not going to understand the crazy history of that property. So simply the image, or the reputation, or the perception in the community by our residents that we, the city, the government, had a $300,000 plus lien on a piece of property, there's no way to the average person who does not understand the complexity of that case, that that's not a gross overreach by government. I don't think it is, in this case. But in the end, I don't think it does us any good by having that kind of fee, or that kind of fine, because we're not going to collect it, and it just makes us look bad. So in terms of caps, I'm interested in caps for those reasons. So that was basically responding to this, to your presentation. Couple of things that I just want to talk about in general about code enforcement, and of course, I'm going to give the, I'm going to give you a heads up, it's nothing against you guys and things I say, it's going to be impossible for you all to be like, what's he talking about? Perceptions in the community of code enforcement. Number one, we are reactive, not proactive, is that correct?
So you react to the violation proactive in the fact that you're out looking for a violation?
Right, we have never been proactive, have we taken a different position, that is a big deal in code enforcement.
My understanding is, recently, there has been a more proactive approach, as in they're out driving around the communities, looking to see the violations. I have seen numerous violations come through, that they've been out on another call and noticed a resident next door that has, you know, numbers not up, grass not kept, and started a violation there. So proactive in those acts.
I'm not in favor of proactive code enforcement. Now, what I mean by that is, people, code enforcement officers, driving around arbitrarily looking, I don't support that, I think that creates a whole new set of problems. One code enforcement complaint, there's a code enforcement complaint on a home, code enforcement shows up, dealing with that complaint, and they start hitting things around the neighborhood. I'm not a fan of that, I've been told that we can't have selective code enforcement, so somehow that has to occur. That's my understanding, my interpretation of how it's been presented to me. If that's not accurate, I don't support. I think someone complains, you go deal with it, but you don't sit there and go ticky-tack people on things. Because when someone calls me to tell me that code enforcement told them they're in violation, they just drove by and said, I can see your garbage cans from the street, they're not on the street, they're put back on the side of the home, that's not the kind of thing I want code enforcement spending their time doing. Someone doesn't like it, they can complain about it. That's why I like reactive code enforcement, not proactive. I'm going to bring up a situation, and this is not, it's not caused by code enforcement, it's caused by top-down. Commissioner Colletti had, yeah, luckily for you, nothing. This was in his neighborhood, and this is a great example. We do these, and I did a lot of research figuring out what was going on, it has to do these licensing agreements and right-of-ways, which our city has been aggressive on. So you have in a neighborhood, a street, Quay Cissie, where people have lived there for many, many decades, and everybody has landscaped, or rocks, or this or that. So, a driver apparently, as best I could tell, was not paying attention, ran off the road into someone's property or on the right-of-way, hit a rock, and then somehow determined that they're a victim. Somehow calls code enforcement. So code enforcement goes all the way down this neighborhood, tagging people on stuff in the right-of-way, things, rocks, landscaping, that have been there for decades. There's a no-win on that. Now, this starts because now code enforcement has to respond to the fact, it's not code enforcement's fault, this is something we created. So that is a great example of how we really upset the residents on something that I'm just not sure, we need to be, we need to recognize and be more cognizant on stuff that we send top-down, and how that's going to be felt through the community. So I'm not a fan of that, I'm not a fan of what happened there, I'm not a fan of, you know, ticky-tacking stuff, I don't want proactive code enforcement. Another perception, I'll give another example. I think everybody agrees that the chronic people, the people who continue to do things wrong, are the people we really want to go after. I don't want my neighbor whose garbage cans were seen from the street, no one cares, no one even thought about it, until they say, oh, I got a code violation for that, that was it. On the other hand, in my neighborhood, before I moved in, and I've been there eight years, there's a guy who parks a truck with a construction trailer and bobcats and other construction equipment on it in the right-of-way. I was fresh meat when I got elected and moved into the neighborhood, it had been a chronic problem. Now they're like, looking at me, oh, so I was, I was the fresh meat that they wanted to get to fix this problem. To this day, it's not fixed. It's gone on for, I've lived in the neighborhood eight years, and there's people in that neighborhood, half the people, who are very, very upset with it, and it makes no sense on how this has not gotten fixed, and this is where we get beat up. It's a conspiracy, I am close with him, he was close, he was best friends with the previous commissioner. None of these are true, never spoke to the guy in my life personally. Yet, the perception from the people in the neighborhood is, he must know people, he must know the commissioner, they're working against us, it goes on and on. These are the things that drive us nuts and the residents nuts, and I'm not placing blame anywhere, I'm just trying to figure out how we can address the disconnect between the residents and what their perception is. And so I give two examples of how things continue or perpetuate into something that is a disaster. So this guy, just the other weekend, he'll drop his, he'll remove his truck, drops a trailer in the right-of-way, big construction trailer, leaves it there for the weekend, the long weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, picks it up Monday. It's not a new problem, been going on for over 10 years. So, I don't know how we fix that, I'm just wanting to bring the problem out into the open, because I know a lot of things get missed. I'm going to look at Barb, Barb, why is this still a problem, and she's going to, you What can, anyway, so that, I'll leave it at that.
So, two things real quick, you're next up. So, one is, I often sympathize sometimes, like Shay standing there like, one tenth of that is in her purview, so, we get that, sometimes we're just venting like, you know, someone hopefully is listening out there, right? But, I just learned about all of that right now, I didn't know any of those backstories to Quay Cissie, certainly what's going on in your neighborhood, I'd never heard about. But I think it's an example, one of the things that I think, you know, look, you all have your frustrations, we have our frustrations, right? Sometimes they're the same, but one of the things that I think that's an example of is sometimes, you know, an issue's been going on for eight years, and it's like, we can't get any traction on, and then all of a sudden, our phone starts blowing up, or email starts blowing up, because a whole new issue's been created, like, we found a problem, we created a problem, we, the city, collectively, all of us, you know, we created a problem over here, and so sometimes I think the frustration, I know I've felt it, and it sounds like you were feeling in that case, like, hey, instead of going and creating that problem in Quay Cissie, what if we put that same energy on this issue I've had for eight years that hasn't been resolved? That being said, there are issues, I mean, I've talked to many times with Kerry on some stuff, and you know, the foreclosure, like, why can't we just foreclose on the property? Well, homestead, you know, the answer is you can't, you know, so that's tough. Anyway, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Sacks on this.
Thank you. So my question, Counselor, regarding lien reductions, if the magistrate sets a fine, the violator comes to us for a lien reduction, I've had a problem with that ever since I was given this job. Because it seems arbitrary a lot of times, I don't have the expertise to know exactly how much to drop or even wish to drop, because the magistrate and our code enforcement found the violation, they didn't address it, goes to the judge, and then, when it comes to a lesser judge, me, we're supposed to be judges. So, I'd like to find a way that the magistrate, if we're going to go that route and reduce liens, that the magistrate decides whether it can come to us or not at all, I would prefer not at all. The magistrate should decide what the fine is, that's my opinion. Because it, I don't know, it's unwieldy, it's uncomfortable, or maybe it's part of my job, and I'm supposed to do it, I don't know, but it's not, I don't think it's proper. Because it's seemed all over the place, over the years, that I've sat here. So, that's one problem. The other big problem is the anonymity issue. We had a builder, he was violating many, many times, neighbors came to me, they were in fear. So I'm wondering, you mentioned some clauses or loopholes where a person could report and still be anonymous. If they are in fear for their life or property, can they be anonymous?
So it's more, the way I read the statute, is more in fear for life safety of an individual, so you have a pool that is not fenced, and a child could fall into that. That, to me, is a life safety issue, not so much the way, I believe you're describing it, is more along their fear of retaliation from the builder. I don't believe that's what the statute intent was, the statute's intent was more along life safety of, you know, you're putting up something that's not permitted, and people could fall, or it could break, or something along those lines, not afraid of retaliation.
That's mandated by the state?
Yes, it was a legislative thing done through the House and Senate a year ago, and put into effect July 1st.
In your opinion, if material like concrete dust, if a guy's cutting block in his house, and it affects a guy who has asthma next door, that's a life safety issue, correct?
You think that would be, you know, it's hard because you would do it as a general thing, not taking the individual individually, typically you take it as the general outcome at that point in time, you know, the general neighbor at that point, because then you could really bring that down to a minute detail, and you could really get around this statute pretty easily. I think this statute would probably try and get more in line of being able to confront your accuser aspect, I mean, that is a very big foundation in a lot of legal things, is being able to come and confront your accuser, person who is complaining on you, and I think that was the intent behind this, is that you don't want these anonymous complaints, and nobody's able to refute that. But I think if you start taking each individual neighbor or something along that line, someone could find a reason why it's health or safety.
Yeah, it's funny, because now we've become the complainants. Actually, five people came to me, and one day I hear, oh, Mr. Sacks, didn't know the fellow, the contractor. How do you know me? Well, you complained about me. Conversation carried on, and I told him, that's because people complained to me, they're representative, and I'm here to tell you. And so, fortunately, we didn't come to blows, some mutual respect there, fortunately, especially for me, who was twice my size. But, the point is, there's so much entitlement in the city, that is just a statement, that people feel that, oh, I have the right to do this, I can do whatever I want. And so then we have to call code and bother Barb and their staff. So, I'm not so sure I'm 100% against proactive, because it's hard, like on weekends, you see a lot of workers doing stuff that they shouldn't be doing, and maybe staff doesn't work on weekends, it might be a rarity. Those are the two things that affects me, that I wished that we could address a little better. That's all I have, thanks.
Can't remember, I saw your hand, have you talked yet?
His hand was up, so I'll let him go.
Go ahead. I can't remember if you talked on this topic.
Commissioner McGurk brought up the subject, and Commissioner Sacks just hit on, I think we got to be reactive, we can't be proactive, because where do you stop? Because where do you stop? Uh, you brought up a, an issue in my particular neighborhood, which has a hundred and twenty houses in it. Occasionally, there's complaints that people park their boat trailers in the driveway. Half the houses have boat trailers in their driveways, their yards, and wherever. Where does that inspector stop? If the guy who's been cited doesn't like it, let him file a complaint against his neighbors, and that will stop half of that. So, uh, that's not a legal issue. It's just, I think that's the way we should operate, that would be my suggestion. There's violations of everything everywhere. Weekend warriors are out there filling in the right of way next to our house, so they can park their boat trailer there, and you know, where are you, where are you gonna stop it? You can't, so, I think we gotta draw the line on that. Uh, the other ideas that I, I addressed regarding the leans and stuff like that, I would like to get as many derelict properties that we can off the map. Clear them out, if we have to spend money on it, and then put them up for our affordable housing, or sell them, if that's the best way to do it. But, you drive through some neighborhoods, and you'll see ten nice houses, ten nice houses and one bad house. And if it's, if it's caused by not adhering to our rules and regulations, we should be aggressive in, in clearing the issue up. Thank you.
So, first off, I think we need to change the name from code enforcement to code compliance. I think Deltona just recently did that. To me, that makes more sense. You know, not to say that we should go out and change everything today, but, you know, going forward, maybe change code enforcement officers to code compliance officers. I saw that in the paper, I thought that was a really good idea, and it gives a more positive effect. As far as your proactive approach, I'm all for proactive, because I, I've ridden with code enforcement, I've attended almost every special master meeting, and several of these officers are out there, will see a piece of property, have a conversation with somebody, get that problem fixed before it's an enforcement issue. So that's a proactive approach, approach, they kind of have a very positive effect. Because they see this, they talk to them, and, and most of the officers that I've come to know are, do business that kind of a way. You know, they'd rather work with the individual, because they don't want to go through the hassles of writing it up and, and go through the whole process, they'd much rather you just come into compliance. If you're in violation, you're in violation, whether you've been doing it for twenty years or thirty years. If your speed limit is thirty, and everybody in your neighborhood drives forty, and then all of a sudden, somebody kills one of your kids, do you say, "Oh, well, that wasn't right?" I mean, the laws-
You raise the speed limit to forty.
Right, the law, there's my point. The law is the law, and we're the ones, are the guidelines, and we're the ones who set those guidelines. If you don't want to enforce boat trailers in front yards, take it off their list. You know, if you don't want right-of-way encroachment, take it off the list. And then that way, everybody's compliant. But those things were there for a reason. What do you want your neighborhoods to look like? Where's the charm of New Somerita Beach if we're putting boats and campers in everybody's front yards, or on the right-of-way? So, this is a two-edged sword, and, and I think that, again, most of these people that are out there working this are, have a lot of common sense, and have, have the desire to try to get a compliance, rather than to start the process of a code enforcement. So, I, I think that we, um, there are some tweakings that we can do, but I certainly do think that the proactive approach works in sometimes. So do we really want to negate all of that proactive work that they're doing? You know, just because we think that, oh, they're out there being too aggressive? You know?
Let me, let me jump in here, I'll use that example, same thing. Apparently, if I understand, and Carrie, feel free to jump in. We changed the rules on what you can do with the right-of-way in front of your home. Nobody is allowed to have anything in front of there without a licensing agreement, for the mo- right?
Yeah, no, no permanent encroachments in the right-of-way, if you're gonna put anything in there, you need a license agreement.
Good. Everybody, almost everybody is in violation of it, because that is a new rule, where historically, people have landscaped and put little rocks or decorative rocks. We have a proactive code enforcement, even with the reactive. I don't know how we deal with that in a fair and equitable way, other than maybe every single person in the community gets a notice that says, "You are now on notice, that you cannot have anything in the right-of-way, and by this deadline, if you haven't remedied it, you're gonna be getting fined." I'm not a fan of that. I'm not a, I don't see the problem in the first place, with someone put some rocks around their mailbox. And, and, and my neighborhood, a lot with his neighborhood, my neighborhood's a little more eclectic, it's a ni- nice word to use. We're not as upscale as, but we're eclectic, which means we're a boating neighborhood. And for the history of my neighborhood, everybody has used their right-of-ways to either park on or put their boat on. I'm gonna tell you right now, I have zero interest in having code enforcement go proactive around my neighborhood, enforcing a new rule, that the residents don't even know about, never heard of. So, we go proactive, how do we deal with these kinds of issues? Cause I can assure you, you wanna have a couple hundred people or a couple thousand people in here, we'd just send that notice out proactively. We're gonna have a world of hurt on our hands.
We're the ones that set that rule. Take that rule away. That's the easiest way to fix it.
The attorneys may have a different opinion on that.
Then the other thing is, I, I certainly do, um, I think the idea of the caps is a good idea. Certainly, I think the easiest way to do that is at the code, code enforcement officer's recommendation, or certainly at the magistrate. Could say, it'd be twenty-five dollars a day to a cap of. Um, I certainly agree with that. When I look at the lean issue, the pros and the cons, the cons way outweigh the pros. So, I, I'm not so sure that we want to spend staff time and money and energy in that avenue to try to foreclose on some of these properties, and then, you know, then what are we gonna do with them? I think, um, given some, maybe changes in our lean, lean amnesty to, um, where a percentage of it is done, if you come in compliance, you know, it's your first offense, whatever, I certainly could support something like that, to maybe proactively get somebody to get off of the code enforcement list, to clean up some of these properties. I did talk to Mark Billings about the Habitat program. It's not something that they're currently doing right now, but they're interested in looking in, into something like that. And, um, I've suggested that on the West Side, you know, as, um, you know, that was Martin Luther King's whole thing, was the neighborhoods and the helping one another, and the helping hands, and I suggested maybe that would be the time or the place to do that sort of thing, for a community effect. So I think that maybe we, through community activism, or even some of these other organizations, that, that may be a way for these small, non-compliance issues, you know, that are just sitting out there, the, the easy ones, the graphs. If, you know, if your officers can provide, you know, a list to someone in the community, or even, even one of, you can call me. Um, and, you know, we can work on those kind of things, I think that would be a proactive approach to take on some of these things. Thank you, very good presentation, thank you. Too much sugar, watch.
No, I'm just sitting here a moment.
I think, just to add proactively, just the presence of code enforcement out there might send a good message. Not look actively looking, but if there's something glaring and dangerous, maybe it's time for the city to step in. You know, um, that's what I'm looking for. They're, they're busy enough, I'm sure, with the reactive stuff.
So a couple, I don't think I've commented on this one yet, so a couple of things. Number one is, you know, finding an issue, I, I think it's, it's kinda like I'm an officer, I once rode with an officer back when I was a teenager, he, we were sitting there, and he was like, "I guarantee you, out of the next ten cars that pass, I can, I can pull over," you know, "one of those ten." Like, you know, three cars went by, and one of them had, you know, the headlight out or something. So, you, it's almost to the point where, I think probably any, probably my house, you, you know, almost any home, you could probably, if you just went over with a fine-tooth comb, find something that's out of compliance. So the issue's not finding, finding an issue. Uh, I like the theme of the presentation that I heard, um, is the goal's compliance. Like, what we really want's compliance, I want some of these issues to go away. I, I brought this up, you know, Jungle Avenue, there's a few other places where you have a row of homes, and they're just all becoming, you know, degraded, and, and those things tend to spread a bit like cancer. So that's what I, you know, I'm more focused on that. You've got some of the other rules, the, 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 the RVs and, and, and parking, and driveways, and boats and right-of-ways. The, the challenge is, the reality, and this is why it's challenging for them, is cause those, those are all written black and white. I mean, it's, it's the rule that you can or can't do it. But, in practice, it comes down to the neighborhood. Uh, in, in my opinion, it comes down to, if none of my neighbors have an issue with it, and if that's kind of the, the, the way the neighborhood operates, then, you know, we're kind of okay with it. Now, once somebody with a badge shows up, that's not, they can't ask, "Is the neighborhood okay with this?" They just have to go, "Well, the law says this." And, and look, there's, you know, how many of you read the, you know, the funny laws that are on the books still, about walking an elephant across? You know, there's, there's all kind of stuff like that, but... So, that's when you run into issues, is you all of a sudden have someone new that comes in the neighborhood, or some issue happens like happened in Quay C.C., and now all of a sudden, that perpetuates off the neighborhood, and, and they're emailing us going, "It's been that way for twenty or twenty-five years." To Commissioner Hartman's point, that doesn't make it right. But it also validates that it hasn't been a big deal, like, it hasn't been an issue. It doesn't make it wrong either, maybe technically wrong, but not wrong from a, we need to go change it standpoint. But yet, it, you can't write legislation, you can't write code that is kind of, you know, subjective or discretionary, that's, that's the fundamental challenge. So I don't have an answer, I just wanted to get all those observations.
I'm thinking of an argument for reactive, not proactive.
Yeah, I don't know, I wasn't trying to make that.
Because we can't make everything subjective. So the complaints, the complaints, they come out, they measure it, we code.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess in that, in that re- realm. So, I, I think a lot of good stuff was made up here, hopefully you made some sense of that, and we took some takeaways. My, mine is, the goal is compliance, so whatever we can do, whatever tools we can give ourselves in the tool belt, to promote compliance on the egregious things. The things that you can see from the street, the things that you can drive by, and they call, the, the, the neighborhood is degraded because of it. Uh, you know, that's what I'm worried about. An RV sticking out an inch further than they're supposed to is, is not degrading the whole dad gum neighborhood, all right? A, a, a Bluetooth tarp on a roof, like it's been on Jungle Road for sixteen years, since two thousand four hurricanes, that's degrading the neighborhood, and the, and the yard's, you know, yea high, that's degrading the neighborhood, that I care about. There's cases, we can't do much about it, we can keep running up a fine, you made some valid points, I'm in favor of caps, because not only is the public not understand why we get up to five hundred thousand, they really don't understand when we waive five hundred thousand, because we acknowledge the reality, that we're never going to get that paid. So if we want to get this back to being a productive parcel of society, we should do the right thing, which is waive that and get it back on, that doesn't make any sense, and we then get land blasted. Why did you get, you know, you corporate giveaway, three hundred thousand dollars? No, we put a parcel back on the tax rolls, they're, they're now paying taxes, and the grass is cut, and that's a positive thing. So, I'm in favor of caps, I'm in favor of anything that, that furthers the goal of compliance. Um, you know, things like the, the, the grass cutting, um, you know, some community groups, that's actually something I'm passionate about. I was talking about with my wife the other day, me and my son may start doing some of that. There's a, a program, Fifty Lawns or something, it's something with Senior, you, you familiar with it? So she sent me a link, so, yeah, we could get some traction like that going, especially for someone that's kind of down on their luck, or, you know, challenges, medical, et cetera. But I, I've never lost sight of the goal being compliance, and I've already, I've had some debates with, with Wade about this, we've all heard from Wade, you know, he, he's big on no, you know, don't, don't waive, don't give any, any leans up, but Wade, that doesn't do us any good if it doesn't fix, if the, if it doesn't fix the problem. And so if the, if the property has been sold, and now the new property owner's trying to be a productive member of society, I'm okay with giving them a break, because my goal is to get the tarp off the roof and the grass cut, and have that be a nice home again. So, you know, I'm okay with that, if it goes to a special magistrate, you know, I, you know, I'm, I'm open to a, a lot of different things. I, I think, I don't know, I'm gonna leave the reactive proactive debate, I've said what I said, take it however you took it.
I got any comment? And I, and I almost forgot, really important. You touched on it with Jungle Road. I had, I called Chief one day, and I said, "Chief, I'm looking at this home, I know you have to know something about it, because I've watched over the years where it has essentially become a homeless, drug-infested place." And clearly, if driving by and taking a glance, it's, so Jungle Road, I hear exactly what you're saying. And we got five code enforcement officers, that, to me, is where the focus should be. I'm gonna tell you, the focus should be the motels on US One. Some of these businesses on US One, particularly the motels. I mean, those were the conversations that I was having eight years ago. That's where code enforcement I want focusing on. We got drug-infested, prostitute-infested, criminal, ongoing criminal enterprises in these buildings. That's where I want code enforcement spending most of their time. When I see the things that I see, when I talk to the neighbors about the little trashcans, and, and, and I know, Barb, I'm sure you're, you're, you're ready to jump out of your seat with some comments. I'm trying to frame this in a way that, I'm not picking on you. But, that is where I want code enforcement. That is where the residents that I speak to, they want code enforcement. They look at me and say, how, they're standing there eating an ice cream cone, and looking over at a motel and say, "How in the world is that even legal? How has that existed for so long? All of the debris and the trash, and all this crazy stuff." So, I'm gonna, you know... So if you need complaints, we can get complaints. But, those are the things that people see and that resonate with them. Jungle Road, motels on US One.
Start with Jungle Road. Jungle Road is one-
Talking on the, talking on the mic, they can't hear you.
Jungle Road, all the properties on Jungle Road, we have nineteen oh seven, we have nineteen eighty-six, and we have one other one over there that we're dealing with. Every one of them have fines running, currently running on the property. We can't go back and do a repeat fine, because the fine was never closed. So, the fine is still running. So we really are at a dead-end street. We bang our heads against the wall just as much as all of you do.
Yeah, probably more so. Is your daily, yeah, you live it, I get it.
We get frustrated, we drive by those places just to make those people miserable, and all we get is, I'm not even gonna tell you. So, the properties that you're talking about, and there's one property over there that now our friend from Canard is frequenting, because, I don't know if he's ran out of space, but obviously, he's bringing his stuff to other people's properties now, or helping them supposedly clean up. All those properties that, they're all in, it's like a big circle. And every one of them have fines running on them, they're all Volusia County properties, they're not even city properties. We've wasted more time, energies, I can't even tell you. We could've owned bulldozers by now and maybe remedied that way, I don't know, I shouldn't even be saying that on record, but that's to how frustrated we are at this point.
Don't worry, it's just a workshop.
Brilliant.
Um, as far as some of the motels, and I know the old Kmart is a thorn in our side as well. They paint, they do what they need to do to get us off their back. We just needed another avenue of some sort that can help us with these properties that, to go beyond that. We, we can only enforce what we have on the books, we can only enforce what's in the International Property Maintenance Code. We, I feel the team that I have right now, they go above and beyond by educating the people. We, they're now carrying some of the pamphlets in their trucks, they hand them to them, and they're like, "I'm gonna hand you this information, contact our office if we can direct you in any way." If anything we can do, we try to help, we try, we put those efforts out there first, before we even give you a notice of violation. So, that's, we're more about education than fines, we, we don't like to take people to the board. So, we're just as frustrated as everybody here.
But there's few people we want you to. It's, you know, it's kinda like what was said earlier, when he's doing a job that it didn't feel like, no one was paying attention to it. We know, when you go deal with a Kmart, when you deal with a Canard, when you deal with one of these things that never stop, we want you to keep, keep doing it, keep hitting them, keep hitting them. We, we know, we sympathize. That's one of the keys, is when I spoke, I wanted to give that disclaimer. That's one of the keys is when I spoke, I wanted to give that disclaimer. I don't want it to sound like we're picking on you.
I don't take it personal.
We know what your challenges are and we want to be able to help you solve those problems.
And I'll elaborate a little bit more on the case in your neighborhood, for instance. The problem with that issue is he brings whatever he decides to bring in. We notify him, he's paid fines, he's had repeat violations and he complies. The problem is they learn what they need to do and that's what they do to keep us off their back. So it's just one of those things that, and I have a code enforcement officer works every Saturday. He tries to hit the neighborhoods that he knows are problems to try to get some of that caught on the, to handle it on the weekends. So we just need, there needs to be more tools and I think the Florida State statute ties our hands in a lot of ways. And Shay and Perry can probably tell you a little bit more on that, but believe me, we're just.
Yeah. So, uh, last thing on this and we'll, we'll move on. So, um, is there anything, and you don't have to answer this right now even, but just for, for all of you involved, for you as frontline and for, for support and Kyle even. I guess what you've heard from today is like, we, we share the frustrations, we have our own frustrations. If there's anything, you, you mentioned that you need more tools and, and some, you, you, they, they comply with the bare minimum. You know, they, they, they paint what they're supposed to paint, uh, but you can only enforce what's on the books. So I guess my, my challenge to you is, you know, look at other cities, you know, take 10 other cities that you drive through and go, wow, this is a cool city. It's a nice city. Do they have something on the books that we don't? Do they have some, have they found some magic sauce that we haven't? Is there some, you know, code that they've gotten on the books that we, we could get on the books that give you those more tools? Again, acknowledging that, that, that the harsh reality is if someone just says they're not, if it's their homesteaded property, the Kmart's different, but if it's their homesteaded property and they just say, I'm not going to comply. The meters start spinning, but there's, that's kind of the worst case scenario. We end up with not a lot we can do because as you said, that's the castle doctrine and, and there's, you know, there's a whole, whole thing there. So anyway. So if, if you ever run across or you talk to your compadres in code enforcement across the state at your code enforcement conference, which is probably a riveting conference. When you're there, if you find, hey, here's some things that are working, I think this board wants to hear about this.
We are, um, Gary and I have been talking about looking into starting, maybe using some citations to, that'll basically help too with the tree contractors that are running them out there, some of the unlicensed contracting and some of that stuff. It may be something that we can use with the people that are dropping their trailers and the, the same people, we deal with the same boat trailers, the same construction trailers over and over again. That may be a tool that we may be able to get their attention quicker than with a notice of violation. So that's something that we are going to look into.
Okay, got it.
Just a few comments because I, I hear mixed signals. Um, when you're saying go visit a city that you like and see what they're doing, I could tell you this. They are proactive. Now, this case, I'm going to tell you, it's, it's happened. Former commissioner on the previous commission called on a complaint from someone. Code enforcement went out there. The guy's in violation. The guy said, well, look at the neighbors. The neighbors doing the same thing. So this is how it generates where you're saying now you're creating an issue. So now you're trying to go out there to fix a problem. And the guy's going, well, look, there is 50 other ones. They did exactly what I did. Why me not them?
Now you have an official complaint by that neighbor on every person he pointed out and it's on record.
Now it's reactive. Is that what you're saying?
Reactive and now all those neighbors know who said it.
But I always say it's, it's a fine line in code enforcement. So you know, at some point it's, it's always like, well, don't be, don't be proactive unless if it's I call you, then I want you to be proactive. And it's, uh.
I, I, I'll acknowledge that it's, it, I, I mean, I said it. It, it, this is a, it's a gray area. It's written in black and white, but once you walk out those doors, it's all gray and, and it's all, it is very subjective, but yet we can't write subjectivity in, into this. But it's very subjective. Um, so.
I mean, we used to have, uh, one code enforcement officer, Barb, and now we have five. So, you know, we're trying to be proactive. I don't think we are a hundred percent proactive, but we're trying to get to that point. But again, it's, it's, I think it's the mixed signals we're getting. It's, I think that's what they're confusing is sometimes it's like, how come you're not doing this? Then we start doing it and then someone will say, well, I didn't tell you to do that. I told you to only just be reactive. So.
Yeah.
And I'm just going to throw this out there. Just most recently, there's been people from other cities that have been commenting on how nice the city of New Smyrna Beach looks versus cities that they work in. So I'm just going to throw it out there that obviously adding the code enforcement officers has made a big difference.
Okay. All right. So sincerely Barb and your whole team, thank you. I mean, of, of all the thankless jobs in the city, and there are quite a few. There's five up here, but you, you're, yours is probably even worse in many ways. No one was ever happy to see you show up except the person that called and asked you to, to, you know, that, that ratted out their neighbor. Um, so between you and, and the parking, y'all should have like a therapy group or something for you and the parking enforcement. But so, thank you sincerely. All right. Thank you, Shay. Good presentation. More to, more to come on that.
We should call them code ambassadors. You know how we call parking ambassadors?
The parking code ambassadors. It's not like that. Yeah.
Hope you don't suffer PTSD.
I'm your friendly code ambassador here. I like that actually. Let's, let's do it. Code ambassadors. We're just out here ambassadoring for code, spreading.
Give them some nightsticks too.
Spreading. Spreading the good news about the codes we have and how out of compliance you are with them. All right. You gotta laugh or cry sometimes. Uh, so we were going to change the order a little bit and go next to item G. You, you leaving it two or 230? What did you say?
I'm going to squeeze it out to two, two 10.
All right. So we'll go ahead. We'll get as far as we can on G. So, uh, east west connector, south of State Road 44. I have that this was brought up by Commissioner Hartman. So will you kick it off?
So at a recent meeting, we had some discussions about the traffic light at Corbin Park and the changing of the medium along State Road 44, which is going to limit access to that neighborhood. I just thought maybe this would be a good time to maybe take a second look at the study that we've already paid for and had done and maybe look at some, if not all, maybe one or two of the connectivities, roads in those neighborhoods to, that will, if FDOT goes through with their plan changes, that it may be a little more easier for those neighborhoods to get in and out of. I know there are some, uh, Timber Lane and those streets that people have already are driving through the woods now to connect from one street to the other because they're all dead ends. So maybe it's, it's time to, to take a relook at some of those things and say, depending on what FDOT does, maybe we need to throw one or two of those railroads in there to, to help offset some of that. You know, ideally I think at some point in time, some commission is going to have to deal with going all the way from Glencoe to Mission Road, but I'm not so sure that it's going to be this commission.
And Mayor, if I may be told before you start, just to kind of remind the commission of, uh, I think we had four concepts on this study. And I think it's good to just remember, uh, some of the costs and some of the impact on each concept that they have. So if you look at the concept one, and that was to, that the Lydia Way. The costs after you could do the, I guess, the, the crossings and the whittlin impacts and, and the easement acquisitions and land acquisition and stormer. You're looking at 6,770,000 and $510 in concept one. Concept two, uh, and that's on Page Avenue. Again, same, same thing, you know, running all the costs. It's about 7,486, 781,000. And concept three, and that is the, the, the Doster Drive. Uh, the total cost is 8,773,00408. And concept four, and that's the, uh, the Ice Linger, uh, but, uh, the Bolton concept, that's 7, 7,922,464,000. And each one of them impacts some kind of wetlands. So up, concept one, which is that's the Lydia, impacts about 3.5 acres of wetland. Concept two on Page Avenue, that's impact six acres of wetland. And then concept three, which is Doster, impacts eight acres of wetland. And then the, uh, the Bolton, it's about 3.5, uh, acres of wetland. So I just want to make sure that, that you have this information before you start going to the discussions. Obviously this is, it's an old new topic that we've looked at it. I mean, it's been probably for the past 15, 20 years. So.
Okay.
But the idea was not, not to do the entire project, maybe pick a segment of that project that was more, more doable, you know, that we could do that would offset some of those barriers that are going to be created once FDOT or they start redoing the mediums along 44 because that's going to impact the way that people get out in and out of Corbin Park immensely. Um, you know, there's, there are some streets or some neighborhoods that can't get to the traffic light and are going to be traveling for miles down the road before they can do a U-turn to go the opposite direction. So. I mean, that was the reason I put this thing on, on the, uh, agendas because I just think at some point in time, we're going to have to have one or two of those roads have a little bit better connectivity in order for traffic flow in and out of those neighborhoods. So.
Who, who can't get to the traffic light? Everybody in Corbin could get to it. Anyway. Other comments? Yes, Mr. Clody.
I think it's very important for a second means to get out of Corbin Park that doesn't either go to 44 or to the proposed traffic light because it could turn into a safety issue if you need emergency access into there. I, I think the east west connector concept in itself is flawed because a connector, that means you're taking people from one side through the neighborhood and out the other. It just has to be one way, one additional way out. And looking at the map, the red line that goes to the bottom of the page, that would serve without going through all the wetlands on Page. We might've missed the boat when we approved the development in that area there. But I think the cost would be considerably reduced and serve the same purpose without creating two ways out, which is what these plans do. I don't know if that makes sense to anyone, but, uh, I'm sorry, I was looking at it on my computer that I finally got to work.
No, G. Yeah, click on G and then go probably to like page six of the attachment will be.
It is page six.
Okay. Were you finished? Sorry.
Now, once I see the picture, I'll see if I said anything incorrect. But if you look at this, you'll see that every one of these connectors goes from a major road to a major road. You don't need that. We don't need to bring traffic through the neighborhood. We just have to get them a second way out. Now, uh, obviously, Mr. Mayor, you're more in tune with what goes on in that neighborhood there. Uh, I just look at it from a broad emergency service standpoint, that if you get your main way in and out closed, especially being there becoming more limited as time goes on, you really need another way out that isn't rely upon, uh, that relies on getting to 44. And by making a single way out, theoretically you cut the costs in half. So it might be doable, but obviously I'd defer to the neighborhood that's there. But I, I think it would be good for emergency services to be able to get in and out.
So I agree with what I've heard. Uh, you know, the irony is this is your neighborhood. You know it better than anybody. So I've always loved the idea of a connector that essentially gets you to 95, to US one on the south side, not using State Road 44. Now that may be possible, it may not, but long term, I think that's huge. The congestion, our problem is our town, whether you live on the south side of 44, the north side of 44 has to converge onto State Road 44. Now on the north side, we're a little better off because we have things like Pioneer Trail. We have things like Turnbull Bay Road. We have ways to get out and I'm going to tell you, the, and, and, and this is going to probably um, echo with you a lot, Commissioner, um, Clody, is little local note, road networks that we've both talked about. I can't tell you how little improvements, my grand scheme for the south side of town is to get from I-95 to US one without having to touch State Road 44. That's my pie in the sky.
Yes.
But I'm going to tell you this, that right lane improvement and what we did on Canal Street was huge. Colony Park Road is, words can't describe how the people from north side of town can come down, get on Wayne. Wayne and Pioneer Trail, Pioneer Trail or Colony Park to skip a lot of the congestion on 44. I mean, that is huge. And eventually you'll be able to go around and get on 95 at Pioneer Trail. May be controversial, but it's not controversial that it's needed. It's going to be needed one day. The bottom line is these allow for people to move around and function. And it, more importantly, it takes off, it takes away congestion from an already overly congested, congested road. So whether we're talking about little tiny in and outs into Corbin Park or the, my pie in the sky idea, which of course I don't want to ruin Corbin Park neighborhood. I think that we, that, that, I think Corbin Park neighborhood should be engaged in a discussion. It's some sort of public workshop with them on, you know, what they would like to see. Cause I keep getting two extremes from them. I, I mean, you have no win on that. I still hear people talk to me about Page Avenue and I say, ah, I refuse to have the conversation. It's just not there. But people, but so, so people still want it and the long-term viability of moving locals around on the south side of 44. It could be the little cut-throughs or the little intersection changes that make a huge difference. Just a four-way stop sign at Wayne and I want to say Halleck. Man, that what a tremendous improvement to the intersection simply because Halleck going north, turning right onto Wayne, they head east, would back way up when one person wanted to turn left onto Wayne to go back into, you know, Pine Hill or, uh, Pine Island. Because there's so much traffic that comes down Wayne and then out of fair, fairway. Little things like that, what we can do and make improvements into this area is huge. And anything we can do to keep people off, local people off State Road 44 is huge in terms of the congestion. We, it's a choke point. We all converge on it. And the more we can spread things out or keep people off it for a mile or two miles or three miles, the better that is going to function for everybody. Those, those are my thoughts on that.
Well, a few thoughts. I, I think Commissioner Vice Mayor Maderk and I. Mike, uh, we, we've discussed the throughway, uh, from I-95 to Dixie Highway or closer for quite some time now. I do have concerns. Uh, there, there is a necessity. My, my first priority is emergency access. Second priority is what do the neighbors want? They know their neighborhood the best. My concerns are if we improve roads there, do we open it up to growth that will harm the neighborhood and the wetlands, the wooded areas? Already at, at Colony Park, we can see people, you know, you open up a shortcut and it becomes the, the cut through. And that, that, that I fear because cut through, like if we take Colony Park from Home Depot to get back to the east side over the Barrier Island, somehow you end up having to drive through the historic west side, which increases their traffic, which is undue, which is undue really. I mean, nobody wants cut through traffic through their neighborhood. So if we open up and improve these roadway networks, will eventually the visitors find out about? So if we open up and improve these roadway networks, will eventually the visitors find out about them? And so it becomes, you know, not a nice quiet little shortcut for locals anymore. It becomes a throughway for a big F two fifty with a, not that it's Ford, but. With a big giant eight-foot beam boat behind it, barreling down the road at forty-five miles an hour. That's my fear about that connector. And really, first things first, what do the neighbors there want? They, I know they want some safety getting onto forty-four. I understand and I do agree with you, forty-four is backed up. Almost all the time, there's problems and it's so dangerous. So it's something to consider. I was totally against it before, but for other reasons, I'm willing to look at it. But neighbor input is foremost for me. That's all I have.
Okay, so real quick, a couple of things. So you're right. The neighborhood feels strongly, but not all the same. But I can tell you, there's passion. I was passionate enough that I ended up going from out there to up here about this. So not just this one issue, but it was the thing that brought me first to the room, sitting in the back of the room. So there absolutely is a lot of passion about this, but a hundred percent you will have people that, you know. I have people approach me about Page Avenue. Hey, why don't we, why don't we open up Page Avenue? And I tell them my opinion on it. And I have people that beg me, please never do that and everything in between. So the, I think the concern that I have, multiple, multiple things. Number one is, you know, when you're talking about this vision of, you know, from ninety-five to US one. What I picture is another forty-four going through, you know, south of, south of a forty-four. And I can tell you, I don't think you're going to find hardly anybody that supports that. Because that's not for locals at that point. That becomes like a major thoroughfare. And so that comes, I think that draws a whole host of criticisms. Using as local connectors, the worry is, and I can tell you my lived experience. So I sit on my porch every Saturday morning, most Saturday mornings drinking coffee. And I can almost tell you, and I've said this before, I can almost tell you when forty-four starts backing up. Because a stream of cars start coming down my road because it looks like Paige goes through. So if it actually did, I can only imagine that would be ten times worse. And so now all of a sudden, my quiet neighborhood that I've invested my whole life in, my parents invested their whole life in. And I've got all my life savings in, we're now routing beach traffic through? I'm thoroughly against that. Beach traffic can stay on forty-four. So if we had a solution that was, you know, yeah, adding a right-hand stop, you know, stop sign or turn signal or something like that. Absolutely. It's not that we're against progress. And then lastly, and I told staff this story, I'd been elected about maybe three months. And I got a phone call from an Orlando developer, hey, Mayor, we're excited to talk to you. You probably haven't heard about, but there's this road called Page Avenue. And we're looking at a bunch of property out there. We're going to get it rezoned. We're going to do this building. They were all super excited to tell me their plans to develop all these hundreds of homes along Page Avenue. Because they had heard that it was a done deal that Page Avenue was going to be completed. And there was going to be connected and they were just super excited because that would facilitate them being able to do their development. And I let them say their whole piece. And then I told them, well, you're probably talking to the wrong guy. You don't realize. I'm sitting there staring at the piece of land you're talking about. And I'm never going to support that. So I think your concerns are also, I believe, they're real. There's a lot of open space back there. And it, you know, would it induce development and therefore have we solved a problem? This whole notion of the one-way act and one-way in and out, the public safety notion. You know, I live there. It's never been of great concern. First of all, there's multiple different ways in and out of most of the places, meaning Corbin's blocked. You can come in Hidden Pines and vice versa. And I can find you twenty-five examples, including Koyasisi, including your neighborhood and the shores. That have one-way in and out. There's a million examples across the city of that. So it's not of grave concern to me and it's frankly, that I know of, never been an issue that we've had. You know, no one's been able to get into Corbin Park. You know, a fire truck hasn't been able to get in because of a wreck or something. So I don't know that all of those are valid enough for me to change my opinion. But fundamentally, and this is what I wrote the previous mayor when this first came up. It's not a NIMBY issue for me necessarily. I mean, it is to some degree. I won't be hypocritical and say it's not. But from a financial standpoint, so we're talking about bypassing a section from Glencoe to forty-four. Is a one point eight mile section of road at a cost of seven or eight million dollars? And by the way, that's, we all know that number's low, right? I mean, it's going to be way more than that once you factor in every, the reality of it. So for ten million dollars to save people a few minutes on their drive to Publix? During the summer, by the way, and only during peak hours, like I just, I don't understand it. Like I don't, as a taxpayer, it's not a top priority to me. I'm able to get everywhere I need to go in the city and I live right in the heart of the area that's impacted. And frankly, what impacts me more is when they change the timing on the light at forty-four and Wallace. And they only give forty-four thirty seconds, like we talked about this morning. There's a lot of other things we can do without spending ten million dollars, let's call it among friends. To tackle, to tackle this issue. And, you know, so I don't know, I just don't see the upside to it. And it's going to be, it would be absolutely an uphill fight. Now, is there, could we do some small connectivity? Is there a place where you could connect, you know, the roads that you see just above the blue line? At the top kind of here, the solid blue line. You see those roads that run all the way back to forty-four, so Timberland and Wildwood and some other roads. You know, yeah, a lot of those are dead ends, like it's a weird layout, you know? If those residents want to tie that into Paige, you know, to give them a back way out. Okay, if they all agree to that, that's not a huge deal. That doesn't induce anything. That doesn't solve any, you know, that doesn't cause any other issues. That doesn't push traffic through there. But if you start connecting that up, I promise you, it's going to pull traffic. It's going to pull non-native traffic off of forty-four as a forty-four bypass. And if the proposal is a forty-four bypass through the neighborhood south of forty-four. You might get a few people to agree to it because it's, they think it's their faster way to Publix. But you're going to have a lot of people that don't agree with it, me being one of them. So.
Let me summarize. Yeah. I think this has to be driven by the neighbor. Let me, if they're not interested in it, I'm not interested in moving forward on anything. So I look down the road on a transportation committee that I've spent most of my public life in. And I can say thirty years from now, we're going to need some kind of access down here. I don't think it's going to be forty-four. It'd be something more like Turnbull Bay Road. But again, if the residents don't want it. If the people south of forty-four don't want that connectivity, I don't want to force the issue. I won't be affected by it. And if, you know, and we can, the city can address that issue when and if it ever becomes a problem. So I want to state that I'm not trying to force this. But from time to time, I hear from people who say, you know, we're neglected, we're stuck out there. No one cares about us. We're just captive in our own home. What are you going to do? And so, and it goes back to Paige. I have people who, what I tell the Paige people is. You didn't show up and voice your opinion when you were supposed to. Why didn't I want to make my neighbor mad? Okay, great. Then your neighbor won.
Because it was a fifty-fifty issue.
Yeah. So I, you know, some little bit of connectivity is great, but I don't, I think the most important thing we do is. At this point, because we've talked about it a lot, we all have some different, we agree on some things, you have some opinions. I want the Corbin Park neighborhood to be the bearer of whatever we change. They need to be the advocate for whatever changes that are made out here and down there. That's what I'm going to tell the people that I speak to going forward. I don't want that, that one main connectivity that I've talked about. That is way down at the bottom of the list. But any connectivity we do, it has to be driven and championed by the Corbin Park neighborhood. And that's what, and that's going to be my official position on this. And until I hear from them here publicly, I'm not going to push any issue of connectivity at this, at this time.
So my, my original thought on this was, I campaigned on Page Avenue and got shot down real quick. And then got beat up after I got elected. So I'm not looking to do the entire connection because I know it's, it's not, there's not that much support of the neighborhood. And I agree, it's going to probably create more problems than it will in the future. But if you look at Wildwood, Timberlane and Oliver, all those are dead-end streets. But the neighborhood has driven through the woods and created their own path. There's also a stormwater ditch that runs along there, kind of in between it and Paige. That if it's a part of the stormwater project and we're going to be back there enhancing that ditch or whatever. Then that may be the time to do the connectivity of those three roads. If you're, if you live on Timberlane now and you want to go east or go west. You're going to have to drive all the way down. And if F dot closes off two of those access points in the medium. You're driving to Corbin Park to do a U-turn at a traffic light to go back to I four or I ninety-five. So those were the little hanging fruit that I was looking at, maybe with the stormwater project, with the sewer project. Maybe that would be a time to maybe make some of those small enhancements that may give those individuals a little bit more. Availability, you know, in that emergency. I mean, I was beachside on Monday. There was a wreck on forty-four. And it took me forty-five minutes to get down Flagard to City Hall. I mean, you know, so traffic is our inherited problem. That we will never solve, that our ancestors will never solve until people quit coming to New Somer to Beach. So, you know, but, but I think there are those little things that neighborhoods. That maybe we should look at if we're doing another project in the area, maybe go along with that. That would enhance that. Doesn't need, maybe it should just be a one-lane road or, you know, just as muddy. You know, as minimum as can be, just so those neighbors can have that little bit of connectivity.
And if, I mean, yeah.
Bicycleist. I mean, if you want to take your bicycle to, you know, to go to the Home Depot would be that sort of a thing, you know? You know, I ran into a city employee the other day on their golf cart, trying to get to Home Depot. And that's what they had to do. They had to cut through the woods, you know, down to get to Timberlane, to get up to the lights. So they could get across to Home Depot. So those are the little things, I think, that will make, enhance a little bit of quality of life to those people back there. Not necessarily opening a complete traffic lane from one side to the other. Ideally, at some point in time, somebody's going to have to look at that. I don't, but I don't think this is going to be that avenue or that place. So that's the reason I put it on the agenda.
Okay. And that makes more sense. And that would be, I don't know whose zone that will be once we finish. I can't remember. I think, I think maybe yours. I don't remember who. But, you know, if, the nice thing about that is street by street, you can just go down the street, hold everybody on it. As long as you got, you know, sixty, sixty percent or so of the people that are okay with it. It wouldn't be a huge deal to connect it back to Paige. And that does give them the chance now to go up and get out to Glencoe to go west versus having to double back. You're, yeah, you're absolutely right. And that doesn't invite the, I mean, the challenges that I heard when, you know, because I was one of the people in the audience talking about Page Avenue. Years ago, that doesn't cause any of those same problems. That is like a Colony Park, like, hey, this little connectivity could make it way better. And right now, Mike, you know, we, we cut through those woods to go to Circle K, my kid, when he wants ice cream.
I mean, Oliver's not even.
No, not ice cream. We go to Dairy Queen for ice cream. Wants a candy bar.
I mean, Oliver's not even paved all the way to the end. So, you know, that.
You know, we're hearing that refrain more all the time. I feel locked in my home on the weekend. I hear it on beachside. Just heard it from Vice Mayor. We're all experiencing it. I would assume Mike. Mike has the same problems. People are, they don't want to go out in their cars because they're afraid they'll be locked in gridlocked traffic. So. Too bad the ad authority is not here. They should be part of this conversation.
They don't advertise locally at all, I can tell you. They haven't advertised the whole Orlando's beach thing. That's, that's years ago. They haven't advertised that forever.
Saturated then.
They, no, those billboards literally up for months. They advertise in Europe, trying to get people that fly in and then stay for a week. Like the ad authority is not the problem. The day trippers are the problem. That's a whole other.
That's one problem.
Whole other, that's one problem. That's a whole other debate. We saw the, interestingly though, Commissioner McGurk said it one time, but we saw the impact of that during COVID though. Because remember, there was a period when everything was kind of closed down for COVID. But the locals are still out and about. But people weren't coming in and we didn't have the day trippers because the beach were closed. And I mean, drive was great. I'd get wherever I needed in thirty seconds in this city. So it showed us how much of an impact we, it is from all these external forces around us. Not so much the little bit of development that we've had, I mean, the development we've had here.
I'm sorry, just, this is really important and I forgot to ask. Is it, I guess, Collet, it's true that F dot is working on re-timing of the lights on forty-four. To be more in sync. Ironically, I got to tell you this funny story. It never happened to me. I was going onto ninety-five from Third Avenue and Peninsula. I had a green light all the way to ninety-five. Never happened before. And traffic wasn't heavy. And it was a miracle. And I thought, did they actually time the lights? And I don't think they got there yet. It was a fluke.
Because the ones on four, I just was complaining to Kyle, I was a little late this morning because the one on, I think it's made, I think it's a lot worse. I sat, I sat through about ten light cycles this morning. I sat there on my stopwatch, watching, I had red lights for a minute and a half. Going east on forty-four, I had a red light for a minute and a half. It was green for thirty-five seconds through every cycle. So we're over prior, to me, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm a layperson. But I can do, I can see how long I have to move. We're over prioritizing the side roads. I don't know what, they just recently made a change and to me, it's made it worse. Seems like that traffic has been worse since they did that. So.
Michigan Wallace.
But you got, but you got lucky that one time. Commissioner Collet.
Going back to the subject of the east-west connector. I never wanted to see connections going in one way and out the other through the neighborhood. So I certainly wouldn't support that plan. I've heard the concerns, especially your concern about it might induce people if we had a one-way street. What I would suggest is we do nothing on this plan until the state comes around with a definitive plan to. Perhaps put a traffic light out there and at that time, address some of the secondary ways out of the neighborhood. Then that would be my suggestion.
Yeah. And to be clear, I don't speak for the whole neighborhood. I'm just one person. I can, I can tell you. But I do know it wasn't, it's fifty-fifty. I mean, and you experienced it, Commissioner Hartman personally, I mean, it is, it's, there's people that love it, people that hate the idea. So, you know, it's not a slam dunk either way. So.
No, I do, as you know, I do live in a neighborhood that's like only got one way in and out. Which divides into two ways and the bridge is going away for two years. So it's going to be living hell out there for a while.
All right. I'll let you close it up. That was your item.
No, that, I mean, I don't necessarily agree with waiting with F dot. If there's some of this low-hanging stuff that we can address. I mean, hopefully our stormwater project isn't going to be three or four years out before we actually put a shovel in the ground. And if we look at some of those things that, I haven't seen the plan yet. It hasn't been made public. So I'm not sure what, what's going on out there. But, you know, if that's part of that, then we certainly should look at maybe one or two of these streets. At that point in time, if they're feasible. If not, then that, you know, I'm okay with that. At least we took a look at it.
That makes a lot of sense to me. And if the neighbors, I mean, that, and then it's easy to figure out, street by street. Agreement or not. So, yeah. All right. Next item up is murals. I need a quick break though. Y'all want to take just a ten, five, ten minutes? Take it with everybody? All right. So two thirty, we'll come back at two thirty, eleven minutes, two thirty. Okay. Next item, ordinance discussion regarding murals in general. It says. Murals in general. So I don't know who. I don't know who owns that. Was Jeff owning that? Okay. Real quick, before you dive in, so gentlemen, we were ahead of schedule. It's tough to tell if we're on schedule or not now. We've got one, two, three, four, I think we got five items left. One, two, three, four. Yeah. We only have four or five items left and about two or hour and a half to get through those. So we got to be crisp in our, in our thoughts.
And I have to apologize also. I desperately have to get to the eye doctor down the street. I can, I have another hour if that'll suffice. I don't want to miss, but I may have to.
So that'll get us to three thirty? You sure that's enough time?
I can do that.
Okay. Is there anything that you?
No, I have no preference, whatever.
Okay. All right. We'll just, we'll move, we'll move as quickly as we can. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yes, I'm not sure what the original momentum for this request, the murals to be discussed, but you do have a staff report. That uh. Uh, contains all the surrounding municipalities in Volusia County. And how they deal with murals, Port Orange, Edgewater, the county, Daytona Beach, Deland, Ormond Beach and. If you look through that, you see there's quite a variety from absolutely no regulations to very extensive regulations.
So right now, remind me, Carrie, we, what do we have, if anything?
Um, I'm not aware of anything on the books. What, what is going on is we're seeing more and more murals pop up and the issues are going to be first amendment issues, um. Whether it's a sign or not, um, so one of the things I'd be worried about is, you know, going forward. They need to be vetted by the planning department. One of the things I feel strongly about is no words. So the ones that have popped up could be grandfathered in.
Yeah.
Um, but they shouldn't serve as signage and just by having no words, you're gonna avoid. You know, having to get into content.
So. I'll, I'll go first and then everybody else can comment quickly, so to me. Yes, we, I think we have to have something on the books or else it'll become a little bit of a free for all. But I want to see it be, you know, very, very pro-murals, but done the right way. Um, and so obviously that's subjective as is everything else we've talked about today, but. Um, whatever Deland is doing seems to have done okay. Uh, in reading their stuff, it seems to actually be kind of. I don't see a lot of detail though, so I don't know, maybe theirs is the Wild West too and they just have gotten lucky. But I, I would just look to some other city that. And engage, you know, some other groups like the merchant groups and others, you know, the hub, places that have done murals. Get some feedback, um, but I think we gotta have something on the books or else it will, we'll end up with something we're not happy with and then we'll be grandfathering that in. So I, I, I support it, I don't have strong feelings on what it needs to do, I'd have to. Just, we need somebody to research that and figure out how we can approach this to. To, you know, make it work for us. Commissioner Colode.
Yeah, we just have to make a distinction that a mural is not a sign and the, the suggestions about not having wording in it and everything goes a long way towards that. I don't think we should make a big deal of it either. I have been alike murals, the more the better. But just so they're not considered signs.
Yeah.
Make that distinction.
And, you know, no words, we gotta be careful, I mean, because like the, the mural over here on the side of the old coffee shop, I mean, it has a few words on it, but they're, you know, it's like. Flagler Avenue, I mean, so it's, you know.
It's a, things that don't promote the business within.
You don't want business verbiage, so, yeah. Commissioner Sax, comments, thoughts?
Yes, I, I have a few comments, um. It was concerning when the thought of murals, that the, uh, the fish under the bridge. Were fading and ACA and the city got together and they made a presentation and. It morphed into, that's, we're gonna put a mural on a city building. I totally oppose putting murals on government buildings. I don't know if that was considered, I don't know, Jeff, if there are any precedents from any other city that does that. And here's my reasoning and I'll try to be brief. Um, murals are a form of graffiti. Graffiti can be connoted to be a political statement whether there are words on it or not. Uh, no one can dispute, albeit in this whole world, the. The Michelangelo's Pietà or, or Da Vinci and the Sistine Chapel, if I got those artists right. That's beautiful art, but. Any other art that you see in, in graffiti style, murals on, on. Uh, private buildings. Can have a connotation, some people can hate it, some people can like it, even if it doesn't have any political connotation. So I would steer totally away from putting murals on our government buildings. Even if it's a gymnasium and at this point, even a bathroom. Although the county. Has put murals on the uh pavilion slash bathroom slash office at Smyrna Dunes Park. But I just, I don't want to divide people because I, and I don't want to make people angry over murals. Because I think somebody's gonna find something about murals they don't like, so. Yes, I support that type of art. I, I think sometimes it's nice, a lot of times it's nice, I like what I've seen in our city. But I really want to steer us away from putting them on government buildings because we're a government for everybody. And I don't want people saying, well, you, you did this and you did that. So that's really all I have.
So in, so no, no concerns with staff drafting some guidance on murals in general, but then one particular concern is on government buildings, which is an interesting one, I, I. Carrie, are other cities, I just scrolled through, I don't remember mentioning it, are they kind of silent on that or what, what are you seeing in other cities?
Um. Probably silent on that, it was my inclination without.
I'm trying to think, I mean, it may be worth research, maybe worth Colin talking to your fellow city managers and seeing just what the. Because it's an interesting point, I mean, it, it's, at this point, everyone is offended by everything it feels like, so you're gonna, you can draw a straight line on a building and offend someone with it, so. So that's a good, it's a good point, good, good thought. Commissioner Hartman?
Yeah, I, you know, also support that we come up with something, uh, if we currently have nothing, I, I think we need to have something on the books. And that'd be vetted by somebody, um, either. You know, neighborhood council or planning, you know, or ACA, something that's, um, not, like you said, non word, no words, non political. But we need to have something on the books before we actually end up with something that's offensive to a lot of people.
Okay, so I think universal support for putting something there. I think similar concerns to what staff brought up as far as, you know, to trying to as best you can lay out between commercial advertising and, and art. And then, of course, with an art, everything is subjective, what's offensive or not. And then I think a special carve out that I would love to just, as you bring that back, be briefed on would be this. Should we do them on government buildings, should we support that, how do we, how do we address that? And then I guess F dot allowed it on a freeway, so, and I guess a fish, maybe a fish aren't offensive, I don't know. But, yeah.
I had suggested putting, uh, using the poles closer to the piers and Riverside Park, using those as a canvas.
Yeah.
Uh, since we had the fish on the other end.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know what people have in mind for murals or graffiti or, but. You know, I, I saw renderings for the gymnasium. And, and again, it, it's a government building, so it, that, that I totally would like to steer away from.
Okay. All right. One down. Yes, Jim, okay. Uh, next item is recreational complex, West Ivana, I need to five on State Road forty four. And attached to that, we have kind of the whole parks master plan. This item, oh, this one was requested by me, so I guess I'll lead this off. I say it's requested by me, I actually should probably give a lot of credit to Commissioner Hartman, I think he's been the first to kind of point out this whole gap in our, in our, uh, parks. So I know we've got this whole parks master plan. I sometimes think. Governments, this one being no exception, struggle with going from the idea phase to the reality phase. The easiest thing is to find it, find a problem. And commission a study about the problem, because you're still not committing to anything yet, you're just saying, yep, we're gonna look at it. Well, now we're, now we've got the study. So now how do we take that and make sure it doesn't just collect dust? And we actually turn it into sticks and stones in reality. So, uh. Read all of this, I'm not a parks expert by any stretch, but here's what I do know, is that I drive through Edgewater and I see Whistle Stop Park. And it's, it appeals to multi generations, it's a park I could spend a, a full day at with my family and be entertained the entire time. Splash pad, volleyball, basketball, tennis, uh, baseball, it, it's all there, everything is there. Um, but maybe not tennis, I don't remember, but anyway, a lot of things there. Uh, was that a Volusia League of Cities event the other night up in Port Orange? I left there and their park, it was nine thirty, ten o'clock at night and the park still had like families in it, not, not, you know. Had, had actual families still in the park, it was well lit, great play area, beautiful, beautiful park. Uh, Ormond Beach, I was talking to a resident the other day and they said they were going up to Ormond Beach because they had heard about a park in Ormond, they were gonna go up to the Ormond. Uh, park, because that's where they had to go, it's a new Somer to resident, lives in Faulkner, driving up to, to Ormond to a park. So this is a gap that we have of a, what I would call a community park, we have a lot of parks, the study showed we have a lot of parks. We have a lot of small parks, lots of neighborhood parks. I would like to see us. Start putting pen to paper and coming with a plan and even if we want to put it to the voters as a bond thing to fund or we come up funding, however we do it. Come up with a plan to say, we're gonna put a park somewhere, I don't even know, it has to be west of ninety five, but just. Somewhere central city, somewhere along forty four, somewhere out there. A, a, a nice big park. As a trade off, I think there's some parks that we could sunset, meaning we're not gonna give up the property. But we don't have to keep reinvesting in those parks, we could let them become more of a passive park. One thing I'd like to see is get away from, this is just my view is, the, the, this little workout, we're, we're adding these little things that are supposedly people are gonna work out in the parks. And I just never see those in use. They rust away, we replace them, they're all along Riverside Drive down Ed, Edgewater, I think did it, where you're supposed to jog for a while in the workout and. Never seen a single soul on it. One reason is because it's four thousand degrees most of the time. Uh, unless you're early in the morning or it's raining or some, you know, like, I just don't see those being used, I'd like to see us go to true play activities. Spanning some age groups, but have one big, uh, one big park. Secondly, tangential to this, and this is a low hanging fruit item. Uh, and Colin's got a drawing, I think he can share with you all. We are underserved in the pickleball community and it was embarrassing the other night, I went to play pickleball up in Port Orange. I'm there, our city engineer was there and about ten other New Somer to residents were there. But we were in Port Orange, we had to go to Port Orange to get a pickleball facility. That met what we needed, which was enough courts with lights, you know, with a water fountain, all those kind of things, we don't have that. In New Somer to Beach, so the mayor and the city engineer and numerous other people from the city of New Somerina. Are driving to Port Orange to, to meet their pickleball needs, so. We've got a, a, a place right by the library, we'll probably do it for fifty, sixty thousand dollars. The lighting is already there, at least the electrical, the asphalt's there, and we could do this pretty cheaply, I think. So two things, I don't want to get bogged down on that, one, that's not strategic, the other one is, is strategic, so. That's what, that's what came out of, that's, that's why I put this on the. That's why I asked for this to be on the agenda, so. I don't know, staff, do you have anything to add to that or?
Um, no, but, uh, on the master plan, I think the consultant is waiting to make the, the final presentation to the commission. Obviously, that, that involves, uh, the cost. But again, I think we've been driving on having something on the, uh, west side of, of the city. Because there is no activity on that west side at all. Now, having to think about, uh, a complex that it's contains everything that we wanted. There is no area, uh, east of ninety five that we could actually have something like this, that it's actually right on forty four. So that's why I was thinking probably the property a little bit cheaper west of ninety five, number one, number two is you could have. Uh, a bigger property size that you'd be able to do these things, maybe not all at once, but in phases. So, uh, you know, to do a master plan and then implement that and phasing. Uh, but that's why I want the consultant to present the master plan. For the commission and then this way we could take direction from the commission and go into the planning and, and the design phases of it, so. Um, I think we wanted to show the one that we did at the, uh, at the library. So if you could show that, that email that I, uh, sent, Kelly, please.
While she, while she pulls up, so it's an email. It's an email. You sent to Kelly or you sent to Sharon?
Uh, I sent it to, Kelly, she said she has it, it's, you don't have it?
I don't have it, no.
Okay, I'll send it to you now. While she does that, we'll go down the line real quick, go ahead, Mike.
Well, I'm not necessarily interested in a very large park, a regional type park. Uh, I do think that there should be something to the western part of town. Uh, where I find that, uh, we've been lacking in the past is when we prepare PUDs, we should have something in our land development regulation. That requires them to preserve as open space usable tracts of land above the flood plain. So that could conceivably be, uh. Be turned over to us if we wanted to bear the maintenance responsibilities in the future, but. I, I don't see the need for a regional style park west of ninety five. And I'm really interested in the presentation on the master plan.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, it was quite some time ago, uh, Mr. Brown, if you recall, had come to me and asked about pickleball. And I said, yeah, let's see what we can do and, you know, we transferred the tennis courts. And made them multiplayer for tennis and pickleball. And now, of course, you know, pickleball is tremendous, through the roof. I support more courts. I would support if we ever have enough money to, I see the rendering now. To have a s- sports complex in addition to the fields we have over by the airport. And I know I'm, I'm just dreaming, but I, I'm a swimmer, I grew up being a swimmer. I've always said, boy, this city should have a pool. Because we don't want our children to drown. Uh, we, I know that many people love to swim. That, that I wouldn't mind seeing included in a sports complex. But if you want to start small and need more courts, uh, I, you know, you've been to Pictona. Right, that, that's a major complex for, for pickleball. So, you know, to accommodate all the, everybody would be great. Uh, but if you have something to present, I, I'm, I'm a little niffed that the developers don't even. Put in enough area for a father and son to throw a football. So we have to do it, but that's okay. You know, we should provide that type of recreation, so I, I, you know, bring something forward and I, I'd be glad to look at it.
Yeah, so the pickleball thing, I'll, we've got it here, I can show you, that's, so, yes, two separate issues, this is a quick kill. I've heard from numerous people and then there's this whole notion of. How are we gonna act on this parks master plan, which admittedly we haven't heard yet, so this is maybe a bit out of order, but. I think we've got to be prepared to act and, and fill this, fill this need, so.
Can I just add?
Yeah, go ahead.
One more, one more thing, I'll be done. The, speaking of parks, uh, passive parks, uh, any park. We have parks like Riverside Manatee that is really in disrepair. I'd love to see us repair some of the concrete, uh, we have a veteran, a veteran statue in the middle of the park. Some of the plaques are missing, or one of the plaques is missing, a bronze plaque, so, and, and some major trip hazards. So before we invest a lot of money, I don't mind seeing a few more courts, pickleball courts. Uh, but I'd love to see us invest our money in, in repairing the parks that we do have. The ones I see are widely used, uh, Twenty Seventh Avenue could use some basketball, uh, backboards, they're missing. And the, the issues in, uh, Manatee Riverside, I'd like to see corrected, but I'm all for parks and, and recreation, so I'm behind you.
Okay.
If this addition here at the library is good.
Yeah, so this is what staff just kind of mocked up, it goes from three courts to six, which is about the number of courts you need, three courts is tough. The way those are laid out now isn't conducive, they're laid out. You're staring into the sun in both the mornings and evenings versus this layout you wouldn't be. Um, and then some other minor changes, the fencing, right now, you have to stop play every time another game changes. Because there's only one entrance and exit and that's just a poor design, we should have an entrance behind each court because it just, it's very disruptive. And, and then lastly, lighting, I mean, the main challenge for me is, and, and Kyle is a fellow, fellow lover of the sport and as are many other citizens and thousands added daily across the nation. You, I get off work five, five thirty, six o'clock and I want to go play, we have two courts that have lights. Uh, outside of Detweiler, which there's numerous issues with those, so having courts that have lights is, is kind of the main, the main thing, and there's some other nuances, so that's, that's where this would just. This would get us through for a while, I don't, we're not gonna beat Pictona, you know, that's, that's not.
That's okay.
I, I don't, I'm not looking for that, this is a quick kill kind of situation, I think we could, we could do easy, so.
Just a question for, for you on what you said. At Detweiler, you said those courts are underused because they're poorly designed?
So the Detweiler courts, the issue with the Detweiler courts, two things, you, the sport is played with like a wiffle ball type ball.
Right.
And so the issue at Detweiler is many times it's way too breezy. And so when you're playing, it, it, it impacts the gameplay because it's just way too breezy because you have this constant ocean breeze. You would think it'd be a positive thing and if you're playing like basketball, it is. I grew up playing basketball in Detweiler, but for pickleball, it, it isn't. The other thing is this crossover, using tennis courts with tennis nets for the sport. At, at beginner level play, that's fine. At- at beginner-level play, that's fine, but at- at any kind of hi- higher level play, once you get halfway decent, which many people are at this point, as the sport matures, it- it's, it would be like having a ten-and-a-half-foot basketball hoop versus a ten-foot hoop. Can you play the game? Absolutely. Does it look the same? Yes, but it's gonna throw off everything about your game, because of that little bit.
It's not regulation.
The net isn't perfect, so you're gonna either have the wrong net for the tennis people, or the wrong net for the pickleball people. It's close enough that it's functional, I mean, again, you can do the same things, but it throws off your game considerably to try to do this whole crossover thing. And there's some, you know, there- there's some hybrid designs where you can install this thing, where you come and adjust the net, depending on what sport you're playing, but those are, they have whole, there's fluid problems, but.
Okay, I'm gonna, because if- if we have courts that are not usable, because they need some type of correction.
Yeah.
We should concentrate on doing that, cost-wise. And- and I know, going into my neighborhood, there are three courts that are privately maintained. Uh, I'm gonna have to take a close look at them, see about the net, because they were converted tennis courts.
Yeah, and I- I've- I've played there by invitation. I never paid the membership, there's de minimis membership fee, I guess, because they're kind of a private court.
Yeah, sort of, it's cheap, but.
I- I taught some citizens to play there one time, I showed up and volunteered to teach them, so, um. Yeah, the, I can't remember, though, I think they, they either made the, like, permanent corrections to the net.
Yeah.
I can't remember how they, how they did it.
Yeah, I don't remember either, even though I drive past it every day repeatedly.
Mr. Harmon, comment, thoughts?
So I certainly do support doing something west of ninety-five, a- a- a complex, but as I said last night, I think this needs to be something that the community actually is looking for. Um, uh, and I know you're looking at multipurpose, but, you know, what truly are the demographics of the people who live west of ninety-five? Um, there's not a lot of children out there, there's not a lot of e- even younger kids out there. Um, so do- do we wanna put playground equipment in something like that, that's not, uh, gonna be underutilized? Or would we be better with just greater open space? Um, we also need to, at some point in time, think about, um, some form of meeting space out there. Because, um, we're struggling now to have a Corbin Park Stormwater Master Plan meeting, because we can't find any place to hold the meeting, and, you know, we're, so we're lacking in space. So whether it's something that we partner with, with Geosam, um, when I spoke to Advent Health, you know, I mentioned these- these things to them also. Um, if it's something that they have long-term plans of doing out there, that's something with, that we could, um, help partner with, or you, or, you know, do something in consortium with, where, um, you know, if they're building a park-like setting, you know, how can, you know, we improve on that? Or, um, they're, I won't get into what- what we talked about, but, so the, there are avenues out there. As far as your pickleball courts, again, this is out on the west side of town. Um, have we looked at the possibl- I think we own land out by the tennis courts, do we, the tennis center, do we not?
Talking about on Glencoe?
Yeah.
How much, we own, not on the, on the tennis court exactly, but it's right there across from the water plants.
Right.
Yeah, we owned about, I think it's eighty acres, but it's only, I wanna say thirteen acres that outland.
So we, so we have a fairly large piece of property over there that- that would help temper, you know, that's serves the need of the west side of our community, and maybe a better start, rather than to take a project like this and try to retrofit it into something that we want, maybe we should look at a completely new design to add to the existing courts that we have. That, you know, because when you do construction on this, you're gonna interrupt play over there for six to nine months. Whereas if we have a new project out there that we can come, um, then I could certainly support that, especially using the- the recreational impact fee monies for- for a new project. That may be something, um, that would enhance those out- out there in those neighborhoods, maybe entice some of those people along Glencoe Road, maybe to annex into the city. You know, um, th- those types of things. I think that we, it certainly would be a viable option to look at, um, so that we could do it right the first time, rather than try to, try to retrofit something in. Um, and, um, a- again, you know, we have a PUD out, uh, Rolling Hills, I think is up off of Pioneer Trail, that's a PUD that hasn't even, I don't think submitted a site plan yet. You know, may- maybe we should, um, look at what they were offering for recreation to maybe enhance that with a few of our dollars. Um, and I, and I spoke about it before, is, is when you go through Venetian Bay, there's all these pocket parks in all these communities, and like you said, you can't throw a football, you can't hit a baseball. Uh, you know, you get a bench, they're paying for somebody to mow the grass on a piece of property that very, and there's no parking. So I- I think that, from the land development standpoint, we need to kind of get away from these little pocket po- pocket parks and look for something that's more substantial, um, that includes parking areas. Um, so that, you know, we, a- a- a greater number of people will be able to enjoy them than just maybe one or two people out there walking a dog or something like that. So, I- I can support anything that has to deal with recreation west of Colony Park Road.
Uh, and I've, I will pivot immediately. We will have, I'll work with Michelle, we'll get something mocked up out there. I love that idea. Um, this was just the- the easy, like, hey, we're already there, let's just pour a few, a little more asphalt, we already got the electric.
Um, because I've, I've had some discussion with people that, with the tennis courts.
Yeah.
You know, and there's kind of been a perceived lack of maintenance, maybe some upgrading out there. So it may be something that we wanna look at overall as a, as a larger recreational center, or, or a, a, you know, park or something out there that, that may be able to have a- a chance to enhance something that's already there. And, um, because a lot of the tennis players are converting to pickleball.
Oh, yeah, a hundred percent, yeah.
So, um, you know, we, there already has a large number of people going out there, paying membership to be a part of that. Um, and this would give them a transition area, and, you know, they're already going in and out around there, so.
Yeah.
You know, it would be an enhancement to the area, plus, you know, just down the street is the disc golf, so, right around the corner.
Good thought. The one thing I would say on your, your observation is, you know, it's a little bit of, of, it's hard to tell, I guess, but I would argue, it could be a bit of a field of dreams issue, where when a family chooses where to locate.
Right.
They may choose to not locate to somewhere like Venetian Bay, or to New Smyrna, because they determine, well, I would rather go to Ormond, because they have a better park system, because they do have places like this. Um, so, you know, your observation is, while correct today, the reason may be, because we don't have something like that. Um, you know, so if we, if we had something, would it promote, um?
Yeah, and I, but, but I think that we need to engage the community.
Uh, don't just.
You know, for the same, very same reasons I said last night. Um, you built what you wanted to build, not what we wanted, so, I wanna get away from that.
Yeah.
You know, I, I really think the community needs to be engaged in all of this.
And that's where, again, my thought, we're gonna solve it today, because, again, we haven't even seen the park master plan, but I just, I wanted it to be challenging us, that I don't want this to be yet another thing that's stacked on a shelf, and we look up ten years from now and go, oh, yeah, remember we did the pack, the master plan, and then never did anything with it. So, you know, one way to go about it, and I think they mentioned it in the, in the document, is draft everything up, draw up a plan, and put it to the voters via bond issuance. And say, if you're okay with this plan, here's what it's gonna cost, here's what it's gonna add to your taxes, everybody vote. And that way, you are giving the voters what they want in that case, if, you know, if they want it, and they approve it, then we'll bond it, and we'll start building on November the seventh, or whatever the day after the election is.
And I think something that we should prob- probably keep in the back of our mind is, um, the school bo- board owns about, what, forty-five acres out of Venetian Bay? They have a large chunk of land, I think a lot of it is, could be wetlands or wet. But they have a large piece of property, if, if they're not gonna do something out there, or they're gonna do something on a smaller scale, that may be so, an avenue for us to, you know.
Yeah.
Do some land swap or do something with them.
I'm not sure if they're still on it or not, but we'll double-check on that, but this is what's happening with, with all these parks that we have. We, we tried to do something big, and then we say, okay, well, let's go to do the disc park, so that's why you have smaller parks.
Right.
The idea of having a sport like what we have at the sport complex is you have a- a- a multipurpose field that you could do so many sports out there. So the thirteen acres will do, obviously, the, the pickleball courts, but you will not be able to do the other facilities and amenities that you wanted to have in a sport complex. That's why we were thinking about, let's go, let's go big, and then just make it in phasing, where you got everything that you want. And, you know, having the, obviously, the, the community input, uh, to.
Yeah, I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to that, but, but I think for the immediate, I mean, that's gonna be a, a high-ticket item and gonna be some long planning.
Yeah.
Um, so, but the pickleball courts out by the tennis thing is certainly something that could be doable in the next couple of years, you know. Um, if, if we had, I mean, we own the land already, so.
Yeah.
You know, even if we ch- charge a recreational fee for users or whatever, you know, some, to try to recoup some of those costs, or, or, you know, something along those lines. We're having, we have a new leisure service director coming in, so hopefully he'll have some wonderful ideas and
Yeah.
be creative.
All right. Good discussion, gave us some ideas, thoughts. All right, so that's item E, two left. Jake, I think we'll get you there. Uh, next item, staffing. Uh, let me look at this one. It's a pretty broad, it's a pretty broad heading, right? So staffing is, uh. Oh, on the agenda by Mayor Owen, okay, it says, me, me again. We're not, we're not on my stuff. Um, so, this is, this is a broad topic, admittedly. And again, we're probably not gonna walk away solving anything today, I just, but I wanna put some things on the, on the table, some observations, some ideas, some concepts, and just kind of banter around, because, you know, we, we, in our regular meetings, we kind of take things as they come on the agenda, and there's no time for kind of this general discussion, so. Um, I have have a couple of, of, I think we have a couple of opportunities when it comes to staffing, and, and I have some concern. And one of them is, um, we are, we are a, a, a changing city. We're, we're undergoing changes, whether we want it or not, however we wanna fight it, whatever it is, but we're going through some evolution, some growth, and some changes. And yet, we also have, you know, people that have lived here for fifty years, and, and we have many day-to-day things that we do. So we have thirty thousand-plus residents, and yet, we also have, you know, major developments that are on our doorstep every day. You know, we deal with, we got three or four that are on the radar as we speak. Um, and that's pretty unique. When you look at many of our sister cities, they're, they're in one of the two camps. They're either kind of new but growing, or they're developed and not growing, so they just kind of have, you know, serving the existing citizens. We kind of have a little of both, and so I feel sometimes, everything we've talked about today, and a lot of stuff we talk about in general, is, it's progress we need to make, it's some extra thing we need to go do. But what we can't forget is there's also just like the day-to-day stuff. Like, there's the day-to-day management of, of, of operating the city, of running the city, of making sure the fires are, the, the, the literal and the proverbial fires are put out. Um, you know, there's all of those things, and so, I've, you know, I've, I've, I have been concerned for a while, because, again, I, I came from staff, right? That's, that's my, my background. I'm sat in the audience of, of board meetings and been told, you know, what to go do. I've been concerned for a while that we are laying on a lot of things, or pushing really, really hard in a lot of, in a lot of ways. And, and I don't know that we're always making sure that we've got the right level of staffing, and that we're investing enough in our staffing to do that, that we've got the right training, that we're building bench strength, that we've got, you know, okay, who's in charge today? And then what if they hit the lottery, who's in charge right behind them? And I don't mean just in that seat, I mean, in every department up and down the board. Uh, do we have the bench strength in the departments? Is the pay where it should be, uh, that we're attracting and retaining the, 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 the best talent in every one of these departments? Do we need people that are dedicated to special projects versus the day-to-day? So do we need people that are keeping the, you know, keeping the wheels on the bus while we're also over here, you know, adding on to the bus, or doing whatever we're doing? So, I- I, I think we have, I think we have some, some opportunities, I think we have challenges. I think we're gonna need funding in this area particularly. Um, I think we have a, we as a commission are gonna have to commit to, to funding some of this. Or, if we're not, then I think we have to be more realistic with our expectations. When we talk about some of these things, and we want all of these things, and we want it done yesterday, I think we have to be realistic about that, and, and I've, I've given staff the liberty, I've told them many times, you know, we sit here in a lot of meetings and talk about, you know, hey, can you, can you do this? And, you know, I think we're gonna have to be ready to hear, yes, we absolutely can do that. What, what of these five things that I was working on, do you want me to give up so that I get that done? You know, where does that fit in the priority list? And we don't, we don't do that now. Um, I, I think staff, to their credit, just tries to take it all. Um, but what I, what I've seen in my professional experience when people do that, and they never kind of push back and say no, or they don't alternatively get the staffing that they really need to do the job, the stuff starts falling off the edges of the plate, as the plate gets too full, and then everyone starts getting a little bit frustrated. Staff's frustrated, because they feel like their plate's overflowing. Boards and, and commissions get frustrated, because they feel like stuff's falling off the plate, and this is important stuff to us and our citizens and our residents. Um, so, again, I don't have, uh, and, I, I don't have an answer today, I just have concerns. And so mainly, just wanted to kind of put that on the radar. Um, and, and this isn't something that, I'm not responding to, you know, Colin didn't pull me aside and say, hey, please go to bat for us on this, you know? Um, this was just, uh, my observations, my concerns. Com- combined with, as I've mentioned, you know, there's staffing issues in general. Yeah, so there's this notion of, can we find good help in general? And then once we, once we get them, are we developing leaders? Are we developing bench? Do we have a good training plan? Um, you know, so, so that's kind of where I'm at. And, and so I just wanted to, to get that out there and let you all know. It's something I'm gonna be focused on, something I'm gonna be pushing with, I'm gonna be talking to staff about more. Um, you know, I have some ideas, I have some suggestions. I don't run the city, I can, all I can do is, you know, feed ideas and, and make recommendations, and, and let you all and, and staff, and all of us working together, come up with solutions. Um, but those are, those are the con, those are the concerns. Um, and, you know, it, it, you can't, I've said it publicly many times, we, we're elected to do what we're elected to do, and I can pass all the ordinances that we, you know, we want, I can make all the policy we want, but if we don't have people out there that have the capacity and the ability and the know-how to do those things, then it won't matter. And so if we don't manage that dynamic and balance very well, you know, we, then, then our time on this board is gonna be diminished, because we're not gonna have the ability to do all these things. Um, so I just wanna make sure we're cognizant of that, and that we're, you know, listening, that we're challenging staff, and I've challenged Colin, I've, you know, I've had some frank conversations about some opportunities I think we have, some things that I think we should go do. Again, it's not for me to bring to the commission, it's for him to bring to the commission, but I've certainly challenged him on where I think we have some opportunities. So, um, anyway, that, that's kind of, that's kind of where I was going with that, uh, and what that, what that was all about. This, it's not gonna get easier. The next two to three years, the budget cycle, the, the union negotiations, uh, s- staff hiring and, and, and development, all of that is not gonna get any easier, it's gonna be harder than it's ever been. We're gonna have to make critical decisions, we're gonna have to look citizens in the eye and be very frank with them on why we're having to do what we're doing, and, and we're not gonna be able to hide behind, staff, go, go, go find, you know, gi- gi- just, just make it go away. Like, we're, that's not gonna work over the next two to three years, so. Okay, Mr. Commissioner Colodey?
Uh, those are the same concerns I kind of, uh, spoke about earlier in the day today, how I had some frustration, uh, with how projects were being tracked and processed and pushed. And there's a disconnect in there now, but that disconnect can be solved, the way it's gonna have to be solved is by spending a lot more money. And we just have to be cognizant of the fact, it's not just the salary of a person, but it's all the benefits, it's all the desks they need, the cars they need, which we're constantly buying, and we have to be aware of that. So I would just suggest that during this next year, when we're developing the next budget, that we really have to have that in the forefront of what we're thinking about. Because, like you said, we, uh, the public has kind of gotten used to getting everything they sort of want. I'm glad for that, but we've been lucky, the pandemic actually helped us budget-wise, as you've come along. We survived it very well. We got a whole boatload of money from the federal government that we will be paying for everybody in the future generations. And we can't just keep going on as we are. I love the budget. I love the budget to be as low as possible. And, I'm gonna have to, myself, take a very close look at these expenses and, and be willing to either make the adjustment and budget more money, or be willing to stand up here and tell people you can't get what you want, which I'm willing to do.
Well said. Mr. Sox.
Yeah, well, I'm glad you brought up staffing. Something last night I heard was very concerning, that I think it was a Buc-Ee's or some, whether it's a Buc-Ee's or a BJ's Club, they're making seventeen dollars an hour, I mean. Sorry. The wages that we see outside, Buc-Ee's, BJ's, all of the stores are making the same amount of money that our starting salaries are for police, fire, maintenance ops. And, and so retention for me is so important, and, and as well, if our city grows at two, two and a half percent a year, we have to staff up. And we have to pay them a decent wage so that we can retain them. And we have to keep the mileage low because, you know, Mike is right. Growth, growth costs more money, and that, that, I think that's the problem. I, I cringe every time I have to ask maintenance ops to do something because I know they're already overloaded. So, that, with that in mind, I, I totally agree that, you know, stat, we have to, we have to up our staffing. And, and keep them happy and, and proud to work here, and that they'll stay, and they have promise of going, moving up a ladder, and those things are important. I mean, I, I started as, as a fireman one. Wanted to stay there, but there was always opportunity when you worked for the city. When you work for a city, a municipality, and, and I, I want our workers to be proud and happy to work here. That, that's good staffing. That's all I have.
Okay, come back to something else.
So I'm gonna take a little different approach on this. And I reflect back on something that one of the auditors said a few years back, and they always said, we're not sure that you have the right people in the right positions to get what you wanna get to. And, we've, you know, and we've changed finance staff since then, so that's not, maybe not necessarily true today. But then I heard it also again today with Michelle's presentation about accountability. So, I think that, that maybe, you know, are we truly getting what we should be getting out of some of our managers? Are we, you know, are they performing to the standards that college looking for? You know, do we maybe need to make some changes? Or do we just need to increase our incentive package or pay, you know, to, to hire better people? I mean, it took us over two years to replace Brian's position. And, you know, be that what it may, I think that's probably one of the reasons he left, he just got burned out. And I, I think that we, we need to, along with this staffing, is if we truly have needs and we have the budget to position, you know, we, maybe we could move a little forward faster on some of these issues. You know, and certainly there's that probationary period, that person doesn't work out, then, you know, sorry, you know, you're not what we needed after all, and we'll continue to look. So, I don't, you know, we historically have not done that, you know? Usually small cities, you know, they start and they stay with the same core group of people through retirement and stuff like that. And maybe this is the time that maybe we need to take a deep delve dive into, into who we have, where, and where they are, and are they truly getting what they need to get? Or are we lacking in, like you said, are we not giving them the opportunities to advance themselves? You know, to, to, to work towards, you know, the higher degree, or to, to get that additional training to make them a better person? So I think that these are all some of the issues that, when you talk about staffing, you, you kind of need to look at that. And then, and I don't mean any disrespect, but when I look at some of these flow charts, some of these organizational charts, they give me some concern as to how they're set up, because they don't really look like they flow very well to me, and there is that, there's no accountability there. You know, so I, I'm curious, you know, when you look at the city, city managers, the assistant city manager is on the same line with department heads. Is that truly where he needs to be, or, or should he be a step ahead of that? You know, um, he's on the same line as a grant, a part-time grants writer. To me, that's not a true rendering of what our organizational chart should look like. I mean, you can go through all of these and, and find little tweaks here's and there, you know, that probably maybe should be up a line or down a line, or maybe be a little more detailed in what they're doing. So, that gives, you know, to me, the public will look at this and they go, oh, so your assistant city manager is on the same as your public information officer? He's on the same line organizationally as him, or should he not be a step above that? You know? You look at the city attorney's line, her assistant city attorney is on the same line with her paralegal. And it's probably because of my background, being the paramilitary organization. You know, those organizational charts were very defined and, and very specific, so that, that's my background. And kind of what I was brought up to, and, and this to me doesn't look like a complete picture of what we should have here at New Smyrna Beach. And then my last thing is, and contrary to probably what you're believing in right now, is we currently are hiring three firefighters that we were gonna hire because of overtime issues. So we approved those three positions. We now have a fourth who's gonna retire before we hire, so we may be hiring four. We'll have another firefighter in March that retires from drop, he can't stay any longer, he's definitely gone. Should we not overhire for that position now? So that it eliminates those overtime issues that we're still gonna have? You know, we still have Jeremy who's out, who knows how long, so they're still gonna be short-staffed. So, sh- should we give approval to overhire that extra position now? You know, I'm, I'm familiar with this, and I know that uniquely, when you come on as a group, you're kind of bonded as a group, you support each other as a group, and I'm sure the police chief can tell you that also. It's a whole lot easier to hire two or three at a time than one at a time. The same thing goes with the training aspect of it. They're gonna have to do, there's a certain amount of training that these individuals have to have in order to go on shift and be active. And, it's easier to do them in a group than it is to do four here, one here, one here. They're gonna have some great opportunities with the demolition over on Green Lawn for a live training. So, and that fourth and the fifth individual may not have that opportunity if we wait too long. So, my, and I don't know that we can do it at a workshop, but certainly it would be, my preference is, is we could authorize the extra over-hire position for the fire department, so they could get all five positions now out of the way to eliminate some of these problems in the future. And if, if you think about it, we approved these positions in, back in October. So you're paying roughly forty grand per person for the last three months that they haven't been hired, and all we're asking for is one additional person for three months to get them through to the, into the March when the retiree actually comes to place. So there's still gonna be a cost savings there even then. You know, it would have been different had we hired somebody October one and they started immediately. Whereas now, we're just now starting that hiring process, and these individuals may not be on for what, another two weeks? So until after the first of the year before they actually hit the salary. So I, I wish you guys would consider that, approving that for the temporary over-hire position. I, I think it would help out with, with fire. And, maybe, you know, if we're truly gonna look at staffing, maybe it's a time to do a, a deep delve, you know? The residents of this city do that every two years. You know, every election cycle, they take a hard look at all of us and say, oh, I don't like that guy, or that guy didn't do what I want, maybe it's time for him to go, you know? So, I, I don't know that maybe that's something that, now would be the right time to do that. We have a lot of new people and a lot of new positions. You know, we're promoting some very good people from within, so maybe that, that would be the time to say, hey, here's what I expect out of you, here's what I want from you, and, and we'll go forward that way. Those are just my thoughts.
Yeah, good, good thoughts. On the fire thing, I, I don't disagree with you, I didn't, you, you have a deeper understanding of that particular department than, than I do, you and, you and your colleague here. I don't think we can approve that at a city commission meeting, so, or at a workshop rather, so, but in, in January at a meeting, I would certainly, I could support that, it makes a lot, what you just described makes a lot of sense. My, uh, you know, an organization I was with previously, I, I kind of watched go through a, a similar, they're, they're similar to where we're at, and there's many, there's many pros with having an organization where you have a, a lot of folks that have, you know, they've been with the organization for a lot of, a long time, and they've, and they've been promoted from within, I'm a huge fan of that. But you need a healthy balance of both, because you also need some external, you know, fresh blood type, you know, thought processes coming in. But anyway, to your point, I, I, I watched an organization go through, you know, hired the fancy consultant, I actually wasn't even a fan of it. They came in, assessed the organization, looked at org charts, looked at things like this, and they got ten direct reports to the city manager, you know, at least, if not a few more probably, by the time you add in some of the assistants, et cetera. So, looked at things like that, proposed a new org, and, and we actually saw improvements. We actually saw organizational improvements, it actually worked. The other thing that was, that was there, similar to what you just described with fire, when you're, when you're running lean organizations, the challenge is if you ever have change or turnover, it, it's hard to get back to even. You know, it's, because you're already lean. Whereas, you, you typically, in an organization of this size, you need some, you need some capacity, for lack of a better term, because you always have something going on, you always have somebody like a Brian leaving, or a, a, a Faith retiring, or things like that. So you, you need some flexibility in the organization. We can't continue to run, so, again, I think it's for the past two years, I think we've been running really, really, really lean, not through any fault of our own necessarily. Although, you know, anyway, this is what it is, but not through any faults of our own necessarily, but we've been running really, really lean. And that, it's hard to make progress when you're running really lean, and if you ever have turnover, you're just, you're in survival mode all of a sudden. You go in, I mean, again, I've lived through this, I've done it, I've, I've taken on jobs when people left, and I went from having twelve reports to sixty reports and working, you know, I was already working fifty hours a week, now I'm at seventy, eighty hours a week, like, you can't sustain that very long, and it certainly isn't where you get your best work product. So, you know, having some, some, uh, some, you know, positions, having the right people in the positions, and then having some positions where we have the flexibility to say, you know, hey, we, we know what the, the bench is, we know who's gonna step up. If that person were to hit the lottery and leave, we, you know, we've got that bench kind of set up. And I'm just, you know, I, I don't, I don't know that we have that yet, and for a city of our size and where we're at, I think we're at a spot organizationally, we're pushing three hundred employees. We're at a spot organizationally where it's, it's a tough spot, I mean, it's a, it's a tough size. You know, much smaller than this, and you're kind of a small business, and you can run like one. Much bigger than this, you're a big corporation, and you run like that, and we're kind of in this really, really tough spot organizationally, where we're, we're, we're big but not super big yet. So, I'm not saying it's easy, but I, I think I agree with you, I think we have some real opportunities. I don't know whether, whether we need, you know, high-priced consultants, I don't know whether we need to challenge staff a little more to just, you know, hey, let's, let's spend some time on this. Maybe we have people in the community that would be willing to help, whatever the case may be. You know, but to, to your point is, I also am not willing to, to, to compromise standards. Like, I don't, I'm not, I'm not advocating on any way, shape, form, or fashion that we lower the standard, and I don't think anyone, no staff I know of would want me to do that. We have to say, this is, this is the quality, this is the work product, the standard that we're looking for. Now, what do you all need? What, what changes need to be made to get us there? I mean, that, that's, to be, to be very clear, I'm not saying that we have to, we have to, you know, say, well, we, we just can't do that because, you know, we don't have the right people, I'm, or enough people, whatever the case may be, I'm saying, let's recognize where we are, and then let's have a plan or a, a vision moving forward. I just wanna make sure we're intentional about that, that this, this is an issue that we are going to have to have active discussions and plans around, just like we have active plans for transportation and for stormwater and everything else. This has got to be one, it can't just be, we're gonna just, you know, this person leaves and we either hire somebody, or we just, you know, it's just, it's gotta be something we're active, we're more actively engaged in as a commission and as, and as leadership. That's, that's kind of think where I'm, where I'm at. All right. Do you have any comments on that, Kyle? You don't have to, but you have anything you wanna add?
Well, you know, I have plenty of discussions about this, and, and I think what happened is with the, it seemed like with the pandemic, that we're having such a hard time even hiring. I mean, we authorized to have, for example, a part-time grant rider. We can't get anybody. A CIP manager. A civil engineer. Development services director, I mean, it took us almost two years, we had to go to a recruiter in order to get somebody. So, I think it's, it's, I'm hoping that we can get past this point until probably January. I already have a, a plan in my mind of what I wanna do. But going back to Commissioner Hartman in terms of the organizational chart, I mean, the assistant city manager take handle six departments. So it's actually divided between the city manager and the assistant city manager. I think it's the way that it was drawn, that's what it show, but it's really, it's, it's the, the functionality of it is not like what's there. It's, you saw it on the same line.
I know that.
Yeah.
And that was my point, it was, you know.
But I think it just whoever drew the, drew the, the organizational chart, but it's really, I mean, having six, I had six departments when I was the assistant. And so, the problem is when Brian was here, he couldn't get to that point because he was struggling with the, with the development services. So, we, if we would have hired, he would have had six, and I would have six departments, and it would have been divided. And then we could have, we could have done actually a lot of that. But going back to the mayor comment on the special projects and accountability, that's something that, that we, we struggled with a little bit. And it was, again, it's, it's probably because it's, we had so many projects in one pot. So hopefully when we have the right staff, I think you will see a lot of changes in the next two, three years where we have some accountability and productivity, so.
Okay. So I, I, I think, last thing I'll say on this, I, I, I think, and I've said this to Kyle, nothing I'm saying is anything I haven't told him directly. We're probably, there's probably a layer of, of management that's, that's missing. There's probably, we probably need a, a, you know, there might be a, a middle layer there, and I know middle management's a, you know, a Dilbert joke at this point, but there, there's probably a layer of, of middle management that is, that's maybe missing. The other thing I've challenged him is, is, you know, let's make sure we're not just, again, you know, we're not married to this, we're always looking at the talent that we have and where they can excel. I mean, that's the other thing I saw in my organization many times was, you take what you've got, and if you've got somebody that they're about to leave because we, they've kind of burnt out on what they're doing, are we doing everything we can to make sure, like, hey, what about, like, what, why are you leaving, what do you wanna do? And can we find the right thing for you and give you an opportunity to excel on something else? And then, even at the low end, look, I, I mean, I started as an AP clerk, you know, in my, in my previous job, making ten dollars an hour or something like that. And, but somebody was willing to have a conversation with me and say, what do you, what do you wanna do? Like, where do you wanna be? And then they invested in my education, and they put me in leadership trainings and all, and all those things, and obviously none of it worked, you all know that. You know, I, I was able to achieve a few things because somebody took the time to give me that path. So, you know, are we doing that? Do we have enough, do we have budget, do we have training budget? That we're willing to invest in someone who comes in as an entry-level position, but their vision and their dream is one day they wanna run the department? You know, now they're, you know, right now they're maybe just hanging off the side of the truck, but one day they wanna be a fire chief. And frankly, whether it's here or somewhere else, I just believe in investing in people and doing what's right for people. And if he, if he or she goes on to be a, a fire chief somewhere else, that's okay. You know, there's a classic saying in leadership, somebody says, you know, what, what happens if we, if we invest in our people, and we train our people, and then they leave? And the person's response is, what happens if we don't and they stay? And, and that's, you know, that's how I feel about it, like, let's, let's do the right thing, let's invest in people, let's give them every chance we can. Let's give them every chance we can to succeed here or elsewhere. And let's just create that, let's create that culture, so. All right, that's staffing. We've already talked about G, Southwest Connector, last item, economic development. I know you were, you're at 3:30. I want to.
I'll try and.
I'm going to miss you your time.
A bit of what Chris has to say.
All right, if you have to step away, we understand that, yeah.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Chris, if I skip on on you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm trying to pull up my PowerPoint, which was just here. Shannon, could you just pull up the PDF? Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My apologies for the technical issue there. This is not the actual presentation, however, it just will give you a run through it very briefly. So on October 28th, we held a Economic Development Strategic Plan Workshop that the Economic Development Advisory Board conducted and facilitated. We worked with Michael Zaharias of Zaharias Enterprises. And we, we basically came up with a, a conversation, if you will, regarding the vision statement for the city. We talked about the desire for there to be a diversified tax base, for partnerships that we needed to continue to implement, is also to both sustainable efforts throughout the community. We did go through at that workshop, the development progress for the city. So we basically highlighted all of the activities to date that we had within the community. And we went through the public and private projects. And then we just talked about the numbers, if you will, about the city. And then we also had conversation about the economic impacts that we have through parks and rec, I mean, through leisure services and things of that nature. And then we just kind of took the time to engage the audience and not just talk at them for a few hours, but basically we used a software called Mentee. Maybe you may have finished with that software. But basically it gives us a real-time opportunity to kind of go through and have people with anonymity provide their input on different topics. And we asked a series of questions that were based, 18 focus areas that we focused on particularly. And they were affordable housing to State Road 44, to commercial industrial development, a wide range of topics. And we basically had through those exercises, we had 10, we had a top 10 list that was produced. And that top 10 list that was produced basically took those 18 and started to whittle them down with the ultimate goal of trying to get a very short list of priorities for the city to focus on. One of the areas that we, we basically started a conversation on was economic resilience and the fact that we do not, in our current strategic plan, have an economic resilience aspect. Economic resilience, obviously, is those things that the city can do proactively, as I've heard discussion today, is a proactive way of trying to address some of the unknowns like COVID-19s of the world, or hurricanes, or other disasters, natural disasters that may occur. And having some kind of plan, like a small business preparedness, business continuity planning, maybe partnering with some of the business resource entities that we have to make those plans and bring those plans to fruition. The other aspect that we did, we highlighted the regional activities that have taken place in the region. We talked specifically about the different, the initiatives rather, that have been hailed between the city of New Smyrna Beach, Edgewater, and Oak Hill. We talked about the, the May, highlighted the May 17th event that took place. It was a regional discussion. And then we also segued over to the Commercial Space Industry Opportunity Overlay, where we highlighted the new company, Terran Orbital, that's expected to make investment in the Space Coast area with over 2,000 jobs and average salaries of 84,000. And we talked about what does that mean for Southeast Volusia? What does that mean for New Smyrna Beach? That means supply chain company opportunities for us. And so we highlighted those aspects as well. The top three priorities that came out of the Mentee feedback section was utilities infrastructure, diversified tax base, and then there was a tie for third place of labor pool and State Road 44 traffic congestion. Out of that input that we received, there were five priority themes that we kind of came up with just to kind of categorize all of the raw data that we got from Mentee from those who attended the workshop. There was sustainability, business startup, community development, business retention expansion, business attraction, and relocation. And so out of those sections and sustainability, for example, there was suggestions to convert utilities from overhead to underground, convert septic tanks to sewer. And for business startup, the highlight was coworking spaces, business incubators, things of that nature. And also within other sections, there was, you know, talking about diversifying the tax base in the sense of what kind of office space we offer in Class A office space or things of that nature. That would be something that would keep us competitive from a product standpoint as we try to recruit or retain certain companies in our community. Those were just some of the highlights that we had from that, that workshop. And so at this point today, Mayor and Commissioners, my intent of coming to provide that brief synopsis was to really kind of get feedback on priorities. As you, are you aware that in February, on the 24th, February 24th is the next date that is scheduled for the regional discussion of economic development? So the workshop was really kind of to help be a preliminary public input type session that would kind of give us some feedback of what the community or the public is, is feeling about economic development and maybe develop some type of priorities that you like to see us as staff and as a city begin to prepare for, as we prepare for a regional discussion on what are our priorities in each three cities and how do we move things forward? I can tell you that from a regional standpoint, I think there is some general initial consensus on infrastructure being important. If we're talking about recruiting certain companies, you know, having the appropriate infrastructure in place, such as utilities and different types of infrastructure in that regard, that might be helpful for us to be more competitive as a region. So that is my presentation and I'm open for any questions or comments.
Mike. Nice presentation, nice work. I know how hard to try, but trying to get people to come here in particular is a very hard thing to do when they have so many choices throughout the world. One of the focuses that I think is a little bit missing, Southeast Volusia, is, and rightly so to a point, is they treat all three towns as equals. And from New Smyrna's standpoint, I don't think that's the best possible thing. I think everything should feed down or trickle down through our town. We're talking about infrastructure, most important priority, improve the infrastructure. We basically have that and we should put that forth as a reason why we should have our development here. So I don't mean to denigrate any of the other towns. They have their own priorities. They have their own strengths that we probably don't have. But sometimes I think by joining into groups such as this or Team Volusia where they're building 7 million square feet of space up in Daytona, what good does that do us? I know there's a benefit. There's housing that people are going to need and it's going to help us out, but I know going it alone is no better. You know, we do have to have cooperation, be a part of all these other groups, but even so, I think we got to toot our own horn a little bit more sometime along the line. Those comments might not be highly received by a lot of people, but that's just the way I feel.
Yes. Chris, thanks for the hard job that you do. It must be difficult, especially getting, bringing quality jobs here. I think that's where we're lacking. We have a good service base, but I would like to see us kind of dip our toes into air, clean aerospace industry if we can. I'm very glad that the hospital is coming, I hope. I think that will be a great boon for us to provide good jobs and I hope you'll be a good liaison to be a part of that. Other than that, it does seem like sometimes we get skipped over from, the jobs go from Daytona down to Edgewater. They have a larger industrial section, it appears. And I wouldn't mind gleaning a bit of that back here towards the airport where I think we have some space. But other than that, you have a tough road to hoe. So, but I applaud you for sticking with this and, you know, to make us diverse would be my wish. It's nice to be a tourist mecca and a, we have become a place where older people come to live and retire, but I think we do need more diversity. My wish also is to see our downtown be more like the old-timey downtown that had the butcher, the baker, all of, all of those things that you didn't have to travel to Walmart for or just use Publix for. If you could help recruit some of that, or we could give incentives somehow to get that started and kept here, that would be really awesome. But, thanks.
What about the candle shop maker?
And the candle shop.
Is it candy or candle?
I think we have.
Yes.
Is it candy or candle?
Candy and candle. We could use that.
Butcher and baker and the candy.
And the candlestick maker.
Candlestick maker, that's it. Candlestick maker.
Right. So, yeah, good job, Chris.
Mr. Hartman.
Yeah, Chris, I appreciate it. As you know, I was at the 28th meeting, so I saw a lot of this and I've filled out my survey and my survey is in the mail. So I appreciate, I look forward to seeing what's going to happen at the next meeting and what those results were going to be. I think they're really interesting. You guys did a tremendous job and I certainly do appreciate that. So we'll look forward to see what happens in the February meeting.
So let me go a little bit different direction just real quick. Commissioner Sacks.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, we understand. Got to take care of yourself. So. Yeah, Merry Christmas, Jake. Happy holidays. We'll see you. We are, I think we're really good at holding workshops to talk about economic development. And I think we're hoping, and I say we as a region, I'm not saying Chris, and I'm saying we as a region, I think we are hoping to have economic development by osmosis, that as Titusville explodes and the Blue Origins and SpaceXs and everything explodes, that they're going to have almost no choice but to fall into our lap. And that's how I think we're approaching this, as best I can tell. And I've attended quite a few of these. And as best I can tell, the action item every time is let's, let's meet again in six months and talk about this some more. I'm growing weary of that, if I'm, if I'm honest. It's not a strategy. So I was at a Team Volusia meeting recently, which we're a member of. We've been a member for quite some time. We pay 25, 35, 25,000 a year to be a member of. We're now a member of this new group. We paid 15-ish, I think it was, the first time to be a member of that, if I recall correctly. And that's all in addition to what we, of course, have in our own staff. But I attended this Team Volusia event and sitting next to Colin and I was an executive with a newer insurance company who was joining Team Volusia, or still leveling up in Team Volusia, or it was investing more. So they spoke and I talked to him after the, after the meeting, because it dawned on me as we're sitting in that meeting, you know, I've always had a vision for New Smyrna. We're not going to be, we're not going to get B. Braun here. We're not going to be the 3 million square feet of industrial space. We don't have it. We do not have the land. That's what I've continually heard. Every time I ask the question of our economic, you know, powers that be, what do we need? What are we lacking? What can I be working on to help this? Their answer is always, well, you don't have the land. And I say, well, then why are we, well, then why am I here? Then what are we doing? My contention is, I think we do have opportunities. I believe we can be, the executives of those organizations, the executives of B. Braun, the executives of these organizations, they want to live in New Smyrna Beach. Their employees want to be here as soon as they get off work on Friday and Saturdays and the rest of the time. So we have a lot of things to offer, but we're not going to be, you know, we're going to attract Boston Whaler type here. But I think we could attract two things, two industries I would like to see us kind of focus on, just because they're in our area already. There's already kind of this, some momentum around them. Number one is this insurance industry. You got Security First, you got Brown and Brown, you got all the spinoffs of Brown and Brown now. We're becoming, we, Volusia County, are becoming a mecca of insurance organizations. That is white collar, high-paying jobs, that's low impact, doesn't need a lot of space, could be in a, all we need is some Class A office space. You know, they have 80 to 100 employees if it's a headquarters of a small, of a small company, or it could be a regional office of a larger company. So I went up to the, to the guy after his presentation, I said, I said, you can, you can stay in Hyatt Shadow in Daytona or you can be the biggest fish in New Smyrna. What do you want to do? Like, why don't you come down to New Smyrna? And so I, my vision is, the other, the industry before I say, before I move on, is higher education. We're surrounded by higher education. We have some here in the area, Daytona State, but we have UCF, Daytona State, Bethune-Cookman, Stetson, Ember Riddle, UF, I mean, all around us. And I have seen, and this is my background, I've seen the power, the economic engine that a higher education presence can, can bring. So I've wondered if, could we have a satellite campus of, you know, some higher education program focused on marine, marine biology, economics, or environmental research, things like that, that would be conducive to our, our particular location? Could we have that in New Smyrna Beach? Not Southeast Volusia, New Smyrna Beach. And could we appeal to an insurance headquarters or regional headquarters or corporate office or whatever it would be in New Smyrna Beach? So my focus, so COVID has kind of put on, that's been on my radar for a while. COVID kind of put it on hold, but I'm, I now have renewed vigor that I want to, I want to work with. that I want to, I want to work with Chris, work with Team Volusia. We're paying all these folks. I want to work with them, put together presentations, get in front of the decision makers of organizations in those categories. And I full, I will tell you, I'll be very candid, I fully expect the first presentations, we will get a hard no. It's not going to be easy. We're not going to walk in, they, oh, yeah, no, this is great, we'll start tomorrow. But that will lead us to real data, because the survey you just talked about, I was there in the room. None of the people in that room were decision makers for actual organizations that could bring jobs here. It's the harsh reality of the survey data that we just looked at. It was concerned citizens, it was some staff, it was whoever it may be, but it wasn't, there was only one or two that I knew of that were decision makers for organizations that had employees that could relocate in New Smyrna Beach. So, I want feedback from that group. And the way we're going to get it is we're going to get in front of them, we're going to make a pitch. Team Volusia is going to get us in front of some of these folks, our team, and we're going to make a pitch, and then we're going to have the excellent interview. We get that you rejected it. Why? What do we need to go work on? Then we have actionable data and intelligence, so we can go and say, hey, if we had this, we might, could appeal to these types of companies and bring these types of actual real jobs and economic development to New Smyrna Beach. That's the plan. And to me, if we're not willing to tackle that, and we're not willing to go down that path, then let's, let's, let's quit. Let's, let's not continue to do what we're doing. Like, it's, it, we're having the same conversations today that we had years ago. I've seen the same presentation about the trillions of dollars of the space industry for years now. And so, that's, that's where I'm at. I hope I have the Commission's blessing on that. I don't know that I, I need it necessarily, because I think it's, you know, it's something that we can work on with Chris, but my, that's my vision. We got to get in front of some of those groups. Supposedly, we've got, got all the right contacts. They should be helping us make, to get these presentations ready, and then let's get in front of the decision makers, and let's, let's figure out what we're really missing and why we really can't bring that. And there's never been a better time. With Advent coming, there's going to be development out in that direction. Like, what are we really missing? Why couldn't we do this? Why couldn't we capture some small piece of this? So, that's my vision. That's my challenge to us over the next two years. Uh, and then, at that point, we'll have some actual real data as to, is this, is this viable or not? So, that's where I'm at. Open to follow up. Commissioner Glode.
I support you completely on that, uh, even though I was critical in my comments earlier. Uh, I was a member of Economic Advisory Board, uh, back when, before I was elected here. And I felt that I was spinning my wheels, and that what we were doing was just changing words on a piece of a report we had in the past. Uh, we got to push harder, not just being in a group. We got, we got to annoy people to get out there. Uh, one of the big things we had to sell at the time that we were going to try to exploit was, as the mayor said, was our tie-in with the Space Coast. We have 100 acres sitting along the railroad that could certainly be used for that zoned industrial. Lo and behold, turns out some commission in the past stuck a provision in there that said, well, if you can't find what we really want, you can do something else. Now, we got a developer coming in here, and he wants to put 700 houses on it. Allowable by our ordinances. We missed the boat back then. I missed the boat back then, because I didn't happen to go and talk to the staff, and I said, why don't we have anybody here? He said, well, you know, nothing came of it. We should have changed the code back then. It's too late now. Maybe there isn't a client for that property in the industrial zone, but, uh, should have been pushing harder along the way. Not a criticism of you, you weren't there. I was. So, we have limited abilities to use that type of, uh, development. What the mayor said, I support completely, that method of going about it and trying to bring something that, to just get off our stagnation point now.
Any closing comments? All right, Chris, any closing comments from you?
Uh, couldn't agree with you more, Mayor, Commissioners. All of you are, you know, preaching to the choir. Um, you know, I come from, uh, a background in economic development, and I can assure you that, uh, with economic development, where there's been success per capita, it has always been because there's been a consolidated focus on areas that are your strengths, uh, and, and not necessarily reaching for the stars all the time. Uh, because oftentimes, those companies, you know, are going to pick somewhere else anyway. Uh, maybe more money that they offer, or some other, uh, skilled talent workforce is, is there. So, there's many different factors as to why you may not be as competitive for certain industries. However, uh, you know, it's our focus, and certainly with our partnerships that we have with Southeast Volusia, Main Back to Technology Coalition, Team Volusia, as the mayor has alluded to, and others, I think we can get there. I think we just need to really focus, hone in on what we can do that's short term and actionable, that, that makes sense for New Smyrna Beach and who New Smyrna Beach is.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, that clears every item on our agenda with two minutes to spare. Any closing comments from the Commission? We'll start with Randy.
No, I just, I think these workshops are beneficial. Um, it gives us a chance to, to have more open discussions, I think, than, than regular meetings. And it's truly a discussion period and not just going through a certain formalities. So, I, I, I'm encouraged by these kind of workshops. Um, I'm careful, I didn't want this to be another planning session where we, like, have always added stuff to plates. So, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm glad that we're focusing on what we already have. Um, I think all of us up, up here are looking for a little quicker action going forward and maybe resolving some of these issues, checking those boxes off and, and getting through this process. So, I certainly do appreciate all of staff's effort and, um, the attendance for today. Um, it means a lot to us, or to me, anyway. So, uh, appreciate that, and again, happy, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Mike, closing comments?
None. Merry Christmas.
Okay, Colin.
No, I, I really do appreciate, uh, the, the comments through this workshop. I think it gives staff the ability to understand where the Commission's coming from. Uh, it gives us an opportunities and challenges as well. Uh, but I think we're up to the challenge. I'm looking forward for some of the additions on my new team coming in the next few months. I think that's going to give us the flexibility to really lay the ground, the ground, and, and do the things that, that we really like to do and, and, and make the changes that we want to make. So, um, I think the impact that, that, that I could see down the road that we would like to make, I think it's going to be significant. So, that's what I'm looking forward to. I got close to three years, I want to, I want to finish him on a good note, so, so.
You will.
Happy, Happy New Year and, uh, Happy Holidays.
To you as well, Sharon, anything?
No comments.
Carrie?
No comments.
And I'll end with saying, again, thank you all to staff. Thank you to citizens. We had some citizens that were with us, I think, wire to wire. I think it's all Lily and, and Joe and Susan here, and Randy maybe even, and some that came. I think you, what did you tap in? Is that, is it after lunch tapped in? All right, so we appreciate the citizens that were there here, appreciate staff that were here, and wish you all happy holidays, Merry Christmas. We got a comment from the gallery. What you got?
Just that, um, having a public participation at the beginning is hard for the public. I think you say too much.
Because they don't know what we're going to say.
In the future, you would have a small time period after each topic.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. I think it's, it's good, we, we, yes, we'll talk about it after. There's pros and cons to that. I'm, I'm always open to public participation. Usually, we stay here another hour after the meeting. That's when we get a lot of that from the, from the, from the public as well, so, yeah. All right, with that, Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas. Thank you all. Meeting adjourned.